Announcement to anyone who is listening. I would just like to advise you that this meeting is being livestreamed using an audiovisual link in accordance with section 74, 7A of the Local Governance Act. I would like to remind all councillors that they continue to be obliged to disclose and appropriately manage all conflicts of interest they may have in matters being considered this evening. And councillors continue to be obliged to remove themselves from the consideration of matters in which they have a pecuniary or significant non pecuniary conflict of interest. Councillors continue to be obliged to protect any confidential information considered at the meeting. During the closed session part of the meeting, councillors should ensure that they participate in the meeting in a location where it cannot be seen or heard by anyone else. Okay, it being 6:05, I now open the ordinary council meeting. Good evening councillors. Just before I begin, I'd just like to run through some housekeeping. I will try my best to provide everyone with an opportunity to participate in the debate. But once again, even though we've had plenty of practice with this format, I just remind everyone to be mindful of the fact that this is a virtual platform to keep yourself on mute when you are not participating. And that the debates and the questions are different from a face-to-face meeting. And when speaking, to endeavour to put your hand up rather than to shout over other councillors. And I will look at having a break at approximately 8:30pm. If for some reason the hand function doesn't work, David McNiven will be checking the chat function. So before we begin councillors, I'd like to acknowledge the sad loss of the passing of Aunty Delma Davison. We recently acknowledged her sad loss with the passing of this proud Darawal Aboriginal elder as well, Uncle Les, on the 25th of August. And the Laperuas Aboriginal Council Community has now suffered what is quite a sad loss with the passing of his wife, Aunty Delma. The pair were together for over 70 years and are survived by their children, grandchildren, and their great-grandchildren and great-great-grandchildren. And they will be greatly missed by their family, friends and loved ones. Aunty Delma dedicated her working life to the New South Wales Department of Education and was a founding member and life member of the New South Wales Aboriginal ECG or Education Consultative Group, which she was very active within. She had a strong focus in education being accessible to all Aboriginal people in the community. And she will be greatly missed by many across our community. Our thoughts and prayers are with the family and the whole Laperuas Aboriginal community during what is this very difficult time. I'd now like to hold a minute of silence in memory of Aunty Delma. Thank you councillors. I will now go on to read the prayer and acknowledgement. For the prayer, Almighty God, we humbly beseech you to bestow your blessings upon this council and to direct and prosper our deliberations to the advancement of your glory and the true welfare of the people of Rhammick and Australia. Amen.
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 And now to the acknowledgement of country. I'd like to acknowledge that we are meeting on the land of the Bidjigal and Gadigal peoples who occupied the Sydney coast, being the traditional owners. On behalf of Rhammick City Council, I acknowledge and pay my respects to elders past, present and to Aboriginal people in attendance tonight. Okay, I now move to apologies and granting of leaves of absence. Could I, just before I do that, confirm that councillor Bowen is now in the meeting? He had sent me an apology for lateness and then he'll be around at 6:30. Has he arrived or is that a bit later? No, okay, I've got an apology from councillor Bowen. Are there any other apologies or granting of leaves of absence? Okay, no. Can I have a mover and a second up for the apologies and leaves of absence? Okay, moved councillor Luxford, seconded by councillor Stavreinos. All those in favour? Okay, I declare that passed. Okay, confirmation of the minutes. There are several sets of minutes. Okay, so moving the ordinary council minutes on the 28th of September. Can I please have a mover? Okay, Stavreinos and seconded by councillor Shuri. Okay, the minutes of the extraordinary council meeting on the 30th of September.
Move that way.
Okay, moved Luxford, seconded Stavreinos. Okay, I'll now put both sets of minutes. All those in favour? Those against? Okay, thank you. Councillors, are there now any declarations of pecuniary and non pecuniary?
Yes, yes, Mr Mayor, yes, Mr Mayor. In relation to CP 73/21, which is the roadmap out of lockdown for local businesses. I am a business owner in Kingsford, it's a non-significant, non pecuniary interest. And I'll be voting on the matter tonight. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other declarations? Okay, last opportunity. Yes?
Mr Mayor, I think I have to declare an interest on... Pardon me, I just need to find the... CO 6321, appointment of a goodwill ambassador. I know, and hopefully friends with Aunty Barbara through my work as a councillor and her work as a community representative. So I'll declare a non-significant, non pecuniary interest in that matter.
Me too, Mr Mayor, same as Philippa. Okay, thank you councillor Veach and councillor Durocha.
Do the same, Mr Mayor. Thank you, Noel de Souza, thank you.
Susa, are there any other declarations?
The same declaration, Mr Mayor, for myself, councillor Mattson.
Okay.
The same declaration from councillor Neeson.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right.
May as well do the same. Same declaration from councillor Sid.
Okay, thank you very much councillor Sid. There being no further declarations, I now move to the public component of the meeting. And if you could just bear with me for one second, as I grab my list, hold on. Apologies councillors, one second. Here we are. Thank you, okay. We now go to the public component of the meeting. I will now read an announcement for speakers. It being a public forum, the public forum section of the meeting is also being livestreamed using an audiovisual link to allow submissions to be made by councillors. A reminder to all members of the public who are addressing tonight's meeting that you have a maximum of three minutes in which to put forward your case. Presenters will be stopped at three minutes. There is the potential for a one-minute extension. Councillors may ask questions or presenters at the end of each presentation, however, I would remind councillors to be courteous in your questioning and that members of the public are under no obligation if they do not feel comfortable answering any particular questions. Okay, I now go to the first item with a speaker from the public, MM 36/21. Vow, Aunty Delma Davison, speaking in favour, Ms Barbara Keely Sims or Aunty Barbara. You're just on mute, so if you could just unmute yourself. Okay, let's have a look.
Okay, Aunty's through.
Okay. It's very hard to do things in three minutes because I would also like to acknowledge country. Country we're on, I'd also like to acknowledge our neighbouring community, which is the Gadigal people and our elders, both past, present and emerging. And address sorri business also from Uncle Claude Timbry, who's been buried tomorrow. Who passed away last Saturday after contracting COVID in Prince of Wales Hospital. So we've had three deaths in our community, which is very sad, and three Aboriginal elders. Aunty Delma, I would like to talk, and I worked with Aunty Delma for a number of years in the Aboriginal Education Consultative Group, AECG, in Sydney at Stanmore. And whilst working with Aunty Delma, she taught me a lot to encourage wisdom, how to give unsteadily to the community and to yourself and to be honest and open. This woman had compassion for everyone. And Aunty Delma was born in a time where segregation was rife here in Australia. So we need to be really mindful and careful when we're talking about issues like this because as times change, I wonder, and I think, I haven't changed. So we need to keep that open mind there as well. But the brilliance of this woman, a woman of substance, a woman who gave everything and looked after grandchildren, great-grandchildren, great-great-grandchildren, who gave everything and sat on the board of directors also with Goroaual Aboriginal Corporation at Laperuas. And to be married to a man for the number of years, first boyfriend, first girlfriend. So I had a lot to do with Aunty Delma, I admired her. There was someone to look up to. We need more women today like her. And they're very hard to find here and there and very far between. So that woman would tell you a story, how to embrace, how to encompass, how to sit down and listen, to learn. And the woman that taught her as well was her mother, who was honoured as a JP back in the very early days. Aunty Linda Cruz. So, and really, really a brilliant woman. Is my time up?
You're more than welcome to have a minute extension.
Okay, thank you. So Aunty Delma came from a big family and then married into Uncle Les Davison, who also came from a big family. And they embraced all this with their children and the community. So when we've got elders like this in our community, you can only look up to them and say, I'm learning from you. This is something we need to take a leaf out of each one's book. So what you give to society, you reap the benefits, you reap the rewards. And to be humbled, humble to others and cost you nothing to be nice to anyone. And we go through this society and council as well. So council, you need to take a leaf out of each other's books as well and listen to people and be humbled. It doesn't urge to listen to someone, let them explain who they are, where they come from, what their journey's been about. I know just by coming here, that such an horribly abused verbally by a non-Aboriginal man called some dirty names in a car park, I thought, you need to be humble as well. You need to know what you're talking about. So men that abuse women, not good, not good at all. So gentlemen, be nice to women.
Yeah, yeah.
Yes, and our women, we need to also embrace each other as well. So because of her, we all can. So think about your mother, because of her, we all can. And this lady, Aunty Delma, her mother taught her well, she taught her children. She taught the women in her family well to give and to be kind to each other. Lend it here whenever possible. Thank you.
Thank you, Aunty Barb.
Thank you very much for that. We will now move to the next item where there are speakers. CP 73/21, support for local businesses roadmap out of lockdown. Sorry, yes?
No, Carlos had his, sorry councillor Durocha had his hand up.
Yes, councillor Durocha?
All I wanted to say was, I knew Aunty Delma, you know, but that...
Councillor Durocha, could I politely ask that we will go to the debate on the mayor a minute, a little bit later? But you will definitely have an ability to make a contribution on this very sensitive and important matter.
Very sorry, sorry.
No, no, no need to apologise, but I'll make a point of going back to it. Next item where we have a public speaker on is CP 7321, support for local businesses roadmap out of lockdown, Mr Tom Hardwick.
Hi everyone. I own Coogee Wine Room on Coogee Bay Road and been dealing a bit with council on some of those initiatives. I think anything that the council can do to help those of us who've had our businesses shut for four months, you know, get up and running again is gratefully, is most appreciated. But I think encouraging outdoor dining and places for people to come back together as a community, connect with their friends, et cetera is... You know, I think it's really important. I sort of, I am a bit disappointed, it's quite a minimalistic approach that's happening here. If you look at Coogee Bay Road, the proposal is, you know, a couple of car parks being converted into outdoor dining, which I might, I'll hopefully be one of those, you know, people, so I'm grateful for that opportunity. But apart from a couple of car parks being converted and a few, I think the proposal is for one night, so Coogee Bay Road might be closed for sort of a bit of outdoor dining and people coming together. I just look at what was achieved last year, I think 80% of Coogee loved that sort of one-way street, the creation of that precinct. Yes, there's a few people unhappy, but there's always a few people unhappy. And, you know, COVID was twice as damaging to us this year as it was last year. And I just feel that, you know, more could be done. I was down the rocks the other day, you know, the whole of George Street, they've shut a whole lane in the rocks to create a huge outdoor dining precinct, which was fantastic. I just, I just, you know, to the extent there's more that can be done, could we shut every Saturday night through the summer and create an outdoor dining precinct for Coogee? That would be great, but I just sort of put that with you to say, can more be done? Couple of ideas just while I've got you, like I think the concept of some annual fair or festivals in each of these major commercial precincts around, whether it's Maruba or Coogee or the Spot or whatever. We should be shutting them down for a weekend each year and having some outdoor markets and street vendors and the local shops can do outdoor, you know, stalls, et cetera. I think we have a lot of local people who are incredible artists, musicians, actors. And where's the venue for them to show talents, particularly in an outdoor kind of spot? You know, I think the Christmas carols have always been, you know, one example of that. But are there more opportunities to get some of our local assets out into the community and bringing us together? I saw the query, why McKean Street would not pay $1 million in, you know, contribution or spending, which I think I saw in some of those papers. I was down there this morning, there's a lot of takeaway shops, they have outdoor areas. It's not a major commercial precinct or dining precinct, so I do wonder balancing that. And finally, I think if there's one great thing we could do is go and knock off sculptures by the sea. You know, Waverley council have been sick of that and they're giving the promoters a hard time. I just looked at that Coogee clips and the parks, I went, wow, why haven't we got sculptures by the sea down here rather than Bondi? I think that's something we should have a, you know, chase. So look, there's a couple of thoughts as to how we could, you know, over the next 12 or 18 months, create something a little bit more magical in Coogee. And to the extent we can do more this summer to help the businesses who've been shut for four months, you know, recover a bit and provide space for people to connect, that would be great. So that's my contribution to tonight. Thank you. Here it is.
Thank you very much. Okay. We now move to the next item where there are speakers. CO 54/21, propose sustainable procurement policy in favour...
Questions, Mr Mayor?
Mr Chris, oh yes, my apologies, is there a question?
Yeah.
Sorry, I didn't see that. Councillor Roberts, do you have a question of the speaker?
Yes, I do, thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yeah, can I just confirm, Mr Hardwick is still here?
Mr Hardwick has left the meeting.
My apologies, what we will do is we will move to the next speaker. Mr McNiven, if you could just contact him to see if he would like to rejoin to answer questions. And I will happily return to questions at a later point to allow councillor Roberts an opportunity if he's able to do that, but we'll move on for the purposes of this meeting and we'll return to it if it's available. And if you could just text me, it would be fantastic. Okay, so we'll...
Have a look up at the hands before we move on to the next matter.
Okay, thank you very much councillor Roberts, my apologies. We're now going to CO 54/21, sustainable procurement policy in favour, Mr Chris Hanson.
Thank you very much, Mr Mayor councillors, for allowing me to speak at tonight's meeting. I'd like to speak for the recommendation of the council to accept the sustainable procurement policy as per the report recommendations. In particular, I notice with interest that the comparison between the existing and the proposed policy allows for a circular economy. In fact, in terms of the sustainable outcomes, a direct reference is made with the maximum recyclable content that can be sustained, that will support a circular economy. This is actually quite important because council may not be aware that the New South Wales Government has just introduced into Parliament a plastic reduction and circular economy bill. It's a preliminary. Its title is Plastic Reduction and Circular Economy Bill 2021. And the adoption of the report that has been prepared to enable a circular economy to be built into council's procurement will dovetail very well with the proposed legislation. So I would recommend to council that the report be adopted. Obviously, I have a vested interest in ensuring that council moves to a circular economy rather than a linear economy. Given the situation with the New South Wales Government's push to burn waste rather than promote a circular economy. So this was actually, I was made aware of this bill at a conversation I had with the New South Wales EPA last Thursday. And I would certainly recommend that council adopt the report and move their procurement policy to one that embraces a circular economy. It's going to be great for not only the residents of Rhammick LGA, but the rest of New South Wales. And the advantages are obvious, but I'll state them again for the record. A circular economy will provide hundreds of skilled permanent jobs in the Rhammick LGA because the products that are recovered and remanufactured and on-sold to downstream industries will generate those jobs. And we're talking about trade and engineering, scientific planning, sales, scheduling and maintenance type activities. Whereas the types of activities that are promoted by waste incineration, for example, are five operators operating the incinerator. So I'm happy to answer any questions on the bill. If anyone has any questions for me. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Are there any questions of Mr Hanson? Okay, there's a hand up from councillor Veach, councillor Veach.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thanks very much for coming in, Chris. I'm sure all the councillors, particularly the South Ward councillors, especially in South Ward community are very well aware of your terrific campaign, which council is very much in support of. Thank you so much for coming to speak tonight. I know one of the issues that you have raised previously relates to the fact that in other jurisdictions, I think you may have given examples in Europe where councils have been locked into contracts to supply, you know, waste to energy, you know, manufacturers or whatever you would like to call them, with a supply of waste and where councils are not able to do that.
Where's the question, Mr Mayor? It's question time.
Yeah, thank you councillors.
I'm just trying to get to the, I'm just trying to get...
Councillor Veach was approaching a question and I would remind her to get as close to it as possible, but I'll allow her to continue.
Thank you. Having said that, are you concerned that if this... Would a procurement policy such as this perhaps send a strong message to waste energy? You know, the company in question that their supply of, you know, the waste they need to supply, you know, to run the incinerator may not be able to be met?
Yeah, thanks councillor Veach, very good question. Yes, look, it's a very real issue. In Europe, there is plenty of evidence where councils have ended into waste to energy contracts that those companies penalise the councils when they can't deliver the required amount of dried waste. And this, of course, kills off any recycling and kills off any circular economy. I will talk about that a little bit later on, but I think probably it is very relevant to council with the procurement policy that when you embed a procurement policy embracing a circular economy into your operational plan, that actually then drives suppliers to think about what they're actually supplying to council. And that is the essence of how a circular economy is actually created. So I see this, I was very keen to speak on this topic. I see it as a key step for Rhammick City Council to embrace a procurement policy that utilizes a circular approach. Thank you, councillor Veach.
Councillor Veach, are there any further questions or am I good to move to councillor Mattson?
No, that's fine, thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Mattson.
I'm okay, thank you, Mr Mayor.
Okay, councillor De Souza, you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor, thank you very much. Chris, I believe you've got a meeting with the minister tomorrow, is that right? Or his representative? So I guess the policy on Thursday. I'm sorry, I'm losing track of time, you're right. So in saying that, Chris, it's a great opportunity to tell them, I should be asking a question. So the question to you is, would you be putting forward the fact that council, this council is very conscious about its procurement policy? So we wouldn't support a building of an incinerator in Matreville. How do you feel about putting forward an idea like that to the minister's team? And congratulations on getting that meeting.
No, thank you councillor De Souza. You've been instrumental in getting both the meetings with Matt Keane's office and we really appreciate that. Yes, look, I've actually already had that discussion with the New South Wales EPA last Thursday. Because the New South Wales EPA, who are actually advising the government, their view is that they can embrace waste to energy, embedding waste to energy in the New South Wales economy. And then when they're ready to have a go at being a circular economy, they can switch it off. And it's totally naive and again, overseas practice shows that this does not... So yes, I will be very, very strongly raising that view with Matt Keane's advisers on Thursday.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you councillor De Souza, is that all? Okay, I'll take that as all, you're on mute. Feel free to do this message.
Sorry, yes, I will.
No, that's all. Councillor Mattson, you have your hand up.
Again, sorry, I'll take the hand down.
Lovely. All right, thank you, Mr Hanson. I see that you're a speaker on a subsequent one, but we will come back to that. So but please stay in the meeting. NM 73/21, notice of motion from councillor De Souza to build a memorial to honour the victims of the LGB TQI hate crimes. Speaking in favour, Ms Barbara Keely Sims or Aunty Barb?
Barb was here now.
I'm here now.
Feel free.
Okay, stolen generation?
Actually, the monument is about to those that are homosexuals and that...
And yes.
And about racism.
Cultural diversity, we need to address it and look at it in an all-round way. And if we can build something to honour them as well, because everyone's entitled to their views, everyone's entitled to their own sexuality, whether they're happy or not. And they should be free to walk and wander where they need to go to and be open. Because in my own family, I have three members that are in the gay sector and we are very protective of them. I have two nieces and nephew and they need to be mindful. And they shouldn't have to be bashed senseless. They should be welcomed and embraced because we are human like we are too. So we need to stop and think about all these and they need to be accepted into society. Because what society does them, they shun them. And we need this monument built for them, we need to honour them and, you know, and be just with them.
Those are my views, but this is not forgotten.
So they're not forgotten, no, that's sad. And a long time ago, we used to, in Moor Park, men used to be bashed there and mutilated. And, you know, how do they feel that their loved ones, that, you know, they've been mugged in the crimes? They are unsolved crimes. And they were really horribly mutilated in the parks. And that's why we should have a monument in place, one of them, a place of reflection, a place to be remembered.
Okay, thank you. Are there any, are there any questions?
Okay. Sorry, I just got confused. Were we talking about Noel's motion or were we talking...
Okay, councillor Durocha, this relates to NM 7321, notice of motion from councillor De Souza to build a memorial to honour the victims of LGB TQI hate crimes. So this is the section where we're just asking questions. Are there any questions for Aunty Barb? Otherwise I'll move to the next section.
Just like inclusiveness, bringing people together, doing...
Just like inclusiveness, bringing people together, doing everything, righting the wrongs, remembering what the past was, I know we weren't there, but we've got to make sure that it never happens again. It was horrible for the gay.
Councillor D'Souza, do you, sorry, De Rocha, do you have a question for Auntie Barb?
Oh, no, it was just more that I think that there's a lot of things we've got to remember, and, no, I'll withdraw what I was going to say, sorry.
We will come back to the debate, and there'll be an opportunity to debate it in a second. Are there any other further questions? Otherwise, we'll move to the next item. Okay. Thank you very much, Auntie Barb.
Thank you.
Okay, the next notice of motion, NM78/21, notice of motion, sorry, just for one second, I'll just mute the participants. Thank you. Okay. NM78/21, notice of motion from Councillor De Rocha, support for the No Matreville Incinerator campaign. Speaking in favour, Mr. Chris Hanson. Chris, you now have an opportunity to speak to it, but you will have to unmute yourself.
Yeah, I'm unmuted, can you hear me?
You're good to go.
Right, thanks very much, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak at the meeting this evening. I'd like to just let the council know the success of a motion we had at Bayside Council recently, where they also embraced the motion that they were going to object to Suez's proposed incinerator, and they were going to actually develop a community awareness programme, as well as use billboards and the airport drive precinct opposite McDonald's to actually publicise and raise awareness of the community. I was talking to Councillor Christina Currie this afternoon, and she's told me that that is well in advance, and they're also going to apply advertising on the outside of their trucks. Now, I understand that our waste collection trucks are not owned by council anymore, but perhaps there's other ways in which we could actually try to get the message out there. From our side, from No More Incinerators' side, we have, we are in the process of distributing 30,000 flyers throughout the Randwick LGA area, and we've covered the bottom two-thirds of the LGA area, and we've also distributed flyers in the Bayside LGA area. We've got all of Hillsdale covered, and Councillor Currie has actually distributed flyers through Banks Meadow and Botney, and some other areas in the Bayside area. We have also purchased 500 A1-sized coreflutes, heavy-duty coreflute posters, which you will see behind me here. Excellent, very sturdy posters, and Bayside Council have undertaken to actually install those in some key locations to, again, raise awareness. In addition to that, we're also reaching out to the Arabic-speaking community at Bayside, Rockdale and Brightonley Sands. We've given two interviews on Arabic radio stations to raise awareness with Bayside residents of the issues associated with it. We've had very good response, there's some very angry residents in that area. And I guess I am speaking in support of Councillor De Rocher's motion, and I would ask the council at the moment, we're in the pointy end of the current stage of the campaign, we know that Suez is actually talking to Suez, we're actually talking to the EPA. We've had confirmation from the EPA that Suez, and they are in conversation. We've had over 1,000 objections lodged with Minister Keane and Minister Stokes with the role of making it clear that Suez do not have the community on board for this process. What would really help us now is if council were able to assist us with a kiosk or some sort of a tent on the beachfronts. We have volunteers that are inducted in accordance with our agreement with council, and we'd like to set up our own shopfront so that we can raise awareness for beachgoers in Maruba and Coogee, and we can certainly staff those kiosks and provide the information. We also, I can provide further information on our discussions with the EPA. If anybody has any questions, I'm more than happy to address those questions. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hanson. Are there any questions for Mr. Hanson? Okay, there is a hand up first from Councillor D'Souza, I also have hands from Councillor Roberts and Councillor De Rocha, but I'll start with Councillor D'Souza. Do you have any questions for Mr. Hanson?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Chris, I've heard you talk about this toxic plume. So exactly what is going to be in this plume? I know we're going to be burning plastics, and you talk about a circular economy, and once it's burned, it's burned. Tell me about this toxic plume, or more importantly, tell the community about the danger of this toxic plume in the Sydney Basin, if this is allowed to proceed.
Yes, thank you very much, Councillor D'Souza. Look, the plume plot that we have on our homepage that you see with the colours, that actually shows the, what will happen over an average year in the Sydney Basin. We live in a basin, a depression, a geographical depression, and the emissions from the stack of these incinerators include heavy metals, as well as things that are called persistent organic pollutants, and they're the so-called dioxins and furans and other pollutants. The reason that we're worried about those is because they do not break down, and even with the most advanced filtration that's available in the world today, nanoparticles and ultrafine particles are still emitted. When these particles are discharged, they carry with them, absorbed onto the surface, these pollutants and heavy metals. And they're so fine that we breathe them in in the air that we breathe in, and they can actually cross over into our bloodstream. The most recent example that I can give councillors of this is the lead and petrol issue, where we discovered that people living near high-traffic areas like highways, those children were actually growing up with mental disabilities, and that was actually caused by the lead. We couldn't see it, were no particular, no particles that we could see, but those people were breathing it in. And that's kind of the closest thing that I can, I can give you as an example. So it is ubiquitous, it is low level, but it's what we call a chronic exposure. That means you're exposed to it 24/7.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Councillor D'Souza, is that all of the questions that you have?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. Councillor Roberts, do you have a question?
Yes, thank you, thanks for talking tonight. The, I just wanted to ask, are you aware that this issue and this concern is shared by all sides of politics? As a Liberal councillor, all the local Liberal Party branches in the local area are united, and they're actually signing motions to, or to the government as well.
Yes, yes, thank you very much, Councillor Roberts, that's, I am aware of that. We, one of the things that No More Incinerators has taken great care to try to demonstrate is that we are apolitical of an engineer, and I'm interested in the engineering and the process engineering and the effect of health on the community. I accepted a code of conduct when I was registered as an engineer, that I would protect if I felt, felt or realised there was a danger to the community I live in, I would take action to raise that with the authorities and whatever action I could to try and protect that community. So that's the basis for No More Incinerators, we are not aligned with any particular party, and we welcome any support that any volunteer or political party will give to us. And for the record, the very first person that I made aware of the issue was Minister Keane, back in April 2020, with a briefing paper that was delivered to him.
It's a unity ticket, thanks very much.
Thank you, Councillor Roberts. Councillor De Rocha, you have your hand up, do you have a question?
Yeah, Chris, thanks for being here today, and thanks for being like our analyst, statistician, everything that you've been, sharing your information, not only with precincts, several precincts, but communities. One thing that you've said, and you've said regularly, and I hope you still stand by, is that this burn-for-energy thing is so contradictory to recycling, to a better world where we can create roads out of rubber or, you know, or whatever, right? Do you believe that, you know, what they're doing by trying to put this incinerator in our face and affecting the health and wellbeing, that this is really no benefit to our environment? If anything, more of a burden and more of a health risk to all the elderly people, which is so many around the South Ward, all the kids who have breathing problems, all the people in general, who have suffered so much, and yet they want to put something like this? What's your view on this compared to when we talk about a better world?
Thank you very much, Councillor De Rocher. Yes, good question. Look, the reality is, is that burning waste is dumb engineering. In my entire working career and all the clients I've worked for in both the hazardous sphere as well as in manufacturing, you know, my prime concern was to not to create a greater hazard than when I started. And burning waste will affect not only elderly people, but it will also affect healthy people and younger people. The plume plot that you see on our homepage actually is a plot of nitrous oxide concentrations. And I can tell you now that I can give everybody that's watching this tonight asthma if I expose them to enough nitrous oxide. Won't happen straight away, but it will happen in the formance of time. So burning waste is going to introduce into the environment persistent organic pollutants and heavy metals at low level, but on a constant basis, and it's also going to contaminate the food chain. One example that we have right here in the Randwick LGA is the Botney Industrial Park groundwater cleanup project. As we speak, there are pumps operating along Fourshore Drive 24/7 to stop a plume of persistent organic pollutants entering Botney Bay. And I had this discussion with the EPA last Thursday when they were waffling on, and the reason those pumps are there is because if those pollutants enter Botney Bay, they will be absorbed by the fish and the flora on the seafloor, and then we will eat the fish and we will actually take in those pollutants. And, you know, nobody spends $100 million to put in a pumping system and a stripping system on the Orica site to prevent those pollutants getting into Botney Bay for fun. So we've got a real live example in our own, our own city here, and the last thing, and the reason Noel will tell you, the last thing that we want to do is create another situation where after spending 20 years trying to clean it up, we start contaminating again, contaminating it again. You know, we need an incinerator, but we need a hole in the head. And the other thing that we need to, need to realise, and council needs to realise, is that this is not a one-off. Because of the size of this incinerator, which is much smaller than the large incinerators that have been proposed in Eastern Creek and Blacktown, we could have three or four of these incinerators all in Matreville. Any business that uses steam can use one of these incinerators, and Suez will gladly sell them, supply them the fuel for free, and the operators will operate it and build it for them. So you could have, you're worried about one stack that's 65 metres high, think about getting three or four of them, see how you feel.
Thanks for being here tonight, Chris.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hanson. I've been informed that the speaker for CP73/21 has now returned to the meeting to answer any questions from councillors. Just before we do that, to Mr. Hardwick, my apologies, I actually moved on prior to asking councillors if there were any questions. So, but thank you very much for rejoining the meeting and offering councillors an opportunity to ask you a question. Councillor Roberts?
Yes, hi. Sorry about, sorry about you leaving the meeting there, I had my hand up, ready to ask you a question. I, I moved, I moved a motion at the start of the year before the Coogee trial was finished to extend it to the, through the year, and a majority of councillors rejected my motion.
I supported it.
Thank you, councillor. Now, one of the issues that councillors had to justify their.
Why you do that?
To justify their decision was that all the businesses hated it. As a local business owner, could you comment on that?
Well, mine are living in Coogee and have for 20 years, and, look, what, I don't understand why I would complain about it, because you actually preserved probably 95% of the car parks the way the street was designed, the buses were off the street, so that was a good thing. And I had people from Bronte and Clovelly who sort of looked down at Coogee, you know, on their toffee noses and said, actually, I'll get down to Coogee, it was really good what was happening down there, why did they, why did they stop it?
Yeah, so most, so most businesses in Coogee Bay Road, you'd say actually supported it.
Yeah, like the people, I know, like, sure, there's the odd negative Nellie who might have opposed it, and, you know, some, someone couldn't get a car park one day and, you know, was irritated by it, but I just thought it was a really great thing, I thought it was a chance to walk down the street and bump into some of your friends who were sitting at the side of other restaurants or cafes, and.
Yeah.
I, I was cynical at first, the direction of the traffic and whether you could get in now to Coogee Bay Road from Arden Street with, you know, all the beach crowd, et cetera, but like, that flowed, so you could get in Coogee Bay Road, I think the right, no right-hand turn at the, into Brook Street was probably, you know, I don't, I don't understand that, because that makes it a little bit difficult if you can't get a park.
That was an area, that's an area that could have been improved as a result of the trial, yeah.
Yeah, for someone who lives here, who enjoyed the benefit, you know, who also gets frustrated by car parking challenges, I didn't think it was any worse than what Coogee Bay Road ever is, and I just thought it was nice to have a bit of extra space to bump into friends, et cetera, on Coogee Bay Road.
Okay. Another councillor mentioned that car parking was more difficult, so are you saying it was actually not more difficult to get a car park?
Well, the sheer number of car parks was primarily the same, because it was a one-way street with car parks on either side.
You actually got a spot easier.
Sorry, could I, could I just very politely caution Councillor Roberts? Councillors do have an opportunity to ask members of the public questions, but one, best to not ask leading questions, but also to actually provide them the opportunity to respond. It's all very friendly, so I'm more than happy to let it continue. But, Mr. Hardwick and Councillor Roberts, if you could please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, are there any further questions?
I think you interrupted his answer, so Mr. Hardwick would like to continue answering.
Such interruption has disrupted my memory, what was the question again?
It's okay, I think the question was about the car parking, whether the councillor, the council, some councillors had concerns that parking was, was bad. In your experience as a local owner, what's your response to that?
Yeah, look, in essence, I don't think we lost many car parks, if you actually looked at the facts, there might have been a couple of car parks lost or finishes, and so the number of car parks was primarily the same, gave people more space, the buses were off the street, and, and I just thought it was something interesting to do in Coogee, like, and it's big and it's, I just, I honestly don't understand why it's not back this year, because 80% of the people I speak to are the traders on the street or residents and friends, everyone thought it was a good idea, and.
Do you think this would be an important election issue?
You're the politician, Mr. Councillor, not me.
Thanks very much for coming back, I appreciate it.
Thank you. Councillor Shur, I did see that you had your hand up earlier, it has now been lowered, but did you want to ask a question, or is that all?
I was wanting to object to councillor's, Roberts's line of questioning, but I've decided to calm down, so in my hands down.
Thank you very much, Councillor Shur. Look, I think it's best that we just move on. Okay, NM83/21, notice of motion from Councillor Matson, addressing the Prime Minister's obligations at the upcoming COP26 Climate Change Conference in Glasgow. Speaking in favour, Ms. Winnifoo.
Thank you for the opportunity to let me speak, and I am speaking as a resident of Randwick City Council, as well as on behalf of Climate Action Sydney Eastern Suburbs cases in regards to notice of motion, he321. actions in the eastern suburbs cases in regards to notice of motion, he 321. CASES recognises Randwick City Council's aspiration to 100% greenhouse gas reduction within the council area. And we urge the council to call on the Prime Minister and federal MPs to commit Australia to achieving net zero emissions by 2030. This is in line with IPCC's latest report, which urges rapid near-term reduction in emission of carbon dioxide, methane and other greenhouse gases to limit warming, warning, warming to 1.5 degrees Celsius, as otherwise we may, we face a substantial increase in extreme heat waves, heavy rain and drought. I'm compelled to speak on this motion due to my personal experience living in the LGA in the last two years. I moved to a seventies-built apartment in Kensington in 2019 to be closer to family. And the summer of 2019, 20 was the worst summer I have ever experienced. The building has no air conditioning and therefore on the weekend of January 4th to 5th, the day when Penrith hit 49 degrees, I was resorting to wet towels on my face in an attempt to cool down in the stifling heat while trying to push through lethargy to checking on my uncle, my elderly uncle, who's in, who's in his seventies, who is living in a very similar locate, very similar situation in Calpestry in Randwick. And at the same time, looking at the smoke-stained sun and smelling the smoke as well with windows wide open to try and catch a breeze. And every time there's a heat wave, I need to check on my family. And I'm not alone. My neighbour downstairs, they also have elderly parents in Marubra, and they are also very worried during the heat waves because the unprecedented, unprecedented heat waves will become an everyday normal if we do nothing. Now, I understand that the council has mitigation targets already and they are, they are wonderful start, but in Randwick, 73.5% of dwellings are medium to high density, so they're all unit, there's lots of units and they will be similar to mine. They will be hot in summer, they'll be hard to refurbish, and there'll be limited opportunity for us to reduce our emissions, not to mention all the emissions that's built into the way we live, which individuals and councils cannot affect or reduce, which means that we need a larger systemic change for our survival. Therefore, I and CASES urge the council to let the federal government know what climate change means on a very local level for us and urge them to commit to a 2030 target of net zero and at least 75% reduction in emissions in absolute terms for the sake of the community.
Okay, thank you. Bang on three minutes, so well done. I have a hand up from councillor Mattson.
Ms Foo, in your opinion, is this an historic moment for the world?
Absolutely. This is the last chance. This, the IPCC is saying that it's code red. We have to act now and with, we need to act on everything we can. And if the council can show the government that there is local support, that this isn't just, there is like people, families, young children, older people, we are so worried about their health. And this is it. We need to act now. If we don't do it right now, then yeah, the, the rest is also going to be history, isn't it?
Thank you.
Okay, are there any further questions for the speaker? Okay, there being no further speakers. That ends the questioning of the speakers and I will now move to deal with the items which we have had speakers on. The first item which was dealt with in the public meeting was MM 36/21, Val Auntie Delma. I will now just speak very briefly to my merril minute. Look, it's predominantly contained in the report, had been addressed in the public section of the meeting. Having personally attended the funeral and represented council, I can report the absolute raw feeling and emotion and affection for Auntie Delma in what was quite a large and moving funeral service marked by and attended by notable members of the local Aboriginal community as well as the broader community. Our community has lost a very significant figure and I commend my merril minute to the council. Are there any further speakers?
Yeah, me.
Councillor De Rocha.
I also commend your merril minute. I was also at the, at the service, you know, for Auntie Delma, just listening to everyone talk, you know, just listening, you know, about her life, about what she's done, about the hope that she's given so many people. I mean, if there's a hero in this world, it's sometimes the ones we don't know. And it's so sad, right? Even though I knew Auntie Delma, that sometimes we've got to wait till someone like this goes before we can actually celebrate him. And, oh my God, I had shivers from head to toe, you know, through the whole entire service. And I was just so honoured to have been there and so honoured by your motion, Mr Mayor, your merril minute, Mr Mayor, that this lady gave hope and, you know, to people that really didn't have any. She taught people that, you know, no one is dumb, right? No one is too smart. It's just the different styles of learning, you know, that, that's there for everyone to, to become on the same page. There were people that spoke that thought that they couldn't learn and yet, you know, Auntie Delma taught them that it's what, it's how they help others. It's how they, you know, look at people in general, you know, everything doesn't have to be on paper. Sometimes, you know, reality, sometimes just being able to communicate with someone and, and actually guide them and be a leader in their life and mentor, you know, is a greater thing than anything. And, look, I really wish, you know, that amongst everything that's happened, that there will be some sort of recognition, whether it's on a seat or whatever, something around that we can, you know, remember Auntie Delma in a way that, you know, we should because of the person that she was.
Thank you very much, councillor De Rocha. I now have a hand up from councillor De Souza. Councillor De Souza, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Mr Mayor, I too was touched to see you there at Auntie Delma's funeral. And unlike some of the so-called celebrities, they rushed to the front, you sat at the back and you were just part of the group, like councillor De Rocha, myself and Auntie Barbara. But councillor De Rocha's right, and you'd remember Uncle Ozzy, Ozzy Cruz, that was her brother, Pastor Cruz, a friend too. But Auntie Delma, like Winston Churchill, believed that the best investment is in education. Auntie Barbara wanted to be a teacher and she would have been a teacher, most certainly even a good nurse, but she fell in love with Uncle Les, or why I call Doc, who was very close to me. And Uncle Les and Auntie Delma built a family. I have got the list of the children, the grandchildren, the sisters, the beloved great-grandchildren, it goes on and on and on. But in our community in the South Ward, Auntie Delma was a matriarch. She kept her family together. And as one of her grandchildren said, no matter what, Nan was always there for us. I know that girl particularly well because of my work as a pharmacist. And she, Auntie Delma treated everyone the same. She gave all her children hope, but more importantly, she gave our community hope because Auntie Delma, as Linda Burney was there, Linda Burney spoke, and she said she, she was the president of the Indigenous education system, or A something or the other. But Auntie Delma was there and she said Auntie Delma taught her a lot. Linda's now in federal parliament, Matty Thistlewhite was there too, in federal parliament. And Linda's words were, she learned from Auntie Delma. A lot of the things she now does and puts forward was what she learned from Auntie Delma. Auntie Delma, rest in peace. As Mandela said, when, when a person does their duty for their family and their community, they can rest in peace. You did that, Auntie. And now you're with your beloved husband, Doc Davidson, our famous Doc, who was a boxer who had a chance to go to the Olympics, but for many reasons was told to stand down. Now you're with it, Doc, I know your condition was lung cancer. And I walked with your husband, Doc Davidson, from Matreville to La Perouse before he died. And he told me too, when we met you at the door and you gave us a cup of cha, he said, Noel, I think we've come a long way. We've come a long way. Auntie Barbara's with me, she's actually eating now, but in saying that, we have come a long way. The people of Matreville, our friends at La Perouse, we're very, very happy. We are now slowly limping towards constitutional recognition. I hope when that referendum comes up, we all support it. Thank you, Mr Mayor. And thank you for attending the service and thank you for what you're doing to help our local community at La Perouse. Thank you very much.
Thank you, councillor De Souza. I now call councillor Andrews, who has his hand up. Councillor Andrews?
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. I do commend you also in bringing Ms Merrill Minute forward. I had the great pleasure of being in Aunt, Aunt Delma Davidson's company and also Uncle Les's company in my 21 years on council. And I, I can't say any better words for them both. Amazing, both of them are amazing people. And Mr Mayor, in saying that their recognition to our local Aboriginal community
God!
Should be recognised. And I would ask Mr Mayor if you could make an amendment to your merril minute tonight. And I know councillor De Rocha mentioned it in his address to council. I actually was going to move, if you can accept it, Mr Mayor, that we consider some sort of memorial in a plaque or a seat of, a seat of remembrance for both Auntie Delma Davidson and Uncle Les Davidson. They are our true heroes down in this area. They are two local people which have made a big difference to our Indigenous community. And I would like to see some sort of plaque in consultation with the family.
That seat of remembrance is a great idea, councillor.
A seat of remembrance.
That seat of remembrance is a great idea. We'll build it on our communal land.
Thank, thank you, councillor Andrews. I think that is a very reasonable and appropriate suggestion. And what, just for the benefit of the meeting and how I interpret that would be to add something along the lines of that an appropriate recognition be installed in consultation with the family and the local community.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I was trying to say something similar with me words, didn't come out properly. Thanks, Anthony.
Okay, thank you. Are there any, are there any further speakers on this particular merril minute? Okay, there being no further speakers, I'll now put it, all those in favour?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against? Okay, I declare that carried. Okay, the next item for which we had a public speaker is CP 73/21, Support for Local Business: Roadmap Out of Lockdown. Do I have a mover?
I'm happy to move it, Mr Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. I have a mover from councillor Sid. And that is seconded by councillor Staverinos. And councillor Sid, would you like to speak to the report?
Yeah, I just put my notes. Mr Mayor and councillors, this is a fantastic way of removing some of the imposse that businesses have, especially through COVID. They've found it very hard in the past with DAs, especially when dealing with council. We've luckily, in the last few years in this term, we've, I remember, holy schnitt, one of the food trucks was saying to me that it's virtually impossible to be able to put the food truck in a car park or to go anywhere other than the front yard of his house. So speaking to Katie Anderson and the team at the events, we then spoke to the city planning director, Kerry Keriaku, who then we removed some of the imposse. And now that through COVID, the food trucks became a hit, it was very successful and their businesses have grown. And I think something like this, COVID's taught us a lot of things that we can change things and we're willing to accept and embrace new ideas. And this is a fantastic way of removing those imposse by allowing businesses to go onto the streets and to allow them to have outdoor dining and eau fresco dining. You also, the idea that we will be closing roads every now and then, we, as Mr, the speaker said, that we'd be able to include musicians and people who've been out of work from the arts, who've been out of work for the last six months. We can start to embrace a bit of happiness and joy through the community. And we need to have pop-up businesses and just a bit of happiness and joy throughout the, throughout our centre. But I do realise that we do need to have, we do need to have a little bit of, we can't go overboard, we can't just let people put chairs willy-nilly and seating and block pedestrian access. So we do need to have some rules, but I think the way that this plans it, it really will come out very well. So I commend the report.
Okay, thank you. Just before I move to the seconder, I'd just like to confirm councillor Sid that you are moving the recommendation on the business paper, is that correct?
Yes, sorry, Mr Mayor.
Okay, no, that's perfectly fine. I have seen in the chat that there is an amendment from councillor Nielsen, however, I'm going to go to the seconder of the, the motion first, councillor Staverinos, and then I will move to the amendment.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, Mr Mayor, I'd like to firstly congratulate our council, who over the last 18 months have been very supportive of small businesses in our local government area during these very difficult times. Not only did the waiving of outdoor dining fees help many of, many of the businesses in our area, but the waiving of waste charges and other fees assisted these businesses in keeping them afloat during a very difficult trading period. We also had a number of initiatives implemented, including the winding of footpaths, outdoor entertainment, not to mention reducing red tape, which I feel is the biggest hindrance to small businesses in our local government area. What council is proposing tonight is brilliant. What our local town centres need right now is people. They need to be reactivated. And what better way to do this than by having night markets, temporary activations and greater eau fresco dining areas? Small businesses in our city employ thousands of local people and generate millions of dollars a year for our local economy. And what council is proposing tonight will not only bring our local residents back into our town centres, but will create a vibrancy for our city. As someone who has always been an advocate for small business and being a small business owner myself, I can't think of a better way to rejuvenate the Kingsford Town Centre than to have markets in the Meag Street Plaza, have public art displays and lighting up the area. And the same goes for all of our town centres. I can't think of a better way to help support small businesses than to allow for the expansion of outdoor dining areas onto roads and footpaths. This isn't only COVID safe, but allows for businesses to promote their goods and services. Businesses are also in agreeance with what council is proposing. And I'm happy to see that council has consulted with all major stakeholders to ensure that all groups are satisfied with what council is currently undertaking. I'm also happy to note that council is currently in the process of conducting a survey of all businesses within the Randwick local government area to obtain feedback on ways in which our council can support local businesses and improve on our town centres going forward into the future. Small business is the backbone, not only of our local economy, but the Australian economy and every level of government, whether it be local, state or federal, should be doing what they can to ensure that small businesses continue to operate during these very difficult times. I'm happy to support this recommendation tonight, as it will have made a major benefits right across our city. Thank you very much, Mr Mayor.
Thank you, councillor Staverinos. Before I move to the amendment, I'd just like to confirm, I have hands up from councillor Andrews, De Souza, Veach and Hamilton. Could I just confirm that you all would like to speak on the report?
That's correct, Mr Mayor.
Okay, all right.
Yes.
Yep, okay. So I have Andrews, De Souza, Veach and Hamilton. Okay, I now move to councillor, to councillor Nielsen, who has said that she has an amendment. Councillor Nielsen?
Well, thank you, Mayor. And I sent the amendment to Mr Kelly, so hopefully he can get it up on the screen. Basically, I'm supportive of what council is putting forward. And if I can say And if I can say what I particularly like about it is the temporary expansions of existing footway dining areas by utilizing space not currently used for outdoor dining, because utilizing the space of the adjoining shop, if they permit that. I think that's a very creative way. And I would personally rather see we do more of that than losing parking spaces in front of shops or on these streets. And then I also have concerns.
Councillor Nielsen, sorry. I apologize for interrupting you. If you could either resend it, but if you could, just for the benefit of the meeting, at a minimum, if you could read out the amendment, and then I will call for a seconder, and then you will be able to speak to the amendment.
Okay, so, sorry. Okay, so...
Actually, Mr. Mayor, can I, once I see the... I might be willing just to accept it.
That's true, that's true. But we actually need to know what the amendment is.
Yeah, that's what I'm waiting for.
So that would be fantastic. So councillor Nielsen?
The amendment is to add a point C. And that is that there needs to be some method of responding to concerns if the well-intentioned methods do not work. For example, phone or email contact details to contact council to report any adverse issues. And they need to be widely circulated to nearby residents and businesses. And then point D, council needs to be proactive in responding to these concerns. And the reason that I'm putting forward these extra points is to make sure that council is proactive in terms... Because we're putting in very, not totally impulsive, but very creative ways of dealing with change. And I just think that we need to make sure that there is a responsive way of council officers dealing with concerns raised. So that's the reason for the amendment. And I'll send it to David Kelly. Sorry, Mr. Kelly, I thought I had...
Okay, thank you. Just for the benefit of the meeting, and just to mover the amendment, just to be totally clear, it is along the lines that council develop a method of residents or concerned people contacting council and for council to address these concerns in some formal form of process. Is that right in your interpretation, councillor Nielsen?
Yes, correct.
Yep, okay. Councillor Sed, do you actually accept the amendment?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I'll accept that. Because at the same time, when we're cutting red tape for businesses, which is a fantastic idea, we don't want it to be at the detriment of our residents. So I think this is the safeguard that if maybe someone does take a little bit of licence over space or opportunity or noise, the residents should have some sort of failsafe. So I think, as councillor Nielsen said, this is the failsafe that ensures that residents do have a say as well.
Now that the amendment has been accepted as part of the motion, it now is incorporated into it. Can I just confirm that councillor Stavreinos is happy to second it with that incorporation?
I was a little hesitant at first, but I tend to now agree with what councillor Sed has said now. So, look, I'm happy to go along with it, thank you.
All right. Because it's been accepted, we now return to the substantive debate on the motion. Councillor Andrews, you have the floor.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. Look, I commend this motion, which has been put to council. But I'm quite happy and ecstatic to see that McKean Street will certainly benefit with a temporary closure as part of the round two discussions, as part of the round two funding. There was a motion put by myself, Mr. Mayor, I think I seconded by you at the time, to look at the closure of McKean Street permanently in the future. This would be a great opportunity for our community to trial and see whether they like the temporary closure. I'm saddened by, Mr. Mayor, to see Coogee and Coogee Bay Road is not being brought back. And with councillor De Rocha, we both supported the continuation of the Coogee Bay Road during the last lockdown which occurred. I thought it was a great benefit to the Coogee community. Yes, at times parking was an issue and it was difficult. But the overwhelming support of the Coogee community, and council conducted a survey, and so that the majority of the community supported what council had done there previously. But in saying that, I'd like to see council in the future consider such proposals for Coogee. But I do commend this recommendation. And I'm very happy to see that McKean Street is coming into fruition. And hopefully, it will become a permanent closure one day.
Thank you, councillor Andrews. I now call on councillor D'Souza.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the opportunity. I often said at other meetings, we have a health crisis, but it'll be followed soon by an economic crisis. And this action council has taken addresses this concern. I was very happy to hear councillor Stavreinos speak. Being an accountant, it's a bit like a forensic person. He looks at the figures, he looks at pathology, he looks at the x-rays. And he says, there's a problem here, let's do something about it. And that's what this council has done. Where there was despair there, they've offered hope. Where there was discord, they've offered harmony. So in saying that, yes, I support everything on the report. I think councillor Nielsen quite correctly too, has brought in a very, very important and relevant amendment. I heard Coogee mentioned many times, and I... It was a wonderful concept, an idea. The state government funded the idea. And we are going to now do it, a similar project in a pilot, that was our pilot, and we're going to do it in Maruba. But you know, we're a just council, a socially just council. We must take into consideration the elderly, those that needed to access their chemists and their doctors and the other facilities. Now, with the road closures, that can become a problem. So consultation is really important. But let's not take the cream off the cake. I want to say I support this council. You see, there are different types of leaders. Some that look in the rear-view mirror and make decisions, or others that are forward-thinking. They look at the fork in the road and they take action. This general manager and her team do just that, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to give you the praise, but you're just new. But in saying that, and the former mayor, I'm sure, was a part of the committee that would have looked into the future, looked into the fork in the road, the economic crisis, as I call it, and they've made some sound decisions. Well done. This has my full support. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councillor D'Souza. Okay, I now call on councillor Veach.
Thank you. Look, I fully support the recommendations and the, as amended. I think it's a really good report. I especially welcome the activation in Meek Street, which is much needed. And the businesses in Kingsford certainly need all the support they can get. And the public is keen to get out and support our local businesses, but they want to do it in a safe way. And that's why this is really, really important. I guess I'd like to say, I'd like to encourage council to also investigate other little areas around our LGA that might be suitable for activations. Up in Belmore Road, there's a lot of businesses up there, little cafes and so on. And there are spots up there as well, such as June More Place, which I think a lot of people think is private, because there's a big real estate agent there. And it's a bit closed off. But actually, that's a public space and shady with a beautiful mural. And it would be a perfect spot to set up some tables and some planter boxes and allow people who are patronising the local businesses up in Belmore Road to have a bite to eat in the cool and shade outside. So I commend the report and, yeah, I look forward to seeing the activations. Thank you.
Thank you very much, councillor Veach. I now call on councillor Hamilton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I absolutely commend this report. I think that the recommendations are spot on. What I would say is that support for businesses is not a temporary measure. It's not something that we do when bad times hit. It's something that we do all the time.
Yes.
When things are good, when things are bad, when businesses need our help and they call out to the council for help, we should be there. And so I just want to make that statement known, because when we vote for this, we're voting for not just now, but for always, for the long term. And so when we talk about temporary measures, when we talk about trialling things, we really should be talking about permanent measures. We should be talking about permanent installations that improve the access, improve businesses' profitability and their survivability in always, not just when things get tough. And so I'm surprised that a lot of people will probably vote for this, but didn't vote for the one way at Coogee Bay Road. And I can honestly tell you, I went to Coogee Bay Road every single day. I lived right next to there before moving here. And I can tell you that I found a car park going down there all the time. I didn't have a problem with it. I think that what you will find now, and this is quite interesting, and a lot of the residents and businesses would witness this firsthand, that when Coogee Bay Road between Brook Street and Ardern Street is two-way, people will often do illegal U-turns to find that car park on the other side of the road. So when it was one-way, it was actually safer. So when we're talking about these installations, when we're talking about changing the traffic flow, we're taking into consideration everything, and that includes pedestrian safety. So if you've got cars seeing a car park on the other side of the road, and they will take that quick, swift U-turn, and we've got children, dogs, prams, people everywhere. So I really do think that, I'm very convinced that everyone will vote this through. But please reconsider, next time you have a motion in front of you that is a temporary initiative, that might not suit you personally, think of everybody, think of the ongoing ramifications of that particular initiative. Safety, pollution, access to the outdoors, businesses improving their capacity to spread out. And, yeah, before you, I don't know, before you go into your little election speeches, because I just think that this is something that we should consider all the time, not just this one time. Coogee Bay Road should be a part of this as well. And we should absolutely consider shutting down some of the parking ways so that we can get outdoors and eat outdoors.
Well said.
Thank you, councillor Hamilton. I now call councillor Singh.
Well said, councillor Hamilton. It should be on a permanent basis, not on a temporary basis. What I want to say, Mr. Mayor, is that we are lucky. We live in a city where our council and our fellow councillors are very supportive of our businesses, particularly small business operators, as you know, are mostly run by the mums and dads. Now, without the support of our council, our business operators would have been in a worse position. Now, I do feel very sorry for many of our business operators in the hospitality industry. Just a month ago, I was walking around and look at most of the restaurants and the cafes were empty, particularly at night. I was just wondering how long would they be able to suffer? I mean, would they be able to survive? And it's lucky, as I said, we've got a council that is not just pro-business, pro-small businesses, but very proactive. Now, I commend you on the report. Council has done a lot and will continue to do a lot more for our small business operators. Thank you.
Thank you, councillor Singh. Councillor Luxford?
Yeah, well, here we go. I'm support, you know, I will support this recommendation. However, I just want to note it that, you know, it's a bit, a little bit too late for Kingsford. So I'm hoping that something does, you know, come of this for Kingsford, because it is a war zone down there. And I note that we're applying again for $15,000 for more temporary measures in the Meek Street Plaza, which was meant to have commenced last year, and we're already a year behind. And I believe councillor Stavreinos brought this to council way before I even got here. So poor old Meek Street Plaza in Kingsford is just a nightmare. And the place is a mess. And while we're supporting local business all over our local government area, which is really great, we should have really been supporting the businesses of Kingsford and Kensington way through the light rail disruptions and now COVID. So I note, this does nothing for whatever remaining business we have left in Kensington at all. Because, you know, they can't utilise on-sea car parking spaces out front of their shops so that people can go and eat there, because nobody can park on Anzac Parade now, all the way from Allison Road through to the, to Gardiner's Road. So that doesn't work for them. You know, they may be able to put out a few little seats on whatever footpath is left. But, you know, a lot of this really should have, as councillor Hamilton has stated, this should be something that we should be doing all the time, not just as a temporary measure and not just because some sort of pandemic or some disaster has happened. The disaster did happen already for Kensington and Kingsford, and I'm not even sure that it will ever recover. But I do support this motion.
Thank you, councillor Luxford. I see a hand from councillor Bowen. Councillor Bowen? You may have to unmute yourself, councillor Bowen.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. Yeah, look, I just want to echo the sentiments of councillor Luxford. I support the motion. But Meek Street is, it needs, it's crying out for help. I mean, you know, to call it a plaza, I mean, no disrespect to anyone, but, you know, it's a bit of a stretch. Last time I was there, the road surface is still there. It's got planter boxes, a few different things. But there's nothing about it that's particularly welcoming or anything. So, you know, I'll support it, but I'll make the shout-out for, to support councillor Luxford, councillor Stavreinos for West Ward. Because it is, it's been like that for years, and it can't be good. And I feel sorry for the businesses down there.
Thank you, councillor Bowen. I have a hand up from councillor Roberts.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very briefly, I'd just like to echo councillor Bowen's sentiment. I agree regarding Meek Street. On mute.
I've had to mute Mr. Kelly.
So Meek Street, I give absolute support to whatever we can do to improve Meek Street. I think it's wonderful down at McKean Street at Maruba Beach that we need to do that as well. So I'm a big supporter of activating these areas throughout the city. And as councillor Hamilton said, I'm still pretty guarded that my fellow councillors didn't support the extension of the shared Coogee Village that we tried to move. And it was just gut-wrenching, losing that vote for 11. And then coming back a couple of months later, asking for a post-trial community consultation to get a measure on what the local community thought. After the initial consultation, revealed that 76% of locals wanted to see that extended, continued. So that's a real shame that councillors, you know, look in their own ward, but don't look at the greater city. So hopefully, that can change in the future. It's wonderful to see councillor Stavreinos tonight, supporting all these measures and saying all these great things about wanting to see health fresco, wanting to see footpath space expanded for residents. It's wonderful to see his change of attitude on that matter. And hopefully, we can see that.
Of order, Mr. Mayor. I never changed, I never changed. I always supported a temporary activation in Coogee, nothing to be permanent. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, councillor Stavreinos. Look, I don't rule as a point of order, but I would just remind councillor Roberts to speak to the motion rather than at their colleagues. So councillor Roberts, please continue.
Yes, so thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'll leave it at that. I think this is, this is a wonderful motion. I want to congratulate the council staff led by Kate and the team. Wonderful work here. Wonderful work here. It ticks all the boxes, and I'm really looking forward to an alfresco summer. Thank you very much.
Thank you councillor Roberts. Are there any further speakers? Otherwise, I will go to the mover of the motion to close the debate. Okay, there being no further speakers, councillor Sid, would you like to?
Actually, thank you, Mr Mayor. And in closing, I just would like, I should have asked this at the start, but I'd just ask through you, Mr Mayor, exactly what the $500,000 is spent on in McKean Street?
Okay. Thank you councillor Sid. I direct that to the relevant officer.
Through you, Mr Mayor, I'll direct that to our manager of economic development and place making, Katie.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you, Therese. At this point in time, the actual project is still in development. The announcement of the second round of those grants was only put out, I think it was about a week and a half ago, just as the deadline for this report was being written. But the intent will talk to the resolution that we already have for McKean Street, and the kind of criteria around the grant is places for people, spaces for people, there is a link to support businesses with our fresco. So once we have an actual confirmed kind of outline of the project, we'll obviously brief councillors. But at this point in time, it would be something like a small closure, replacement of car spaces, not losses, some shade structures, and some kind of urban design and greenery of that area.
Thank you councillor Sid. Does that answer your question?
I'm just wondering, because thinking of McKean Street, and it's quite small, I don't think Coogee Bay Road costs us as much in the trial of Coogee Bay Road, and it's a fraction of the size. It's just that, because with, also with McKean Street, you've got the entrance to the apartments above the hotel, you've got impost in there, and you've also got loading zones for the hotel.
Yes.
It, at that sort of cost, I agree with the sentiments of the other councillors that maybe it should be looked at as a permanent solution rather than just a trial basis, because it's a lot of money for a trial. And just one last question, if it doesn't cost that much, will that money just transfer into another project, as you?
No, so, yeah, the process for the grant is that we need to put an expression of interest in for that project by, I think it's the 11th of November. So they will then, Depub will then assess those, and then they'll invite successful councils to then apply properly for the grant. We would, at that point, have a good cost estimate as to what we were doing and what we would be using it for. It would all need to be put towards that actual project, it wouldn't be able to be kind of siphoned into other areas. But having said that, some of the measures that we would look to do would be more permanent than the ones that we looked to do at Coogee Bay Road. So the cost would be higher, because it is an ongoing, you know, six to 12-month installation rather than a short-term three months, so the cost would be different.
Thank you. So I'll just conclude on that, Mr Mayor. All done.
Thank you councillor Sid. I will now put the motion, all those in favour.
Aye.
Aye.
Always.
All those against. Okay, I declare that carried. Thank you councillors. Okay, we now move to the next item, CO54/21, proposed sustainable procurement policy. Do I have a mover?
I'd like to move it, Mr Mayor.
Okay, moved councillor. Okay. Thank you. Moved councillor Veach and seconded by councillor Nielsen.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you councillors. Councillors, last year, about May last year, I put up a motion.
Could I just confirm that you're moving what's on the business paper?
Yes, I'm moving as per the recommendation on the business papers.
Thank you very much councillor Veach.
In the last year or even more, our community has expressed concern about a lot of really major issues that are impacting our LGA and of course, the broader society of New South Wales and Australia, if not internationally. Those concerns, very specifically, we've heard tonight about local projects that impact the environmental and health, environmental quality and health of our local residents. Those relate to climate change, they relate to pollution, and very specifically, as we've heard from the speaker tonight, from Chris Hansen from No More Incinerators, relate to very specific projects such as the waste-to-energy incinerator, and that's what, that is the reason why I brought forward the motion last year. I think this, I'd like to congratulate the staff on this report. It covers some things that I think will be of great benefit to our community. It favours, or at least gives very good consideration, strong consideration to local businesses in council procurement, to Indigenous and First Nations businesses. It looks to sustainable outcomes across the supply chain, and so it forms a virtuous circle where we are sending as a council who often, you know, with our procurement, we can send a strong message to local businesses that we favour companies that take the environment and their impacts on the environment seriously. It also means we are doing our bit to generate less waste, to save energy and water, to minimise pollution, and reduce greenhouse emissions and other toxins. And once again, it also looks in a broader framework to protect the health of our local residents where there are potential impacts. We've heard from Mr Hanson tonight how council's procurement could have a direct impact on the business case for the waste-to-energy incinerator. So I do support the recommendation on the business papers, and I hope that council does support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much councillor Veach. Councillor Nielsen is the seconder. Would you like to speak to it?
I would like to speak to it, and I also congratulate the officer's report. I thought it was quite outstanding. And one of the aspects that I find particularly positive for our council, and I know all the councillors are supportive of this, is the fact that the policy will also detail that sustainable procurement is supported through our commitment to promoting social procurement with Indigenous organisations, social enterprises and not-for-profits, while also ensuring through our tender or quotation specifications that tendering organisations themselves promote socially and ethically responsible practices in their organisations. I think it's such a positive embracing of positive moving forward and a really positive circular economy, one would hope as well, but I think it's all looking good for our community, and I'm so glad that it can also embrace our Indigenous brothers and sisters. So I commend this report.
Thank you very much councillor Nielsen. Are there any further speakers? Okay, councillor Veach, did you want to close the debate?
I reserve my right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All those in favour of the motion?
Aye.
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 All those against? Okay, I declare that carried. Thank you councillors. Okay. NM73/21, notice of motion from councillor D'Souza to build a memorial to honour the victims of LGBTQI hate crimes, moved by councillor D'Souza. Do I have a seconder?
I'll second it, Mr Mayor.
Okay, seconded.
Sorry, I was going to second, it's all right.
Okay, that's, I heard councillor Veach first, so it is seconded by councillor Veach.
I don't mind if councillor Singh would like to second it, that's fine.
Thank you councillor Veach. It's just that we'll mute it just now.
That's all right.
That's fine, I'm happy for councillor.
I'm happy to support that.
Thank you. Moved councillor, moved councillor D'Souza and seconded by councillor Singh. Councillor D'Souza, then would you like to speak to your motion? Councillor D'Souza, you're on mute.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. My friends, my notice of motion tonight is about preserving human dignity and acknowledging the wrongs of the past. What occurred in the 1980s when gay people were bashed and some murdered was a dark and unacceptable chapter in Sydney's history. Many of the perpetrators of these unsolved crimes were not charged, and too many people were taken away from us during that period, in many cases remain unsolved. Many of these incidents occurred right on our doorstep, and that is why I'm proposing we build a monument or a place of reflection. I'd like to call that that. I hope this monumental place of reflection on the Coogee to La Perouse coast walk would be a place for peaceful reflection for many, including the victims' families. My own personal experience of racism has made me extremely sensitive to intolerance and hatred of the other, and has helped shape my values. This memorial would also help to heal the trauma caused to victims' families, survivors, and of course, the LGBTQI community. As some of us may remember, many killings were brutal, including stabbings, strangulation, bludgeoning, shooting, sexual assault and frenzied attacks. Some were crimes shaped by prejudice, targeted towards people based on their perceived homosexuality, and in some cases fuelled by HIV stigma. My friends, we need to build this memorial, we need to place this place of reflection. It'll become a symbol of healing, justice, hope and inclusion. This will be no easy task for any artist or designer, but I'll leave that to the council and its planners. Needless to say, the events of this dark chapter in Sydney's history have left a painful legacy that continues to be felt today. That's why I brought it up. Families have approached me. It is still raw for many of the victims' family, and that is why I'm requesting building this memorial, which will lead to healing and eventually, I hope, to closure. This memorial will be an acknowledgement of the victims of horrific crimes, and the message it'll send is enough is enough. Hate crimes are unacceptable and will not be tolerated. Councillors, I hope you will all support my notice of motion. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor D'Souza. I now call councillor Singh as the seconder of the motion.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I want to congratulate councillor D'Souza for bringing this motion. I believe it's a very good motion. I, for one, for the life of me, I cannot understand why there were so much hate crimes against members of the LGBTQI community. It pains me each time when I read in the newspaper, so-and-so were arrested, were going to be charged by the police for the hate crimes they committed 30, 20, 30, 40 years ago. Why pick on people just because they have different sexuality from us? So in seconding the motion, it reminds me also of a good friend of mine in the 1980s, Mr Anton Albers, who was a member of the LGBTQI, where he used to tell me stories about his friends being assaulted on a regular basis, because these are all innocent people. This motion, Mr Mayor, is most appropriate coming from what council decided to do last council meeting, where all unanimously resolved to make the rainbow paintings on Coogee Beach to be permanent. So once again, congratulations councillor D'Souza.
Thank you. Thank you councillor Singh. I now call councillor Roberts.
Thank, thank you, Mr Mayor. So councillor, I support this totally, full support, but I have a potential proposed amendment if the councillor would be interested. Basically, my question is, Randwick doesn't have, I suppose, a monopoly of locations where these outrages happened, and some of the famous locations is Northhead at Manly, and also in Wallara, in Paddington, in the city of Sydney, and Waverley as well. Who can forget that poor American mathematician who came to Sydney back in the 80s? And he graduated, he's going to become a mathematical genius, and he was murdered probably a week after he graduated. I think they pushed him over the cliff at Northhead in Manly, so absolutely terrible times. And I note the former member for Coogee moved an official apology from the police, which was wonderful to see a couple of years ago. So my amendment would be that we write to those council areas and set up a working group to identify an adequate location for such a memorial, and that we all work together to find an appropriate location. And I think the community, the LGBTI plus community, may be interested in contributing to that potential location, and it could be Northhead at Manly, it could be in the inner city as well. So I think, you know, in terms of inclusiveness and et cetera, I was wondering if you might consider that.
Could I, could I just ask councillor D'Souza if he accepts the proposed amendment?
What councillor, as I said, it's very raw to the people in our area. So my idea and the request of the families is something in the Randwick LGA. We have one in Waverley at Marks Park, Three Jagged Pillars, and the message is clear, we need something similar. So if, I didn't want to reread my notice of motion, but it's evidence-based. We have two locals, there are many, but two locals who suffered. One of them died on the walk from Coogee to La Perouse. So we've certainly got a location, a connection with what occurred. So of course, the intent of this motion is to have something local to give families a place of reflection where they can get closure.
Okay.
So putting it somewhere else wouldn't be acceptable, but certainly here.
Just for the benefit of the meeting, could I just confirm councillor?
I'm not going to move it.
Sorry. You're not going to move it, is that correct?
I'm not moving an amendment, that's, I like.
Okay, so the proposed change has been withdrawn, so we'll now go back. Was there anything further that you wanted to say councillor Roberts, or I can continue?
No, that's okay.
Okay, thank you. I now call councillor Sid. You're on mute councillor Sid.
In a similar vein as councillor Roberts, I agree with the sentiment of this motion, but I'd like to put it to councillor D'Souza, and I agree with him that it should be within the Randwick LGA. So last month, we voted on making the Rainbow Walkway Coogee permanent. Addition to that, councillor Singh asked for a plaque to go up adjacent to the rainbow, explaining the meaning of it. So what I suggest to councillor D'Souza, that is, if, I think this would be a great way of putting, because the rainbow, as it was explained last month, is a symbol of inclusion and diversity.
Harmony.
And it explains that in the past, people would not accept people from the LGBTQI community. And as a council now, we have, and this is a huge step that we have taken by putting that rainbow permanent, and I think it's a good way that we can show that we've included the past injustices on this plaque, and it'll be there so that people can enjoy, and the joy that comes from seeing that rainbow, it represents to all the people, no matter who, the differences that you have, that you're accepted within Randwick, and that the hate crimes of the past are now forgotten, never forgotten, sorry, but we're fighting as a council that we want people to know that they're accepted. And also, at the same time, in the 80s, it was physical harm that was brought amongst people, and now, in the decades that belong to us now, as we know, it's social media that performs harm to people in this community. And it's the harm of the mental health of these people that, you know, through posts on Instagram and Facebook, that unfortunately, they're committing suicide. So in the past, it was physical. that unfortunately they're committing suicide. So in the past, it was physical, it was physical crime that, you know, bashed these people. But now it's mental crime and it's coming through the social media. So we need this rainbow and we need the plaque to represent that, to, to anyone, to make a statement to all people, no matter your sexual preference, your race or your colour, that you should ignore the haters on Instagram, social media and people who physically abuse you. And that the community of Randwick accepts you and embraces you. So if, if the move, if councillor D'Souza accepts it on this plaque, and I can leave the wording to him, that as councillor Singh said, it would be a great addition to the rainbow.
Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to accept it. I think it's wonderful, a very generous gesture, because it'll start conversations. What more prominent a position can we give this place of reflection than where the, the rainbow flag is at the moment? As long as the plaque tells the story, that's what we want. We want a place of reflection. Let people know what occurred and the sufferings of this community, this minority group. But really, as Ali Barbara said earlier, it's about cultural diversity. It's not only about this particular group, but it's about everyone that suffered. I spoke of my own suffering of racism and bigotry and prejudice. So I guess, yes, thank you. I'm happy to take it on board and I couldn't think of a better location. Just the plaque should tell the story and initiate and start conversations.
Thank you. Can I just confirm to councillor Singh that you're okay with that now and continue to second it?
I agree with that. It's a brilliant suggestion from our former mayor councillor Sed. And I'm happy that councillor D'Souza, you are in agreement too.
Senator Sed.
Thank you. I now call on councillor DeRocha.
I for one take this extremely personal. Most of my life, especially my teenage years, I grew up defending the gay community. They used to get bashed, they used to get hassled. And a lot of my friends who pretended they had girlfriends actually trusted in me to say that, you know, they had boyfriends. At that point, it was one of the hardest things they had to come out. Does my friends want a monument to say that, you know, like, we want people to feel sorry because we got bashed? No, they don't. My friend wants to celebrate like the rainbow that we have at Coogee. My friends want inclusiveness to say that, you know, like, we are like everyone else and love shouldn't be discriminated between anyone on this planet, right? Love is love regardless of gender, right? I've had friends that have committed suicide because they're gay. I've had to deal with families of their sons and daughters that have had to do that. I've had people that OD'd because of all this stuff. That's why even when I spoke to Noel about this motion tonight, I was just so touched and I even said, do we really want to go there with this? Because we already, we've reached the point that being gay is no longer a dirty word anymore. Being gay now is part of whether I'm in love with Nikki or John is in love with David, no one judges this, right? I'm just saying that the rainbow thing that we have on those steps, a plaque would be amazing recognizing, you know, the, the gay community, you know, as being just as loving. But do I want something separate than what the heterosexuals and homosexuals have? They don't want that. And if you speak to them, they don't. They just want acceptance. They want us to love them and them love us like I have loved them for most of my life, even though I have, you know, an, an interest to the opposite sex that they do. I don't want something different just to say, I feel sorry for you because you got bashed. Well, feel sorry for me because I was a wog that had to fight for racism for fifteen years. But I don't want that either. My friends used to say that. All I want is to be the same as you. That's what they used to say. So just be careful how far we go with this because I am so, so in support of the gay community, you know, the transvestite, I said, whatever, you name it. I've been there and you look up my history and people will tell you. I was a protector for so many years of people that used to be abused and assaulted and bashed and criticized and used to speak with their parents. Do I need a plaque to say that this was a sad moment that everyone was bashed? I don't, but I'm just saying, that's just me. I'm sorry to come out so negative. I'm not negative. I love the gay community, but I'm sure that this would probably, you know, not make them feel that great that we're separating them from the rest of society by saying, we feel sorry you got bashed because we all did in a way.
Okay, thank you. I'll just now like to confirm the speaking list. I have hands up from councillors Andrews, Veach and Hamilton. Were there anyone else who I needed to add to the speaking list?
I'll, I'll raise my hand too, Mr. Mayor.
And councillor Staverinos, okay. I now call on councillor Andrews and then I'll go to councillor Veach and then councillor Hamilton, then councillor Staverinos.
Yes, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'd just like to commend councillor D'Souza for bringing this motion forward tonight. I think it's a motion with merit and I'd just like to follow on from my fellow councillor, councillor DeRocha, which I, I need to congratulate on, on what he just said, because it's a hundred percent correct. And following on from councillor DeRocha, I think it's important that we do some sort of consultation with the LGBTQI community in particular and also our local residents as well. Like at the last meeting, I moved consultation in, in regards to the rainbow flag.
I'll second that. I'll second that, Mr. Mayor, if councillor Andrews is prepared to move it.
And being the permanent fixture at Coogee Beach, no one is against such thing. But as a council and as a council, we need to consult with our local community, but especially with a community which this memorial is being put forward for the victims of hate crimes in the LGBTQI community. I think there needs to be some consultation. So I commend councillor D'Souza for, for raising this particular matter. The other issue that I, I'd like to raise also is that a, a report come back to council in, in relation to this because we need to know the extent of, if we are going to build a memorial, how big it's going to be, whereabouts it'll go and what the financial cost to council also will be, whether we'll be able to derive some sort of funding from the state government or federal government in relation to this particular memorial. So I commend, I commend the motion, but I would, I would move that, one, that's a report come back to council after some sort of community consultation with our local community, but also with the relevant LGBTQI community of Sydney.
Okay, thank you councillor Staverinos.
Mr. Mayor, Mr. Mayor.
Point of order, please. So, 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 so just, just so I can confirm, there's a point of order. So I will go to the point of order first from councillor Singh and then I will go to councillor D'Souza. But the point of order from councillor Singh.
I feel there's a bit of a confusion here from my good friend councillor Andrews. We're not talking about a big memorial now. We're talking about a plaque. How much is it going to cost? A few thousand dollars? Just a plaque. We're not talking about a statue or anything, right?
Okay, look, look. Thank, thank you councillor Singh. What I will do is I will clarify with councillor Andrews that he is aware that that is the case and that it is his intention to continue to move the amendment.
Sorry, I wasn't aware that there was a, an amendment for a plaque. I, I didn't see that on the screen. My understanding, my understanding was that it was a memorial. So I'd take it if there's some clarification that it, it is now just a plaque.
That is my.
Right, councillor Andrews.
That, that is, that is, that is, that is my interpretation.
Yeah, let me say it.
Nice, but it is very hard to see what that amendment was.
Okay, look, thank, thank.
I'm happy, I'm happy to withdraw it. I wouldn't have moved it if I knew there was a plaque. But it's, that is now a plaque, not a memorial.
Okay, thank you. It now being withdrawn, I will now return to the debate on the motion and I will go to councillor Veach.
Thank you. I too commend the motion put forward by councillor D'Souza and councillor, seconded by councillor Singh. And I think the, the suggestion which was adopted by councillor Sed to have a plaque at the Coogee Rainbow is a fantastic one. And councillor Andrews suggested, you know, that there should be consultation with the LGBTQI community. And I completely agree. I think that's highly appropriate. It really means a lot to people. Some councillors have said people don't want them to feel sorry. You know, community groups don't like to be pitied or to feel sorry for them. But when there's deep hurt, you know, people have been murdered, you know, then it's appropriate. From time to time, we do have merril minutes and motions where someone has passed away in our community. And, and it's appropriate at those times for council to support a memorial and this is no different. So I fully support it. All levels of government have a role to play in supporting different community groups, often marginalised community groups, local government, state and federal. There's no excuse for, for violence. There's no excuse for hate speech. Doesn't matter your point of view or your community or religious background even. There should be no excuse for, for hate speech or violence against the LGBTQI community or in fact, any other community member. And so I support and commend the motion.
Well, culture. Thank you councillor Veach. I now call on councillor Hamilton.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I actually wanted to make the point that I noticed that in the original motion and in the amended motion, that the word consulted was used. And, and this is no call out to anyone else that's spoken before me, but that was the point that I wanted to make when I put my hand up initially, that I think that it's fantastic that councillor D'Souza has recognized that we should consult with all these, all communities that we want to recognize and we want to pay a, a level of respect, no matter how great or small, that we ensure that they're included in the conversation rather than us making a decision without understanding exactly what their needs are. And so I think that this is fantastic, that this is the second time we've had a, a similar issue come to a meeting. And this time we can see here that we're, we are including the consultation and we're making sure that the people that we're, we're recognising have a voice in this as well. So well done.
Thank you councillor Hamilton. Councillor Staverinos, you have your hand up. Did you still want to speak on the motion?
I do, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, look, Mr. Mayor, when I first saw this motion, I was a bit concerned. And the concern that I had was that there are many groups within our community who have been subjected to hate crime, you know, in, in many different circumstances. And we've heard, we heard councillor D'Souza mention that, you know, the racial hatred that he faced when he first came to Australia. We heard from councillor DeRocha. What I'm concerned about is our motto at council is a sense of community, inclusion. And I think that what we should be focusing on is not just one particular group of people who have faced hate crime. There are many groups of people within our community who have faced hate crime. We've got a prominent indigenous community who have, who have faced hate crime since seventeen eighty-eight, when the first leak came. We have other, the Jewish community who have faced antisemitism. Look, I, I just feel that we have to be very careful in, in installing a plaque or any sort of memorial when it comes to hate crime because there are many groups of people within our community who have been subjected to hate crime. And, you know, where do we stop? Where, I mean, if we, if we put this in now, do we then say to the Greek community, for instance, oh, well, you know, you were subjected to hate crime during the Ottoman rule from fourteen fifty-three to eighteen twenty-one, which saw millions of Greeks lose their lives? Does that mean we say no to the Greek community? Or does that mean we say, yeah, okay?
Sorry, we've had a point of order from councillor Hamilton. If you could please speak to your point of order.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that we're deviating away from the
No, we're not. No, we're not.
Point of the motion. And I believe that it actually is really disrespectful to the mover of the motion and the secondor of the motion and the tone and sentiment of the motion to raise up other issues.
Mr. Mayor, I'll call, please rule on this now. This is absolutely absurd. I'm sorry.
Okay, thank, thank you councillor Staverinos. I will rule that it is not a point of order. However, I would caution councillor Staverinos to be as temperate in his language as possible, considering the sensitivity around this particular.
No problem. Look, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to support the motion, but I really do believe that there are many groups within our community who have been subjected to hate crime. And I think that we should be recognizing all groups within our community, not just one particular group. That's all I want to say. And that is our motto, a sense of community, councillor Hamilton. Maybe you need to have a look at it.
Thank, thank you councillor Staverinos. Are there any further speakers before I call on councillor D'Souza to close the debate? Okay, there being no further speakers, I call on councillor D'Souza to close the debate.
Mr. Mayor, before I do close the debate, I must remind councillor Staverinos, our motto actually is prima, always first, prima semper. The, the comment he is what we associate with a sense of community, but our motto is prima semper, always first. Let me close the debate, Mr. Mayor, by saying firstly, I want to congratulate councillor Sed and others who helped refine this motion and have made it better. It'll be less expensive, but it'll still become a place of reflection. It'll become a definite place for people to go to reflect. And it's a central position to seek comfort, to pray, which is so important for victims' families. You know, initially, yes, I thought of an edifice, a jagged pillars like we had at Waverley and a brass plaque telling the story, the council had contributed a hundred thousand. But thanks to the wisdom of former mayor Sed, we have a site, we have an opportunity. And councillor Veach and others who have made, at Singh, who have made a really sensible contribution. We can still tell our story. Now I hope that we move forward and I hope you support me. We'll use that spot. We'll have a plaque. We'll have a plaque which actually documents the history. That's what I'd like of the struggle for gay rights. That's important. And I hope you can consider that. Look, when I, when I, when I thought about it and families approached me, I wrote a letter to my friend Justice Kirby. And, and I, and I asked his wisdom and he was happy for me to, to share this correspondence with you as I close this debate. Justice Kirby, in his correspondence to me, said, "Good luck in standing up for LGBTQ minorities." It is true that there were many brutal attacks on LGBTIQ people in Sydney when I was growing up. These were a source of great pain and fear. It would be good if those, that's us, with contemporary responsibility for equality and human dignity, acknowledged the wrongs of the past and recorded them in a way that would provide instruction to the young concerning the future. Good wishes, Michael Kirby. I'll leave it at that, Mr. Mayor. I think we said it all. And I thank you for the wisdom of those councillors who helped make this a better notice of motion and made it actually financially affordable for this council. Thank you.
Thank you councillor D'Souza. I will now put the motion. All those in favour.
Aye.
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 All the, all those against.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, I declare that carried.
Thank you councillors. Thank you for human dignity.
I now move to NM seventy-eight slash.
I'll second this, Mr. Mayor.
Moved notice of motion from councillor DeRocha, support for the no Maturville incinerator campaign.
Seconded, Mr. Mayor.
By councillor DeRocha and seconded by councillor Sed. Councillor DeRocha.
Everybody that's known about this incinerator, so many people far and wide have now looked at Maturville as a stepping stone to hopefully protect their areas. Chris spoke earlier on and there were three major incinerators in other areas that people have been fighting against. We had councillor Curry from Bayside who attended the Maturville precinct the other day and she was in total support to do everything possible against incinerator coming into place because of how far this will affect people depending on when, wind conditions, et cetera. because of how far this will affect people depending on when, wind conditions, et cetera. You know, like, I just really think that, you know, we shouldn't wait on other councils and we've done well. We've had Josh counsel, everyone supporting the Matreville precinct in some way, shape or form to show that all of us councillors, all of us, Labour, Liberal, Greens, whatever, we're all one thing in common and that is that this incinerator is a bad thing for our area. It's a bad thing for our communities. And there is a place for incinerators, but not anywhere near residential communities. Well away from it for that matter. I just hope that, my motion is a simple one. I had it a lot more and then I had to play with it, you know, you know, get some advice and then take it to, you know, the point that I think that hopefully all of us, regardless of what party we're at, that we're going to fly the flags, we're going to support, we're going to tell, you know, state government, federal government, whatever, that we are not a dumping ground for everything. We are not a dumping ground for any unwanted industries that no one else wants. But so shouldn't be any local communities where there are houses close to these things. We've all been fighting, sorry?
Please continue councillor.
No, that's all. We've all been fighting together against this. And I hope that, you know, you support my motion and I hope that, you know, we do fly the flags. We do keep supporting the local precincts. We do keep telling state government, you know, until, you know, we can get some sort of reassurance that this thing's not going to come to our area. And I just hope that we stay united and actually protest against this horrible, horrible development which will affect so many people's health and wellbeing.
Thank you councillor De Rocha. Councillor Said, the seconder of the motion, did you want to speak to it?
Yes, please, Mr Mayor. And I commend councillor De Rocha. But I just think that if we could have clarity on point A, then we wouldn't need to get to point B. We have, as all you councillors realise, that Minister Keane wrote to Tanya Davis, MP of Morgawa, that the waste of energy policy meant that plants in her electorate would be stopped based on this policy. Yet the same policy which rules out the incinerator at Matreville, he refuses to meet with us to clarify that we are right in saying that we, that the policy does not allow this to happen in our area. He refuses to give us the courtesy. We have been asking, I've asked on multiple occasions.
Okay, thank you councillor Said. Councillor D'Souza has moved to point of order. I will hear the point of order and then I will
I think we're getting some misinformation as, as Chris has mentioned, we have a meeting with the minister.
Actually, it's, sorry councillor, the meeting is not with the minister, the meeting is with his staff.
With his advisers.
Councillor, councillor, thank you.
But to say what you're saying is
Thank you councillors. One person will speak at a time. I've just muted you. Councillor D'Souza, my recommendation is you move a point of order as it goes through the code of meeting practice. I do note you have injected your view as to the nature of the meeting. I will now unmute you and you can speak to a particular point of order. And then I'll go back to councillor Said.
Mr Mayor, I'm quite happy to accept your decision. If, I did say there was misinformation being spoken, but if you're of the view that it isn't, I accept your decision. I'm a fair-minded person.
Thank you very much councillor D'Souza, councillor Said. And if you'd just like to return to the substance of the motion, thank you.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. So this same policy rules out the incinerator at Matreville. But the minister refuses to meet with us and give us the same courtesy that he gave Tanya Davis. He gives us, and to give us the same commitment that this no longer does not, that the incinerator does not meet any of the criteria that's based in the waste energy policy. And again, we need to meet the minister to clarify this, that we are correct in our statements, that staff and all the experts have said, including Mr Hanson and everyone else and everyone who lives in Matreville and everyone who lives on this council and every councillor has said in the past, that this does not meet the criteria at all. However, he refuses to meet with us. Here's, there is a delegation meeting a staffer. And unfortunately, the staffer cannot make the decision of that this will be kiboshed. We can prove that it's nearly 99.9% that this should not be built in Matreville for a host of reasons which we discussed in the past. And it was a unanimous decision that we should fight it based on that. So we just need, before we can get to point B, if we could just get the minister to stop dismissing our community, our council, and protect the South Ward from this injustice. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Said. I now call councillor D'Souza. Councillor D'Souza, you're on mute.
But I can see what councillor Said was trying to do, dilute the importance of the meeting. The meeting is with Mr Keane's chief of staff. And those, like you, Mr Mayor, who've been in politics and state government, are made aware that the advisers are the ones that make most of these decisions. And the minister normally takes the guidance of the adviser nine out of 10 times. But I'll leave it at that. But let's come back to councillor De Rocha's motion. Nature, Mr Mayor and councillors, is vital to us all. A thriving natural world regulates our climate, nurtures our physical and mental health and helps feed our families. But for too long, we've neglected our wild spaces. And now we are facing a number of tipping points. If we don't act now, we will permanently destabilise our planet and we will rob our children of the future they deserve. Research is pretty clear that incineration is much less beneficial than recycling in terms of getting, what Chris talks about, the circular flow of resources back into the economy. Once you burnt it, it's gone. You don't get that resource back. That is why this issue is so important to environmentally conscious people like myself and others. Burning plastics for fuel squanders a valuable resource that can be recycled. And this is evidence-based. Rachel Wakefield ran from the Institute of Sustainable Energy Futures at the University of Technology Sydney, has written a paper on it and confirmed this. My friends, burning of plastics would be really problematic because it would increase our demand for virgin products like oil. Burning waste fuels based on petrochemicals and burning plastics delivered from fossil fuels do not create green energy. It is simply burning fossil fuels in another
Toxic, toxic energy.
That's right, sir. Plastic, as I said, is made from hydrocarbons, just like oil, and are more energy dense than coal. Therefore, burning plastics rather than recycling plastics is not the answer. And, you know, furthermore, we don't have any regulations in place or even policies to monitor what will be coming out of those toxic, in those toxic plumes or out of these incinerators. In countries like Switzerland, and I've researched this a lot for our community, they have monitors and limit the emissions from these incinerators. My concern and our community's concern at Matreville is whether Australia would do the same. So that is a big problem, you know? Another thing, as I said, there are no regulations in place to ensure that this emission
Policy councillor D'Souza, all it needs is minister
Councillor, councillors, councillors, councillors. Thank you. Speakers will be heard in silence, both councillor D'Souza and councillor Said. Councillor D'Souza, you're on mute. I'll now continue, but I'd just like to remind the meeting that speakers will be heard in silence. I can now unmute councillor D'Souza.
Okay, thank you. This incinerator that is being proposed at Matreville is a real threat to the quality of life and the air quality in the South Ward. These diffuse gases and pollutants know no borders. So it's not any Matreville that'll be affected, like the bushfire smoke that we had a year ago, a few years ago. Gases, the gases will be diffused and they'll become a health hazard for us all. Finally, this incinerator should not be built because it runs counter to the government's thinking. You know, the government has pledged to close the gap between the alarming difference in health statistics between our Indigenous people and non-Indigenous people. Putting a waste incinerator next to one of the most densely populated urban Indigenous areas is very, 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 very bad, bad for our community. And anyway, I like to say I support what Chris said. We should reduce, reuse and recycle. And if we all subscribe to this belief, then there would be little need to build an incinerator to burn waste for energy under the premise that we have no more space in landfills. My friends, I'm going to conclude, this should no longer be a political debate, but a human debate. Because climate change and the burning of fossil fuels will increase our carbon emissions and threatens our very existence. And this will contribute to climate change. We need to address this challenge with honesty and courage. The natural world, my friends, on which we entirely depend on, is declining
What a order, Mr Mayor.
At a rate faster than
Excuse me councillor D'Souza, excuse me councillor D'Souza, there is a point of order. I'll hear the point of order.
Mr Mayor, if you read the motion, it's asking point A is for New South Wales government to categorically rule out the proposal. Point B is to have a campaign and putting flags and banners up. It's not about what comes out, it's not about clean earth policy, et cetera. As I said before, we've debated this a million times. Just wish that councillor D'Souza sticks to the two points, A and B, and debate A and B of the motion. Thank you.
Mayor?
I haven't heard whether we're going to follow, right?
So, excuse me, excuse me.
He understood point A and B. He forgets that A and B come from C and D.
Councillor D'Souza, thank you. Look, I think you were being very broadly relevant. But what I might actually do is just encouraging, encourage you to begin concluding your remarks in light of the fact that you are in fact approaching your time.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. In the next 10 years, councillors, we need to act. We need to find solutions to repair our planet. Please keep learning, friends. Keep demanding change. Don't be like that other councillor. Don't give up. Together, we will rise to these challenges and save our planet. And by stopping things like this incinerator, that's exactly what we'll be doing. I support this motion. I support councillor De Rocha's motion because what it does, I heard councillor, I think it was Nielsen, talk about being proactive. What it'll do is it'll help us as a council to be involved, to be proactive in saving our planet for the next and future generations. Thanks, Mr Mayor. Thank you for giving me that little bit of extra leverage. Thank you.
Thank you councillor D'Souza. I have councillor Andrews's hand up.
Yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, I support the motion brought forward by councillor De Rocha tonight. And I commend councillor De Rocha, the hard-working independent out at South Ward. Because, Mr Mayor, just like we did with Yarra Bay Cruise Terminal, this council opposes that, but it further opposes an incinerator in Matreville. And I support this motion because just as we did with Yarra Bay, Mr Mayor, we should put on our garbage trucks, no to Matreville incinerator. This council unanimously opposes any incinerator at Matreville. And I concur with councillor De Rocha. And I also concur with my fellow councillors, councillor Said and councillor D'Souza. It's not a time to debate this matter and call. We need to be united councillors, because when we're united, we're stronger. And we need to be strong on this particular matter and show the state government that all 15 councillors on this council oppose an incinerator in Matreville. We are all together on this and it's not needed to play politics. We all oppose it, just like we all oppose an overseas passenger terminal at Yarra Bay.
Yes.
I note that here, a merril minute on tonight. United we are, we will defeat this ridiculous proposal for an incinerator in Matreville. And I'd like to commend the speaker tonight and his organisation, who have worked tirelessly on behalf of our community to make it publicly aware what this incinerator, the effects of this incinerator really are. So I commend the speaker tonight, I commend councillor De Rocha, and I commend the South Ward councillors who are united on this particular matter and should work together for their community.
Thanks, Anthony. Thank you councillor Andrews. I now have a hand up from councillor Roberts. I'm just conscious of time. I will then move to councillor De Rocha to close the debate after councillor Roberts.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I just want to take two seconds just to put on the record that this is, this is a total unity ticket. All parties, including the Liberal Party, are totally behind this. And I totally commend all the locals down there, Liberal, Labor, Greens, Independents, the precinct committee, they're all working together.
Well said.
Well said.
Just want to put that on the record. Thank you.
Okay, thank you councillor Roberts. Councillor De Rocha to close the debate.
I think I've said enough. I just hope that you support this motion so that united we stand in supporting our neighbouring councils, that this is a real risk to our health and wellbeing. But most of all, we cannot continue to be the dumping ground for all unwanted industries in other areas. So councillors, I hope you support this.
Thank you councillor De Rocha. I'll now put the motion. All those in favour?
Aye.
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 All those against?
Aye.
Okay, I declare that carried. Okay. There being one further section in the, one further motion, NM 83/21. Notice of motion from councillor Mattson, addressing the Prime Minister's obligations at the upcoming COP26 Climate Change Conference in Glasgow, is moved by councillor Mattson. Do I have a seconder?
Seconded Lindsay Stewart.
A seconded by councillor Stewart.
Mr Mayor, can I advise you in the seconder that it is my intent to move the motion with a slightly different word to what is on the business paper? I would like to take out
Are you asking that we invite China to the meeting in India?
Oh, really, Mr Mayor?
Councillor Andrews, if you could just let councillor Mattson just clarify what he is moving for the benefit of the meeting. Thank you.
Mr Mayor, Mr Kelly is putting the changes into place. I dropped off clause B5, which did read with the intent of having us write to every MP, but I don't think that's now necessary and probably logistically difficult to achieve in the time left before the conference. The other change is to clause B, subclause 2, it now reads Mr Kelly hasn't quite finished, I think.
I think if we could just pause for a second, otherwise would you be able to read it to the meeting?
Certainly, the new version would be urgently writing to the Prime Minister in the next few days, urging him to commit Australia to achieving a reduction of 75% under 2005 levels of emissions and to achieving net zero emissions by 235.
Okay, thank you. Just for the benefit of the meeting, could I just confirm to Mr Kelly that you have actually received that? So that when we continue the debate, you'll be able to update what is on front of the screen? Mr Kelly?
No, the two emails I've received from councillor Mattson, I don't think are if councillor Mattson could send me all the wording in one go, it would be great.
Okay.
What I'll do, what I'll do is I'll get councillor Mattson to speak to it. Then when the seconder is speaking, councillor Mattson, if you could send that through, that would be fantastic.
Certainly. Thank you very much. Look, we've watched a pretty embarrassing performance over the last couple of weeks from the Prime Minister of Australia. It has taken almost eight years to move the government to a position a very lukewarm position, that the government would pursue net zero emissions by 2050, 2050. That's pathetic. We've watched him struggle with the National Party for a couple of weeks now in which he has had to virtually beg them to take him off the political heat and allow him to bring this very, very mild position forward to the conference in Glasgow. I've watched and I've been reading the media releases and the mentions on the ABC and the Prime Minister's
Point of order.
Sorry, thank you councillor Mattson, I have a point of order from councillor Andrews. Councillor Andrews, your point of order.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, the point of order is that this motion raised by councillor Mattson is not the appropriate forum for it to be heard. And I ask that you rule this motion out of order and that councillor Mattson make the relevant representations on his own behalf to the Prime Minister of Australia. It's not, it's not the free cause of local government and it's not within our constitution of local government to deal with this matter tonight. He's calling, he's calling on matters in his motion, which are not achievable by Randwick City Council.
Look, thank you councillor Andrews. While I note your sentiment and it is a consistent sentiment that you have heard. Thank you. I rule that that is not a point of order and I point to the fact that there have been a consistent range of motions in a similar vein. And this is, I would argue, at least in recent years, well within the custom and practice of the council. So I rule that there is no point of order and I request that councillor Mattson please continue.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, we are part of the global community here in Randwick, in our local government area. We will experience rising sea levels, we will experience adverse weather conditions, we will experience the need to expend more of the ratepayers' money over the next coming decades just to maintain our infrastructure under what will be a hammering. There will be a hammering around the world on local councils and how they can provide their services. We will see a very reduced global environment. It's totally predictable now that there will be at least a 1.5% rise in global temperatures. And it looks like we will also, we are also on the path to getting a 2% rise. The battle now is really to stop it from getting to 3%, which will be devastating. Look, the wording, as I put it, I originally asked for a 30%, 100% net zero emissions by 230, but I've changed that. I've changed it to bring it into alignment with what the Climate Council of Australia is urging. And that is that Australia achieve a 75% reduction under the 2005 greenhouse gas emissions. And we achieve that by 2030 and that by 2035, we achieve net zero emissions. Net zero emissions. All around the world now, countries are now recognising that simply achieving net zero emissions by 250 isn't going to save us, it's not going to save a 3% increase. I listened to the, I read the ABC website the other day and then the Prime Minister was saying that his government had promised a 28% reduction in greenhouse emissions by 2030. And he was claiming and boasting even that actually Australia was on track to achieve a 35% reduction. And that, he didn't seem to be aware of the irony that that better figure was being achieved through complete non-action by his government. And that really what it was being achieved by was progressive change in the business sector. More solar energy and technical resources are being offered. They're being taken up by the mum and dad buyers of solar arrays to put on top of their houses. If we can actually achieve, if we are on track to achieve a 35% reduction by 2030, then why can't we achieve a 75% reduction? If the government is forced to actually put some real money and planning behind what it announced over the weekend. Over the weekend, we had a belated announcement by the coalition government that yes, Australia would work towards or would desire to achieve net zero emissions by the very, very late figure of 250. But really, they said that without even offering any real plan, any real timetable, any real, well, no legislative reforms. They need to be forced, the pressure needs to be kept up. And yes, as a local council
Point of order, point of order, Mr. Mayor. Councillor Mattson has spoken for well and truly more than five minutes and I'll call him up on it, please, thank you.
Thank you councillor Stavridinos, I have just received a notification that it is in fact five minutes. So I will conclude councillor Mattson there and we will now move to councillor Shury.
Hi, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I reserve my rights, I think councillor Mattson spoke very eloquently and I think he basically said it all. Governments really, Prime Minister has to be there at the world stage talking about action on climate change and I commend this motion.
Thank you councillor Shury, I now have councillor Roberts with his hand up, councillor Roberts.
Thank you. I obviously will not be supporting this typical Greens motion that comes in practically every meeting. And we go through the motions for probably a 45-minute period, pushing the agenda further to the right, further to midnight on the issues that really matter to our local constituents. So I'm pretty, at a personal level, you know, not surprising that the Greens have put this motion on the agenda. But, you know, on behalf of the community, there are more important things to discuss like roads and rubbish and rates. And this is certainly just more grandstanding on the Greens' part. So I'd just like to point out that the catastrophism is just, it's just, it's just so, it's so tiring that you hear from the Green Party about the future. It's like you're watching a horror movie and it's all based on feelings. You know, they're the ones that talk about the science, but the science actually
Excuse me, point of order.
Sorry.
This is not addressing the motion in any way whatsoever.
It's not addressing the motion, it's talking about a political party.
Thank you, thank you councillors. I rule that that is not a point of order as councillor Roberts is talking generally to the motion. However, I would encourage him to stick more closely to it where possible.
Thank you for your encouragement, Mr. Mayor. I will stick close to it, I'm talking exactly directly at this motion. The science is in, greenhouse effect is real, the danger is real. But the science is also in that there is absolutely no way that this is going to be a runaway greenhouse effect. Okay, so that's just lies.
Point of order, point of order. Mr. Mayor, lies, lies from me?
Yes, it's an absolute bleak future.
Okay, sorry, thank you, thank you. Councillor, language around lying and the like is a very serious accusation to level at a colleague. I will politely just ask councillor Roberts to withdraw it.
I withdraw it.
Okay, thank you.
The science is in, I invite you to go onto the Conversation website, a respected platform of Australian universities and do a search on runaway greenhouse effect and it'll show you that there's absolutely zero risk of the future that is dystopically described by the Greens' party. There obviously is risks in the future, so we need to do something about it. And what we can do is, we can reduce our greenhouse gas emissions in a gradual way and to make it net zero as soon as we can without costing our economy, without costing our jobs. Because that's the responsible thing to do and that's what our residents want us to do. So the government this week has committed to net zero by 2050. And I think that's an absolutely fantastic outcome. You know, so where do the Greens stand? Do the Greens just, are they relativistic? You know, whatever the centre parties say, they just move to the left, you know, another 20%. You know, so it's wonderful that the Australian government is committed to zero by 2050. It's not very far away, it's going to be eye-watering how we do it. I hope that it doesn't negatively affect the economy, but I'm sure as technology grows, we should be able to do it while still growing the economy and not cutting jobs and not taxing the economy to reduce the carbon emissions. So that's my, that's my hope for the future as we lead into 2050. You know, the risks involved in this, you know, does the Labor Party really want to put their name to this? You know, initially it was 0% by 2030. You know, what are the risks and effects that that could cause to the Australian economy? Now, at the last minute, you know, he realises how crazy it is and he changes it to 75% by 2030 and no more emissions by 2035. So the risks are quite outrageous to electricity bills. What will it affect in terms of jobs? You know, what sort of mandates would be involved to achieve this on our community? Like, we've already, we've already had a bit of a window into what mandates can do on our community through the COVID lockdowns, you know. And so if the Labor Party want to put their name to this motion, go right ahead. If they want to put their name to 0%, you know, in 10 years and, you know, answer the questions about what that's going to cost us, feel free to go ahead. I certainly won't be putting my name to that. And I think any reasonable, responsible person would see this motion for what it is. It's irresponsible and it's not in our national interest, thank you.
Thank you councillor Roberts. I now have councillor Stavridinos, Veach, Andrews and Hamilton. Councillor Stavridinos. Oh, and councillor Bowen as well.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Look, over the last four meetings
I've backed off.
All we've been, all we've been hearing about is about Glasgow and this conference and how the world is coming to an end. Anybody would think, and I said this at the last council meeting, anybody would think that we are the United Nations here in Randwick City Council and that we are going to make a massive difference to climate change right here in our own backyard. Well, I've got some news for councillor Mattson. The three largest polluters in the world, Russia, China and India, will not be attending the Glasgow conference. They are laughing at us. In fact, China will be building 95 new coal-fired power stations in the next 12 months. This is the slap in the face that the world is now going to get from the largest polluters. They contribute 70% of the world's global carbon dioxide emissions. And yet here we are, Australia, which contributes 1% and now we're going to put strain on our economic growth and we don't even know what the costings are going to be for this net zero emissions target that we're talking about. We don't know how many jobs could be lost, there's so much uncertainty with this policy. Yet, you know, we've got councillor Mattson talking about this green utopia that he wants to try and achieve. Australia will not make one iota of difference to global carbon emissions whether or not we go to Glasgow or we don't go to Glasgow. That's what you need to understand councillor. We're not the be all and end all of this thing. We've got bigger fish in the pond who are virtually polluting the atmosphere and getting away with it. And we're selling our coal to them, by the way. And, you know, I mean, at the end of the day, the whole thing's a farce, it's a farce. And then we've got them telling us at the United Nations now that they want people to cut back on red meat consumption so that we can reduce our carbon footprint. I don't want anybody telling me whether I can eat a steak on a Tuesday, Wednesday or Thursday night. It's not the, it's not the way it works with me councillor. And I could tell you now, this green utopia that you believe in will never be achieved unless the world, all countries come to the table.
The party of a duck, yeah, mate.
The Chinese, the Indians and the Russians will not be going to Glasgow. And that is the biggest concern, the fact that the biggest polluters will not be doing the right thing. Now, the other thing I want to state is that in the years that I've been on this council, I've never heard the Greens ever talk about nuclear power. Now, if you wanted to be serious about reducing carbon emissions in Australia and you want to talk about having energy security, you want to talk about having cheaper electricity prices and you want to talk about reducing the carbon footprint, we need to start talking about nuclear power. But I've never heard any of you ever come out and ever say a good thing about, or trying to look at any other sources of energy other than wind and solar. And we know that the sun doesn't always shine and the wind doesn't always blow. So relying on solar and wind is not the way of the future. We need to have a mix, a mix. And that should include clean coal, clean coal power, it should include nuclear, it should include wind and it should include solar. We need to look at all forms of energy sources so that we could transition and go through this evolution towards this green utopia that you think you're going to achieve councillor Mattson. But it's never going to happen in your lifetime, it's never going to happen in my lifetime, it's not going to happen in the lifetime of any of us until the major polluters come to the table and sit down and want to play ball, which they don't want to do. And really, I'm just fed up. Anybody would think that this council, you know, I mean, where are we deviating with this? You know, as councillor Roberts said, we should be dealing with roads, rates and rubbish. But we're not doing that, we waste hours at every meeting debating issues that aren't even relevant to the everyday operation of this council and they're well and truly outside of our jurisdiction. It's an absolute joke. I tell you councillor, there are more important things in the world that we should be dealing with in this council than dealing with motions like this. And you really need to wake up to yourself, thank you.
Okay, I call councillor Veach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, even after all this time, people get very worked up about an issue that for the majority of Australians is actually one of the most important issues, an issue that is at the forefront of their minds. You know, we've had surveys come out really within the last month or so that show that, you know, between 65 and 75% of Australians, of voters in every single federal seat support strong action on climate change. Even the New South Wales Liberal Government is committed to taking very strong steps on climate change. There's so many benefits, but the risks of not taking action is the real worry, that is where the alarm bells should be ringing. And that is why I support this motion put forward by councillor Mattson. We have an opportunity to call on the federal government to go to Glasgow, which he has finally agreed to do, and make a firm and strong commitment and stand with the international community on the huge risks. We are a coastal council. We are under threat by sea level rise. Look at the Pacific Islanders who are calling, begging the international community, which they have been for decades. Their islands are being inundated. This is happening in the Torres Strait. For all those councillors who at meetings come here and say, yes, I stand with First Nations communities, I stand with our Aboriginal communities and we've had a number of motions that we've all supported unanimously. That extends to our Torres Strait Island communities. And they are under immediate threat, they are already being affected by sea level rises. Our communities will, and we heard the speaker, Ms. Foo, who came here, she's a West Ward resident by her own admission. She lives in one of the many older apartment blocks, 60s or 70s apartment blocks, which are right throughout Kingsford, I was out there letterboxing on the weekend, there are thousands of them. None of those places have air conditioning. You know, I was ringing my parents in those heatwaves. You know, we were all ringing friends when there were bushfires. You know, all of us were probably ringing friends and family across New South Wales who lived in those fire zones. We've had floods, we've all been ringing friends and families afflicted by the floods. You know, I mean, there's even been tornadoes. There's been a couple of tornadoes in New South Wales. There was a horrific hailstorm just this last week in regional New South Wales. We can't just stand by and pretend nothing's happening. I mean, there were big reports in the Sun Herald just a week or I mean, there were big reports in the Sun Herald just a week or so ago about the impacts to our food supply with farmers, particularly in, in Northern Australia, begging for action on, on, on climate change to limit global warming because the effect on our food crops. You know, they talked about mangoes. They need a certain amount of, certain amount of cool days under a particular temperature in the evening for certain, you know, processes within that, those trees for the fruit. And so the, the mango crops are going to be much reduced. So food is going to become more scarce and more expensive. The IPCC report, you know, was peer reviewed, 14,000 scientific papers. I mean, it is both scientific. The, the scientific evidence is there and it is also personal. It is also personal because it's, it's us and our, it's our, it's our parents, it's our relatives, it's our friends. I mean, Randwick City is, is a dense metropolitan council. We have people living in housing commission flats. They do not, there are hundreds of them, if not thousands. I don't know the exact number. They don't have air conditioning. And, you know, we've recently experienced a pandemic, you know, in some of those awful, awful heatwaves. We hear of people going to local shopping centres, local libraries, just to get a bit of cool air conditioning, which they can't find in their home. Now, if that, if this would have happened during the pandemic, I don't know what we would have done.
Approaching your time.
Thank you. So I'll, I'll wrap up, but councillors, we need to act now. We need to urge, we need to stand with our community and urge the government to make this commitment and join with the international community to limit dangerous global warming. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I move to councillor Andrews, I'm just conscious of time. If I could encourage all speakers to keep their remarks as brief as possible. Councillor Andrews.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Mayor. I'm glad you raised the issue with time because it saddens me as a councillor on this council that we've spent nearly 30 minutes debating a matter which is most better suited to what we vote, who should be representing us in relation to this particular matter, which is our local federal Member of Parliament, Mr Matt Fissaway and Mr David Sharma for the north of our city. We, as residents, rely on our federal politicians to, to represent us in regards to issues which have been raised here by councillor Mattson. These are matters which we have faith in the ones who we, in faith of the ones who represent us. Matt Fissaway is, you know, our local federal Member of Parliament. He, he is advocating on behalf of his community in relation to this particular matter. This motion, you know, has wasted nearly 30 minutes of council's time. We, we have matters on the business paper tonight, Mr Mayor, which are really relevant to our local community. Cycling and bicycle ways, you know, matters which are matters which local government council should be dealing with tonight. Not writing to the Prime Minister of, I, I can't believe what I'm reading. Urgently write to the Prime Minister in the next day. This is unbelievable. Don't we have faith in Matt Fissaway, our local Member of Parliament? Why can't we write to Matt Fissaway? I can't believe we're going to write to the Prime Minister of, Randwick Council. He's going to write to the Prime Minister of Australia. Is he going to have time to read this before he jumps on the plane? Or should we send councillor Mattson as part of the Prime Minister delegation? He's looking for 10 people to go with him. Maybe this is a farewell trip for councillor Mattson.
Oh, point of order, point of order. This is just really inappropriate.
Sorry, excuse me, excuse me. I'll, I'll hear the, I'll hear the, I'll hear the point of order. Thank, thank you, councillor. Thank, thank you councillors. Councillor Andrews, you are muted. Councillor Veach? You can unmute yourself to say the point of order. I'd ask that it's brief and then we'll go to councillor.
I object to these ongoing personal attacks against councillor Mattson, against the political party to which we belong. Just speak to the motion, please. It's inappropriate conduct from a councillor who's been.
If you can't handle the heat, get out of the kitchen.
Thank you councillor Staverinos.
Please actually address, I guess I'm just saying, if you, people resort to personal attacks when they can't come up with a good argument.
Okay, thank you. Thank you councillor Andrews. I'd just remind you to return to the motion. I think, I think you've made the point which you were seeking to do.
Mr Mayor, I'd like to move an amendment. I'd like to move an amendment that we, that we urgently write to Matt Fissaway to represent us in, in regards to this particular matter. It's not a matter for this council to write.
I'll second that.
I have confidence in Matt Fissaway. He is my local Member of Parliament. He represents me and my constituents in regards to federal issues.
Councillor.
In regards to local issues.
Councillor.
And Mr Daly represents us in relation to state issues.
Councillor Andrews, can I just clarify for the benefit of the meeting? That council writes to our local member in addition to the Prime Minister or in substitute?
I'm happy to accept that if it's the amendment.
The Prime Minister of Australia. We write to our, the protocol is that we write to our local Member of Parliament. That is the person that represents us.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Mattson, my interpretation of it is that he is writing in substitute rather than in addition to, do you accept the amendment?
It's not Matt Fissaway, that's the problem here, Mr Mayor. It's the Prime Minister. No, I do not accept the amendment.
Okay, okay. Thank, thank, thank you. As the mover of the amendment councillor Andrews, have you said all that you, you need to say? Would you like to continue?
I have said everything.
Okay, thank you. The seconder of the amendment councillor Staverinos.
Mr Mayor, I reserve my right to speak at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Singh has just put his hand up. Are you speaking to the amendment or the motion councillor Singh?
I'm a little bit confused here. So the amendment is to write to our local member.
Instead of the Prime Minister.
But are we going to include the other points as well? What I was trying to do was to ask the mover and seconder of the motion whether they would be happy to amend the part of their motion instead of achieving, achieving net zero emissions by 2035. I would like that to be replaced with 2050. And the reason is because if you look at what's happening, or rather what's going to happen in Glasgow is that the vast majority of the G20 countries are accepting that, they're going to pledge net zero by 2050. So there's no way that Australia is going to change its position when the US, EU and UK, they're going to commit to net zero by 2050. So this is just nothing more than grandstanding.
Councillor, councillor Singh. I, I believe that that is directed to councillor Mattson, who is the mover of the motion. We have an amendment in front of us as it relates to whom we're writing to. I'm, I'm happy to take it that you're foreshadowing an amendment or a proposed amendment for councillor Mattson to consider. But what I will do is bring the debate back to the amendment which is in front of us and then we will return to that at a, at a later point once we've dealt with this matter. So.
Mr Mayor, this is councillor Andrew. I'm going to redraw my amendment because we are wasting too much time on this matter.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
I don't think it's the right place to debate in this.
Okay, I thank you. I'll now, so, so just to clarify, I have councillor Hamilton and D'Souza who are talking to the motion. But because councillor Singh has foreshadowed, I'll now move to his potentially foreshadowed amendment, which councillor Mattson may have the opportunity to accept or reject.
Thank you. Am I, am I speaking now? Am I allowed to speak now? Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'm asking the mover and the seconder of the motion if they are prepared to amend only one part of their, their motion, which is to replace the words achieving net zero emissions by 2035 with 2050. And the reason is. Sorry?
Seconded, seconded by councillor Hamilton.
It's, it's simple, simple. Just, I'm just looking at newspaper article here and I said, just, as I said just now, at Glasgow where the G20 countries are meeting, we've got the, the, the major countries like the US, UK, the EU. They are going to commit to a net zero emissions by 2050. So if we are going to bring forward that date to 2035, it's not going to happen. You know that. You and I know that it's not going to happen. We are just grandstanding here. Excuse me for saying that. You'd be lucky if, if the Prime Minister's office is going to give time to read this, this, this letter. So let's be realistic, guys. Let's stick to 2050, net emissions by 2050, not by 2035. That's my amendment. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hamilton as the seconder of this amendment.
Yes, I think everyone's spoken enough on everything. Let's just see how the amendment goes.
Thank you. Are there any further speakers on the amendment? Otherwise I'll.
Speaking on the amendment, Mr Mayor.
Okay, so councillor Mattson speaking on the amendment and then I will go to councillor Roberts speaking on the amendment.
I have a question. Does the question take priority?
In, in this instance, I will actually give it priority and then I'll go to councillor Mattson. Councillor Roberts.
Thank you. Just the question is, what, what's your, what's your decision on the intermediate target? Because that is still in the amendment, 75% below 25 levels by 2030. I assume you wanted to delete that as well?
Okay, I believe, I believe that is directed.
Thank you.
To councillor Singh.
Councillor Roberts.
Because that, because that intermediate, that intermediate level is, is, is too high from my perspective. I could support it otherwise.
It's too high. It's not realistic councillor Roberts. You and I know that.
Yeah. So what's your answer? Is it, do you want to keep in that 2030 inch meter target?
Okay, thank you. I think we've got some clarity on that councillor.
Well, that mounts to a new amendment, doesn't it, by councillor Singh?
That's fine.
Look councillors, can I speak on the amendment now? I'm following the science. The Climate Council says net zero emissions by 250 is too late. The UN is saying it's too late. CSIRO is saying it's too late. As councillor Veach pointed out, the latest report from the UN has been substantially peer reviewed. Net zero emissions by 2050 is the old game. It's too late. The changes are accelerating more than were anticipated. We see it all around the world. Bushfires, out of control droughts, massive changes in waterfalls and storms. Simply saying, simply allowing our Prime Minister to go to this conference and limply say that, yes, at last, he's been forced to take a stand on net zero by 250. It's pathetic. It's out of date. Really what we need to do, it's becoming urgent councillors. The target has to be brought back and I've kept it in line with what the Climate Council of Australia has recommended. That's taken from their website. Now councillors, one day we will be judged on what we do in this generation. And it's time for us to take a stand for coming generations. Myself, councillor Singh, councillor Andrews, we're getting on to be old men. Councillor Staverinos is a bit younger than us, but he sounds even older than us. It's pathetic what we are doing to the younger generations.
Thank, thank you councillor Mattson, continue.
Councillors, we need to get serious. The whole world needs to get serious. And I think it would be a proud thing for the councillors of this administration to say that at the final, last urgent conference, the final conference, which could possibly achieve something, we went out of our way and we seized the moment and said on behalf of our community, no, we don't want what's coming. We expect you, Mr Prime Minister, to get your house in order and to achieve net zero emissions by 2035. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Hamilton. Councillor D'Souza, are you talking to the amendment or to the motion?
I believe what I say will have overlap, but when I put my hand up, it was with regards to the actual motion, but I'm quite happy.
Sorry, Mr Mayor. Sorry, I had, I did have my hand up.
Yes councillor, I did see your hand up.
Mr Mayor, I think everyone needs to speak to the amendment so we can get that out of the way.
No, 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 correct, correct. So, so what I, what I will do. Just for the benefit of, of the meeting, what I will do is if there are no further speakers on the amendment, I will put the amendment. So can I just clarify that there are no further speakers to the amendment?
I would like, I'd like to speak to the amendment.
Okay, I'll, I'll go to councillor Roberts, then, and then we will put the amendment and then we will return to the motion. Okay, councillor Roberts.
Very briefly, I'd just like to say net zero by 2050 is an excellent outcome. It reduces our, our economy to net zero emissions in the foreseeable future. It's just around the corner. It's a wonderful outcome. I think the whole community could get behind that. I think it achieves the balance that we're all looking for because we want to have action on climate change, absolutely. But we want to do it in a sustainable way. And I think 2050 is, is a, is an achievable target that will commit ourselves to action on climate change. So I commend the amendment.
Thank you. There being no further speakers on the amendment, I'll now put the amendment, on the amendment.
Haven't I had my hand up on it?
Well, councillor De Rocha, are you speaking to the amendment or to the general motion?
No, just to what's there at the moment, the Mattson Shuri one?
No, no, so that's.
Sorry. Okay, sorry, sorry, sorry.
I'll return to you.
I apologize.
No, no, totally fine. I will now put the amendment. All those in favour of councillor Singh and Hamilton's amendment.
Mr Mayor, sorry. So can I just clarify? So the amendment is only changing point two? And the rest remains the same? Was the amendment?
No, it strikes, it strikes out. From my interpretation and I'll seek clarification from the mover. Yeah, it strikes out point two.
And the rest of the motion stays the same, yeah?
That's my understanding. Okay.
Someone choked on me pizza, Mr Mayor, but where it says, you know, 2050 and then we've got, you know, urgently write to the Prime Minister, you know, rah rah rah, you know, does that stay there with the 2050? Which one becomes relevant?
Okay, so that 2050 substitutes B, number two, with the 2050. All other components remain the same. Okay, I will now put the amendment moved by councillor Singh and Hamilton. All those in favour of the amendment?
Aye.
Division?
Aye.
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 Okay, all those against.
Glasgow.
No.
All right, okay. So then, okay, thank you. There's been a call for a division, so we'll now go around the horseshoe. All those in favour of the amendment, so councillor Hamilton?
Four.
Councillor Shuri?
Against.
Councillor Nielsen?
Against.
Councillor Veach?
Against.
Councillor Staverinos?
Four.
Councillor Luxford?
Four.
Councillor Sid?
Four.
Councillor Singh?
Four.
Councillor Andrews?
Four.
Councillor Bowen?
Against.
Councillor Mattson?
Against.
Councillor Roberts?
Four.
Just getting echo there. Councillor De Rocha? Councillor De Rocha, are you in favour of the amendment or against the amendment?
A four.
Councillor D'Souza?
Four.
Okay, and the mayor is against. Okay, if you could just scroll down. Okay, the amendment. If you could just scroll down. Okay, the amendment has now been carried and becomes the motion. Councillor Hamilton, did you still seek to speak to the motion?
No, that's fine. Thanks very much. And yeah, good job.
Thank you. Councillor D'Souza, did you still wish to speak to the motion?
Yes, I would like to speak to the motion very briefly. I take on board what some of the councillors said, and councillor Stavridos talks about India and Russia and China not going to this, and it is very relevant. But when people have put forward arguments like this, but look, changing the light bulb won't do anything, or my little contribution won't make a difference, I must remind those people, I don't want to use the word sceptics, but often say to people, a waterfall starts with a single drop of water and see what becomes of it. So in saying that, yes, all the small things we do contribute, and climate change is real. I'm not a scientist, but the scientific community has spoken. If we don't do something about it, we actually will die. I mean, it's evidence based, you know, a very existence is under threat. Now, there's another argument, I think, that was put forward about solar and wind. Oh, what happens when there's no solar and wind? Well, I must remind that councillor, and he knows who he is, that we have something called batteries. We've come a long way from the days where we couldn't store energy. So batteries now fill that role. So, as I said, this is important. We need to take the first steps. As Mao Si tung said, the longest march starts with a single step. And in doing so, this is our opportunity. I know people think the Greens are biased, or they have a view, and it's a dogma, whatever these kind of words. But the fact is, in this case, they're actually doing it for us. They're doing it for us.
I'm washed.
And I remind people, in environmental law, there are two major principles when decisions are made. One is called the principle of intergenerational equity. Now I reiterate what you most probably already know, that we have a duty of care to give to the next generation the way we inherited this planet. So that's the first one. And the second one, which is really relevant here, is the precautionary principle. And what does that say? That says that we have evidence and we're of the view that our future is under threat, or by what we're doing, our community and our climate is under threat. We have a duty of care, an obligation, to prevent it from happening. So those two principles guide me, and I hope it guides other like minded people in making a difference, protecting our climate, bringing down our carbon emissions. But I tell you, those glaciers are melting at a quick rate. We have fires, we have storms, we have tornadoes, we have floods. I mean, I talked about scientists and scientific community, they've spoken. But as a medical person, I look at the symptoms, and that helps me make a diagnosis, or more, in this case, more prognosis. And believe me, we're in trouble. These good people are at least trying to do something about it, and I fully support them. But I think councillor Singh and others, we have to be realistic in our approach. And the realism in this whole motion goes to zero emissions by 2050. It's all right to have targets, but you need to have achievable targets. And that's why I will be supporting the motion the way it has been presented now.
Mr Mayor, if I ask to put it, can someone second my...
I'll second that.
Okay.
Mr Mayor, as councillor said before, we have got a very full book here, and we owe it to our residents to get through this diligently.
I second that amendment.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Doesn't matter.
I have a procedural motion.
Many people tonight have spoken to amendments and so on, and I'd like my chance to speak.
So, no, thank you. So if I could just, for a second, I have a procedural motion to put it, moved by councillor Sed and councillor Roberts. I'll deal with that immediately. All those in favour of the procedural motion that it is put?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against?
No.
Okay, I declare that carried. Okay, now that that has been carried, I will now put the motion.
Division.
Okay, all those in favour of the motion, and I'll go straight to a division. Thank you.
I will be supporting the motion.
Okay, councillor Hamilton? Councillor Shuri?
For.
Councillor Nielsen?
For.
Councillor Veitch?
Against.
Councillor Stavridos?
For.
Councillor Luxford?
For.
Councillor Sed?
Actually, can I just mention too, Mr Mayor, sorry, just a quick point that this is not horseshoe. I should be second last, but anyway.
Okay.
Oh, don't say that.
No, I am. It's not the horseshoe.
Thank you councillor Sed.
You're always last.
Councillor Sed?
Now, don't be offensive. Be hurtful.
Councillor Singh?
For.
Councillor Andrews?
For.
Councillor Bowen?
For.
Councillor Mattson?
For.
Councillor Roberts?
For.
Councillor De Rocha?
For, sorry.
Councillor D'Souza?
For.
Okay, and the mayor is for. Okay, I declare that carried.
Well done.
All right, thank you. It being nine twenty.
Thank God. And now I'm late.
Councillors, it being nine twenty, and the fact that we have been going for three hours and twenty minutes, I will now call for a ten minute break, and we shall return at nine thirty. Thank you.
Thank you. Good job, Mr Matt.
Thank you. Thank you councillors. We'll now just begin, but before we do, I'm just going to inspect that we're all here. I have councillor Singh, Luxford, Andrews, Roberts, De Rocha, Hamilton, Sed, Stavridos, Nielsen, Mattson, D'Souza, Veitch. I have an apology councillor. Shuri has had to leave, she is not feeling well. Mr Kelly or Mr McNiven, is that all of the councillors? I believe so. And councillor Bowen. Councillor Bowen, are you here?
I'm here.
You're Bowen now. Christie.
I'm not Bowen, Hamilton.
What I might do is I will begin the meeting, but Mr McNiven, would you be able to text councillor Bowen saying that we're about to begin?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, now that we have concluded the public component of the meeting with all speakers, I move my mayoral minute, MM thirty-seven slash twenty-one, relating to the Yarrabay cruise ship terminal. Look, I won't speak particularly long to this mayoral minute, as there's been extensive debate around the cruise ship terminal. However, the reason I'm bringing this particular point in time is because there has been a change in the ministerial arrangements within the New South Wales Government, in particular with the Honourable Rob Stokes MP taking up both the planning portfolio and the transport portfolio. I acknowledge the previous actions of the council in lobbying the minister in his capacity of planning as it related to the cruise ship terminal. However, I think it is rather important to re-contact the minister in light of his comments in terms of the fact that Garden Island is his preferred option rather than Yarrabay. And the reason and the relevance for why I think it is appropriate to push is Transport for New South Wales and its subsidiary Port Authority are the actual proponents of this particular proposal. And the minister in this instance has the ability to instruct his department to withdraw it. So all we're calling on is for the minister to come good on his previously outlined positions and to withdraw this proposal and to reconsider Garden Island. I commend the mayoral minute. Are there any speakers to it? Councillor Hamilton?
No, Mr Mayor, I'll put out my hand first. Oh, sorry councillor, if you don't mind.
I can't see your hand.
Go to councillor Singh.
I did put out my hand.
No, that's totally fine. If councillor Hamilton is happy to see it, that's fine. Councillor Singh?
Thank you councillor Hamilton. Thank you, Mr Mayor. I'd like to congratulate you, Mr Mayor, on this very good mayoral minute. But before I go further, I'd like to firstly acknowledge a local resident who had approached me a few years ago. Without him, I would not have got all the information that I have before me, which I want to say very briefly tonight. The local resident is Mr Bilbus. Bill, if you're listening, thank you very much for first approaching me and giving me all the information, and for helping to organise the local residents and forming the group Save the Bay Coalition. Thank you very much, and continue please to come and see me and give me further advice and information. Mr Mayor, the approach that you're taking is brilliant because we've got the minister Rob Stokes, who initially was in favour of Island, what do you call it, Garden Island. And given that he's now the new minister for transport, it is most appropriate that firstly, we congratulate him on his new appointment, and to remind him that Garden Island is the most appropriate, most suitable for a new cruise ship terminal.
Yes, well done Ted.
It's interesting that our former Prime Minister Turnbull, who opposed this in 2018, is no longer there. So we are in the driver's seat, if you like, where we've got a minister who's got all the power to give consent or otherwise, or to give direction for Garden Island to be conceded. So I congratulate you, Mr Mayor. All the reasons that you've given down here are true. And to our local resident Bilbus, thank you. You were the first to tell me that with this proposed cruise ship terminal, it would not create an economic bonanza for the local residents. On the contrary, it would create huge traffic jam in the area. And on top of that, there's going to be adverse environmental impact in Yarrabay. So thank you for that, Bilbus and Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Singh. Councillor Hamilton?
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I support this in principle. I actually feel this is unnecessary. I think that the Honourable Rob Stokes is doing a great job in his former portfolio, and I know that he'll do a great job in this portfolio. The fact that he's already come out publicly and stated his support for Yarrabay not being a suitable location, I think that says enough. And I think that the other fact is, the former mayor councillor said, he also put forward a mayoral minute on this subject. So I feel that this is actually unnecessary. And calling for a meeting, you're calling, Mr Mayor, to meet with a Member of Parliament in the shortest mayorality that we've seen recently. So you have a really short window, and that you believe that if we pass this motion, that you'll be able to secure a meeting with him. And I just, I think that it's completely unnecessary, and you're not going to be able to do this. And it's really something that can wait, given the fact that you've also put in your motion that the government have said that they will review it. So they've postponed it up to eighteen months, and they're going to reconsider it once the impacts of the pandemic on the industry have been determined. We are only just about to open up to international flights in a few weeks' time. And so it's after we see people get confidence back in the tourist industry, gain some confidence around booking holidays. So apparently, one in two people are in fact very shy about booking a holiday because one in two people, so fifty percent of the population of Australia, have had to cancel a holiday in the last two years. So this is, I think, very premature and also unrealistic, given the time that you have sitting at mayor in this final few months of the term. And so I think that it probably would have been better to wait until we saw some further information coming from the state government in relation to this subject. And it's at that point then, I believe, your contribution, or any mayoral's contribution, or any council's contribution, well, us in particular, our contribution to the objection would be more targeted. So we would be able to put forward a much more targeted response to the next phase. So to the next announcement or decision that they are going to announce or share publicly in the future, I believe that would be the time, the best time for us to respond and formulate that response.
Councillor Sed?
I commend you on this mayoral minute, Mr Mayor, because, as you know, we were at the very first meeting of the Yarrabay Coalition. And despite massive community acts against this, which I don't need to go through them all, Minister Constance refused to even meet, answer our objections, or community representatives from the SAVY Yarrabay meeting. So, but having said that, I too believe that Minister Stokes does give us an opportunity. And I think Minister Stokes is more community minded, and I think, as opposed to councillor Hamilton, I think this does give us a window of opportunity to strike while the iron's hot, and have a conversation with Minister Stokes, and go through how the community just really despises this whole idea. So thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Sed. I have a hand up from councillor Luxford.
Yeah, councillor Sed stole a little bit of my thunder, but I do commend this motion. And I really think that, you know, as a council representing our community, you know, be it the West Ward, the South Ward, whichever ward, we are united on this front, that we need to be on the front foot. We need to be on the front foot running. And if there's a new minister in town, we need to tackle him and get him, you know, hopefully to the table. And hopefully Minister Stokes is more community minded and will, you know, give us a fair hearing. But I firmly believe that we need to maintain the rage and, you know, hit up any minister in town that we can get our message across for our residents, for our community, and for our city. So, good for you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Luxford. Councillor D'Souza?
Mr Mayor, sorry.
Mr Mayor, sorry. Yes, I have actually a very good working relationship with Rob Stokes. We discussed planning matters when it came to company title, I think, and other issues. So I'm quite happy to see if I can organise that meeting. If you have any difficulty communicating with them. But as has been pointed out, Rob is different to others. He's more understanding. He's more approachable. I think his favourite line, when he reminded me of our scripture class, where he said, everything is possible, but not always permissible. I can't remember which words it was. But in saying that, what he basically said, yes, things are possible, but we have to make sure, you know, we've got to make it permissible as well. So if I can help you, I'll help you. But if, as in Matt Keane's case, we all, it was difficult to get to, but we got there. And if need be, if you need assistance, and I know you don't, because you work in state parliament as well. But it's a wonderful mayoral minute. And this issue is on the, is a problem. It'll always be a problem unless we put it to rest. Garden Island was something Peter Collins actually put forward and supported. And being a naval man, Christie Hamilton knows all about the naval life. But Peter Collins put forward, it was Malcolm Turnbull who was against it. And we, now Malcolm is in the bad books, or as we say on the nose, there is an opportunity. And if you play your cards well, we might get the outcome you desire or our community desires. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor D'Souza. Councillor De Rocha?
Yeah, I commend you fully for your mayoral minute. And, you know, they say only dream, if you dream, you know, sometimes your dreams can come true. And one thing around the South Ward that we've been, you know, so good with our dreams has been watching them turn to realities when we fight so hard to protect the little bit that we have left, you know. And what we have left now, you know, between recreational, industrial, commercial, whatever, it's working, but it's getting congested, even with the container boats. Now, to start bringing our tourists from all over the world into Botany Bay, when we've got a mixed match of everything, like, we can see our little beauty. But when you're coming in these massive cruise ships and then you've got to wait on the tides, and sometimes it could be a day or two before you can actually come in, right? What type of example is that to show? We want to show off Australia. We know we've got some beauty. But, you know, Garden Island is where these, you know, these cruise ships should be going. And then, you know, we could speak to Newcastle, speak to, you know, wherever that needs this type of infrastructure. But, Mr Mayor, I really do commend you on this because, you know, like, we need to protect the little bit we have left and save these little unique spots. Because I'm telling you, in five years from now, or 10 years from now, Rowing Council is going to look at the South Ward beaches, the little 10 or 12 beaches we have around the area that are pocket beaches. And we're going to go, we are in paradise, not in just industrialised. Thank you.
Thank, thank you. Can I just confirm councillor Sid, your hand is up, that you weren't seeking to ask a question in light of the fact that you've already spoken?
Mr Mayor, I've looked at my screen. I don't have it up.
Hmm, very interesting. Okay. Anyway, not, not a worry. There being no further speakers. I commend the mayoral minute and I will now put it. All those in favour?
Aye.
Aye. Against?
Aye.
Okay, I declare that carried. Okay, we will now go to the next mayoral minute. MM38/21, a barbecue to remember, support for fundraising activity for Swiss Eight. Look, I think, yeah, I think that is all of it's contained within that. It's a, you know, for veterans' mental health. So I commend it. All those in favour?
Aye.
Aye, Mr Mayor.
All right, that's fine. All those against? Okay, declare that carried. Okay, councillors circulated earlier, it was a supplementary mayoral minute, MM39/21, support for the launch of bikee cycling without age programme. That's not contained in your business paper as it was circulated after the printing of the business papers. It should all be contained within it. Simply, it's launching a, an inclusivity cycling campaign, in particular cycling without age, connecting residents with volunteer pilots, offering them a unique, healthy outdoor recreational experience. So look, I commend it councillors, we're just simply seeking to waive the fees for the, for the hire and it ties in with an external grant from a different level of government. I commend it to the council. Any speakers? Okay, all those in favour?
What are the higher fees, sorry?
Okay, it is waiving and providing 490 in-kind support for waiving of fees associated with the launch event. And that's comprised of $197 from the open space hire application fee and 293 for the park usage for a non-commercial entity. Okay, I commend it. All those in favour? So councillor D'Souza?
Aye.
Sorry, I have a question from councillor D'Souza.
Just, I noticed when the invitations came out, the member from Maruba wasn't included. I thought that was a little disrespectful. So if I could request through you that we've invited the member for Coogee and the federal member, and of course yourself and the councillor, Mr Mayor, it would be disrespectful if this organisation not to involve the member from Maruba, especially since the function's being held at different parts. Maybe it's something you could consider, please?
Look, thank, thank you councillor D'Souza. I think that the current mayoral minute is, is appropriate as it is an external event. However, I don't believe that there is any suggestion of exclusion or the like. So I'm more than happy to take that offline, but I don't think any amendment to the mayoral minute is required.
Oh, no, no, no. I'm just disappointed with the group. That's all, Mr Mayor. No, I'm quite happy to leave things as they are. You're doing a great job.
Okay. Thank you councillor D'Souza. I'll now put it. All those in favour?
Aye.
All those against? Okay, I declare that carried. Okay, thank you councillors. Just one second. Okay, that now concludes the mayoral minutes. We now move to urgent business. Is there any urgent business?
Yes, councillor Veach.
Okay, thank you councillor Veach. Do you have a second for that urgent business?
I'll just, sorry, I haven't had a chance to say anything.
I will second it, Mr Mayor.
Okay. So there'll be one speaker to the urgent business. Councillor Veach, could you please explain to the meeting what that is?
Yes, there's, we've heard quite a number of times over the term and even recently regarding some issues with residents on Doncaster Avenue. And another one that councillors may or may not be aware of is the student, the construction of a large student accommodation block up near the sort of Alison Road end. We had a meeting with residents and the former mayor said, and this was one of the issues raised, his, the wonderful mayoral minute focused on the light rail issues. But actually now that this, there's just been ongoing night works relating to stormwater construction, OzGrid installation, Telstra. And I had some more calls just this afternoon, actually from new, other residents I hadn't formally heard from, just complaining about the ongoing night noise. And so I guess the urgent business would be a request that the, and this has also been discussed with staff, but it seems to have escalated now. The urgent business would be to request that the mayor consult with the residents and staff and make representations to the proponent regarding the, the level of night works and look at mitigating, look at, yeah, look at issues relating to the night works and the impact on residents.
Okay. So just so I can clarify before I actually just put it, the urgency of this is because it relates, because the construction and the night works is ongoing and would continue were we not to, to consider this until the next council meeting? Is that correct?
Yes, that's right. So at the moment, there seems to be at least four nights. People really complained about the very high noise level last night. People are talking about, the person who rang me today was saying, I want to start a class action. Like, this is how rolled up people are. We need to check the conditions. We need to check the consent and actually now see if the proponent is actually adhering to the consent conditions. This is not a council issue in some, it is a council issue. We're not the consent authority.
Councillor Veach?
We're making representations.
I think, I think that's clear. So what I'll do is, I'll now put the urge, the motion for urgent business moved by councillor Veach and councillor Mattson. All those in favour for this being considered as urgent business, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, all those against? Okay, thank you. I declare that carried. As the chair, I also consider it as urgent business by virtue of the ongoing nature of the works as outlined by councillor Veach. Councillor Veach, would you now like to move your motion?
Yes, thank, thank you, Mayor Parker. So I've described it all just in my preamble. But yeah, there's a large student accommodation block being constructed. It's, I think that's been going for probably at least a year now. There are a lot of associated works that involve parts of Doncaster Road being closed off at night time for stormwater works, OzGrid works and so on. There's been a number of different issues, but the main one at the moment relates to, you know, consecutive nights of night works, which go up until you know, almost daylight. People are requesting, you know, alternative accommodation as was offered when the light rail construction was happening. People are continuing to complain about lack of notification and, and staff. This has been raised with council staff and they've already passed this on to the developer. But it seems that the notifications are still not being provided. And so people aren't, you know, it's interrupting people's sleep, people's work, people's ability to just, you know, live, you know, get the rest they need at night time.
Okay, thank you. The second of the motion. Councillor Mattson?
Now, look, from what I understand, from what councillor Veach is saying, this is an urgent situation. Look, I went through the building of the eastern distributor. The vibration noise from those works just drove residents around the bend and pushed them to near breaking point. I have no doubt that this is a similar situation.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further speakers or? Okay.
Mr Mayor, could I just point out, because I, I agree totally with councillor Veach because I have heard this from someone I know, a personal friend who owns an apartment across the road. So I just want to declare a non-procuring, non-significant declaration that I do know someone who was affected, but it won't affect my vote because I'll still vote with councillor Veach.
Okay, councillor, Mr Kelly, do you have that recorded?
Yes, thanks, Mr Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Veach, I'm assuming that you don't feel the need to close the debate?
No, that's fine.
Okay, thank you. I'll now put it. All those in favour?
Aye.
Aye.
Those against? I declare that carried. Okay, thank you. We will now go in seriatum through the remainder of the items. And I will just call them out councillors. And if you would like to challenge them, if you could just clearly articulate it, as I will be looking down at my business paper. Okay, the first item is GM10/21, 2020 to 20, okay, thank you, State of Our City councillor Sid. Okay, all right, Director of City Planning reports, CP68/21.
Yep.
Okay, councillor Luxford. Okay, CP69/21, proposal to partner with the 2022 Bionally of Sydney.
Challenge councillor Veach.
Veach, okay. CP70/21, draft inclusive Randwick strategy.
Challenge councillor Neilson.
Okay, move, challenge by councillor Neilson. CP71/21, challenge by councillor Andrews.
Challenge.
Okay, CP72/21, increasing assistance to vulnerable community members during, oh, you know, we have, thank you. No, 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 we haven't. CP72/21, increasing assistance to vulnerable community members during the COVID-19 pandemic.
Challenge councillor Veach.
Councillor Veach, okay. CP73, we've now dealt with. CP74/21, notification of VPA for the development at 22 to 28, Gardners Road, Kingsford.
Yep.
Okay, challenge by councillor Luxford. Okay, Director of City Services reports, CS45/21, okay, challenged by councillor Andrews. Okay, CS4621, La Line Bay, Matreville, Malabar and Yarra Bay flood study. No challenge. Okay, CS4721, cycleways and bicycle facilities advisory committee. No challenge. Okay, CS48/21, Maruba Beach volleyball licence amended conditions. Challenged. Okay, CS49/21, Randwick Guild Association, okay, challenged by councillor Sid. Okay, CO51/21, delegation of functions to the general manager.
I have a question with that.
Okay, challenge by councillor Neilson. Okay, CO5221, council expenses and facilities policy results of public exhibition. Okay, unchallenged. CO5321, 2021, disclosure of interest returns. Okay, we have dealt with the next item, proposed sustainable policy. Okay, CO55/21, code of conduct complaint statistics.
Challenge.
Okay.
Can I just ask a question? Does that mean like, if someone complains about us councillor to another council officer, then we've got no right of reply or something?
Yeah, so councillor De Rocha, I think best to ask that question. We'll go into the substantive answers.
I might just ask that as a question another time then, because I just got a.
Yep. So, so are you challenging the item or you'll do it offline? You're on mute, Carlos? Still on mute, Carlos?
Yeah, come here. I think he confirmed he was going to ask a question off.
I'll ask a question, I think, offline because I just, yeah, because it was just something that I had no right of reply, but three other people did. So I was confused because if I'm either a councillor, a local, a representative, I'll speak to you personally, Mr Mayor, just to get clarity.
Thank you councillor De Rocha. So I'll take that as unchallenged. CO56/21, operating hours, Christmas and New Year's, 2021, 2022.
Question?
Okay, so it's challenged by Neilson. Okay. Okay, investment report, September 2021, CO5721. Unchallenged. CO58/21, financial report. Unchallenged. CO59/21, financial assistance grant. Unchallenged. CO60/21, returning, returns disclosing the interests of councillors and designated persons. Challenged. CO61/21, internal reporting policy, public interest disclosures. Unchallenged. CO62/21.
Challenge, Mr Mayor, councillor Andrews.
Okay, that's Andrews, yep. Okay, CO63/21.
Yes, Mr Mayor, councillor Singh.
Okay, thank you councillor Singh. Okay, thank you. All right.
I'm moving, Mr Mayor.
Sorry, can I just ask a quick question? The draft council meeting schedule, was that challenged? Because I just had a question about it.
I believe, I believe it was.
Okay, thank you.
I'm moving, I'm challenging items.
Okay.
I'll second it, Mr Mayor.
Thank you. The unchallenged items are moved. Councillor Andrews, seconded by councillor Stavridos. All those in favour?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those against? Thank you, one second. Okay, we'll go to the first challenged item, which is GM10/21, 2020, 2021 annual report.
I'll second it, Mr Mayor, councillor Andrews.
Okay, seconded by councillor Andrews.
I'm moving as per the recommendation, Mr Mayor, but I just wanted to point out, and I'd like to thank the GM and the directors and all the staff, that when you read through the major capital works in the last term, the majority of it happened in the last two years, which was a term that saw two bouts of COVID. There was massive community spent to help the vulnerable. And at the same time, there was lack of revenue. So yet, the GM and the directors and all the staff were able to still manage to remain in a fight, keep the council in a very financially secure position. So I'd just like to again, just give my gratitude to the staff, the GM and all the staff that we actually were able to survive through two bouts of COVID. And, and actually, and to produce 13 out of 17 major capital works in two years during all that was fantastic. So I'd just like to thank them for it.
Thank you councillor Sid. Councillor Andrews is the second.
Yeah, thanks, Mr Mayor. I second this motion because this is what Randwick Council and local governments are all about, Mr Mayor. I'm delivering for our local community. And I commend the previous mayor councillor Sid because this annual report chose the leadership.
because this annual report chose the leadership that councillor Sid brought us through in the last two years, two years of difficulty. And as councillor Sid has said, we have delivered the majority, 95% of our capital works programmes for our community. And, you know, as a councillor, we should all be proud of our achievements because we have gone through a very difficult time. But the most important thing is to deliver capital works programmes and provide services to our community, ensure that the roads, rates and rubbish, you know, is collected. And that's what local government is all about. And this annual report and the State of Environment Report is what local government is. We're here to serve our community. And I think all councillors on this council have done that. It's unfortunate, Mr. Mayor, that we sidetracked as we, as we did tonight, you know, nearly one hour of tonight's meeting went into a debate which Randwick City Council unfortunately has no say in. But this is something, we do have a say in. And I congratulate all councillors and the previous mayor for his efforts in putting us on the right road. And I'm sure that councillor Parker, Mr. Mayor, you will, you've taken the reins now, the baton's been passed to you. And I think we're in great hands to continue the future of council to deliver for our community.
Thank you councillor Andrews. Councillor De Souza, I did see your hand up, but it's now come down.
Look, I'm happy to speak, Mr. Mayor.
Only if you feel the need, if you don't, feel free, we can progress through the meeting.
No, it's not so much need, but the fact is that I'd like to congratulate, we congratulated the former mayor, he did a wonderful job, but we also have to congratulate the general managers, the title of general managers' report. Theresa Mance has been a very good general manager for us. She, when she came, she had a vision for the city and she's been implementing it. You're right, there were challenges, financial challenges, and there were changes in leadership. We had three mayors in about four years, but she stuck to the plan. So this too is a compliment to her and her leadership and her team. And I would like to say thank you, general manager, for what you've done. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm happy to put it.
Okay, thank you. Look, there being no further speakers, councillor Sid, you don't, do you wish to close or we're done?
No, I'm done.
Okay, thank you. All those in favour?
Aye.
All those against? I declare that carried. Okay, we now move.
Mr. Mayor, is that your dog on the cover?
No, I don't have a dog.
Is that your dog?
I don't have a dog. Okay, thank you. CP 68/21, Randwick Comprehensive Planning Proposal Gateway Determination, councillor Luxford.
Yeah, it's just a question to the relevant officer, Mr. Mayor. I just want clarification that.
I'll second it.
If we are, we vote as per the, the recommendation that this will come back to council for us to determine again. Is, so can someone confirm that for me, please?
Thank you councillor Luxford, through, through, to the relevant officer.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, to the manager of strategic planning.
Stella is on mute. The answer is yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. The, once we have council's endorsement for the gateway review, we will update the planning proposal and seek, seek the department's consideration of that review. And it will, once the department has issued their response, we can proceed to public exhibition. We have a council resolution to proceed to public exhibition.
Sorry, thank, thank you, just from the indulgence of the chair, through to the manager of strategic planning, could you just clarify whether or not it is envisaged that prior, so we seek a review, the department then returns to us the outcome of that review? Is it envisaged that council will then determine whether or not to go on public exhibition after considering the outcome of that review?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. If the, if the department agrees with that review, we will then seek to place this on public exhibition. There will not be, unless there are any further changes by the department, we will not need to report back to coun, to councillors.
Okay. Thank you. Councillor, councillor Luxford, in light of that advice, is it still your intention to move this particular report?
Um, I'm not sure now, actually, Mr. Mayor.
That, that would, that would be my interpretation, is there, is, in light of that, did you intend to still proceed or shall I seek another mover?
Seek another mover.
Okay, thank, thank you councillor Luxford. Is there another councillor who will move this report?
Could you just let us know your new interpretation, Mr. Mayor?
Thank, thank, my interpretation and what I will do is I will offer the, the relevant officer, if that is not correct, the ability to interject there. But my interpretation is that were the Department of Planning to agree to our conditions or to agree to some and not others, or to agree to none of them, that it is taken, that council has already resolved to go on exhibition. As a result, we will then be going on to exhibition with whatever proposal is subject to the conditions. But in all fairness, that's my interpretation and I'd offer the, the manager the ability to, just to clarify that once again, if that is not correct.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. As a secondor, Mr. Mayor, I'm happy to. Mr. Mayor, councillor Andrews here, can I, I'd like to move, as the original secondor, can I now be the mover?
Um, look, I think, I actually, I actually think that.
It doesn't really matter, Mr. Mayor, what I wanted to do, what I wanted to do was move an amendment if I could.
So I actually, I actually think as the original secondor, it is reasonable for councillor Andrews to become the mover and is there now a secondor for councillor Andrews?
Yeah, I'm happy to second it.
Okay, councillor Andrews, could you just clarify what it is that you are in fact moving?
Yeah, thank you. I like, well, I'm giving the recommendation on the business paper, but I, I think it's important also that we have a further amendment that we communicate to the, the residents what is currently happening in regards to this proposal. So I would move that communication be put to local residents in relation to where this proposal is up to and that a timetable will be given to residents as well. Obviously, new requests as to what's happening in regards to this matter. And I think it's important that, that continue the communication with our community.
Yeah, community engagement.
What the table is, what the timetable is.
Um, through, through, through you, just before that proceeds, I actually have a question with indulgence of the meeting through to the relevant officer as it relates to this amendment. The substance of this report actually is seeking a review in some sections as to the timetable. And I'm just curious as to how that works under circumstances where we're seeking a review as to the timetable through, through you, to the relevant officer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The variation to the timetable will mean that our exhibition won't be taking place before this, this side, this year. It will be, it will take place in the early half of next year. But the overall timeframe, we will endeavour to complete that timeframe within the 12 months stipulated in the gateway determination, which is September of next year. However, that timeframe will also be dependent on when the, when the department responds to us in terms of the gateway determination as well. That will have a, an impact on the timeframe.
Okay, thank you. I see the general manager's hand is up. No?
Through you, through you, Mr. Mayor, can I just clarify just in relation to, to council reporting? And whilst there, there is on the, on, on past reports, a permission to exhibit based on the decisions that have been made, given that we are entering into a new council, I would envisage that we will report back to council at the first of February meeting that is scheduled with an update in relation to the response from the request for, for review. Stella, can, can you confirm that? Yes, I can confirm that. We should, we should hear back from the department on the outcome of the review and we can provide councillors with an update on that response on the first of February.
Thank you, councillor Andrews, sorry, councillor Hamilton as the secondor, unless councillor Andrews, you've completed your remarks.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I just have a follow-up question. Does that mean when the response comes back to the February meeting, action could already have been taken though?
Can you put it in the fridge?
Sorry, councillor Luxford, you just have to move it.
Sorry.
Thank you.
I'm, I'm just wanting confirmation, sorry, perhaps I didn't understand it quite correctly from our officer Stella, please. What I'm wanting to find out is could action have been taken when you respond to the February meeting? So the February meet, you're telling us what is occurring.
Yes, the February meeting will be informing councillors of the department's response to the gateway review request.
Okay, thank.
But then, but then, sorry, but, but wouldn't council, but does that mean council officers have not then undertaken any further process?
In relation, so can I just clarify, is that in relation to exhibition or is in relation to?
Sorry, yeah, I'm explaining myself very well.
I, I, I think, I think I can clarify and councillor, councillor Neilson, if I'm incorrect, please correct me, but I think the concern is that we will go to public exhibition prior to council considering the response of the rezoning review.
That's exactly my point, thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you, I think that was a pretty categorical answer. Could I now go to the secondor of the motion, councillor Hamilton?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think this is clear that exactly what's required, that the report seeks council's endorsement to submit to the gateway. I'm comfortable with how this is progressing and that's why I've thrown my support behind it.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Roberts.
Yes, my understanding is, if, I can hear a bit of an echo there, but my understanding is that if they agree with our requests for review and, and basically agree with our LEP proposal, then we basically can go to public exhibition without it coming back to council because there's no need, because we've already authorised it, we've already resolved to bring it to public exhibition pending the department. But the assumption is that they will probably reject, they've already indicated they've got issues and this is, this is us going back to them saying, well, can you please reconsider? And my assumption is they'll be, they may agree with some of these things, but there'll be at least a couple here that they'll, they'll disagree with. And so then, you know, we're back at square one, so it will come back to, to council to decide what the next step will be. And so that'll either be at the February meeting or sometime after, depending on when the department get back to us.
Thank you, councillor Luxford.
No, it's fine, sorry, mistake.
Okay, no, that's totally fine. Councillor Andrews. Councillor Andrews, you're on mute. Councillor Andrews, one last call.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor, you there?
Yes.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, I lost communication. If I could ask this hypothetical question to the relevant council officer. If, there's going to be at least five new, at least minimum five new councillors on the council after December. If the council in February decides not to proceed with the current proposal, what are the consequences?
Through you, to the relevant officer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The, the consequences for us would be that we would be required to exhibit the planning proposal without the requested changes, the review changes.
Okay, thank you, councillor Andrews.
Thank you. The matter can be put, it isn't further than that.
Okay. Councillor Andrews being the final speaker. Councillor Roberts, just in light of the fact you have asked questions prior, just, your hand is up for any particular reason or you just, you haven't put it down?
No, it's mistaken.
Okay, all right, thank you. All those in favour of the comprehensive planning, one, because it's a planning panel, I might actually go, a planning manner, I might go straight to a division. So, Mr. Kelly, if you could just bring it up. Hey, councillor Hamilton.
Four.
Okay, the deputy mayor is away. Councillor Neilson.
Four.
Councillor Veach.
No.
Councillor Stavreinos.
Against.
Councillor Luxford.
Against.
Councillor Sid. Councillor Sid, you're on mute.
Sorry, it's not really my turn, but anyway, four.
Councillor Singh.
Four.
Councillor Andrews.
Four.
Councillor Bond.
Four.
Councillor Matson.
Four.
Councillor Roberts.
Four.
Councillor De Roshan. Councillor De Roshan, you're on mute. Still on mute.
Four, yeah, four, sorry.
Councillor De Souza.
Four.
And the mayor is four. Okay, thank you, I declare that carried. The next item, CP 69/21, Proposal to Partner with the 2022 Biennale of Sydney Moved by councillor Veach, do I have a secondor?
Seconded.
Okay, that is seconded by councillor Neilson. Councillor Veach, could you please explain to the meeting what you're moving?
Oh, look, I'm just, I'm, I would like to move it as per the recommendation on the business paper. I think this is a really exciting opportunity for Randwick City. I thank the, all the staff involved for their work in liaising with the Biennale. We had a discussion about this at the Arts and Cultural Advisory Committee last week. It was very much supported by the committee. And I guess I would say the initiatives that are being proposed are really quite cutting edge. It's quite a new direction for the Biennale to sort of also have this kind of interesting educational component prior to the official start of, of the actual exhibition. So I commend the motion, thank you.
Thank you councillor Veach, councillor Neilson.
And I just, a secondor, I would just like to say that I'm very optimistic that, well, I know that what, where our offices are going to put forward is absolutely brilliant already. This idea of water lessons at the Macquarie Watchtower, what a brilliant idea. I mean, there's a combination, exciting and utilizing the wonderful historic building we have, plus the interaction between cultures outside is, yes, looking forward to it and really so proud of our council partnering with Biennale.
Thank you councillor Neilson, there being no further speakers. Councillor Veach, I'm assuming you don't feel the need to close?
No, that's fine.
Thank you, I'll now put it, all those in favour, all those against? I declare that carried. Okay, CP 70/21, Moved by councillor Neilson, do I have a secondor?
I'll second it, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, seconded by councillor Stavreinos.
I have a question, and, Mr. Mayor, councillor Veach, I have a question.
Okay, what, what I will do is I'll just allow councillor Neilson the ability to actually clarify what she's moving before I jump to that. Councillor Neilson.
I'm, I'm moving the business paper.
Okay, thank you. I will now move to councillor Veach's question.
Thank you. Look, I have a question through, through the mayor to the general manager or relevant council officer. Correct me if I'm wrong, but the social net, I'm not sure. the social, I'm not sure that the social needs study upon which this was based has been brought to council. Now, if you go to the, I've been trawling through the agendas. And the reason I ask that is because if you go to the to the community consultation page, the consultation took part place between March and April this year. It specifically says that the draft social needs study will be reported to council. If endorsed, key directions from the study will be included in the social inclusion and diversity strategy. This is on the council webpage. And the social needs study isn't even included as an attachment in this report. And we haven't had a chance to read, I personally haven't read the submissions or the study.
Okay, thank you. Through to the relevant officer.
Through you, Mr Mayor. Typically with our informing strategies, we use the studies to to inform the strategies. We don't submit the studies themselves to council outside of a briefing. So we do brief councillors on the study and and then develop the strategy from there. Councillors should have received a copy of the study. I should, I might have to take that one on notice if councillors haven't. In regards to the website, I'll have to talk to I'll have to talk to our staff in relation to the wording on that website.
If I may allow a follow up question or a comment, I suppose, that often the studies are, I mean, certainly with the arts and culture, we had, there was a study done about arts and culture in Randwick and that was something that that report did come to council. And we did vote on that, I recall, before the, quite some time, maybe even a year before the strategy came. But I will note that our, this would be contrary to what was put in on the council website, which is still up there. And so either this should be, I'm just putting it that this either should be deferred or we should at least be attaching attaching the social needs study and making this publicly available, including a summary of the submissions and that councillors should receive a copy of the detailed submissions with with the submitter's details redacted if if need be.
Could I just confirm that's your intention to move deferral councillor? Councillor Veach, as an amendment?
I mean, I'm I'm reluctant to in a way because I know that this is an important strategy that we were looking to get through in this term. But the the fact is the study hasn't come to council. And it's it's written there on the website. So I I'd be happy to have a slight discussion. I don't know if we were able to have a discussion as to what the councillor's preferences was. We could either just attach the study and get councillors receive the submissions. Or we defer.
Okay, what I'll suggest is that we'll return to the debate. During that debate, you'll have the ability to suggest that to the mover it, or you can or you can move it as an amendment. So and then we'll just continue. So councillor Stavreinos. As a second.
Yeah, look, I reserve my right to speak at this time, Mr Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further speakers with the exception of councillor Veach? Otherwise, I'll return back to councillor Veach. Okay, before I do that, I saw the manager of community development's hand go up. Was that a request for a comment?
Hi, yes, thank you, Mr Mayor. I was just going to comment that we did provide all of the supporting documents for the councillors workshop a couple of weeks ago. There was three supporting documents. I'll also take it on notice for the website. I wasn't aware of that wording.
Okay. Thank you, councillor Veach.
Yeah, I apologize if I didn't read that. I've had a few family issues going on the last few weeks, but well, I'm happy to put it, but I would like to amend, I'd like to put an amendment and see if the mover and seconder would be agreeable. I guess a second dot point that the social needs study twenty twenty one, including a summary of the submissions received, be included as an attachment for public exhibition. And yeah, I guess three, if we have, may I ask a question to the manager of community development?
That's fine. Can I just prior to doing that, does that have a second?
Well, I think I'd be happy to accept that in the recommendation. Are you also councillor Stavreinos as the second?
I don't see the harm in it, as long as we don't delay progressing with this report tonight, you know what I mean?
Okay, all right. Thank, thank you, councillor Veach. In light of the fact that it's been adopted incorporated, is there any further remarks that you require?
Yeah, there was just, as I said, I'd have to go back through my emails, but that councillors receive a copy of the detailed submissions.
All right, thank you. Are there any further speakers? Otherwise, I'm happy to, I don't think councillor Neilson, you want to close the debate?
Well, only in closing the debate, I think that when we put it out on exhibition, we'll become greatly wiser when we get the responses. And I do think it's very important that we have this out on exhibition, get the support back from our community. So then that way we can more effectively develop our strategy because that's what we're really aiming for. So, yeah.
Okay, thank you. The debate now being closed, I'll now put it, all those in favour.
Aye.
All those against, okay, I declare that carried. Okay, we now move to the next item CP seventy one slash twenty one, New Year's Eve twenty twenty one. Could you beach moved by councillor Andrews? Do I have a second?
Seconded, Mr Mayor.
Yep. Okay, thank you.
Mr Mayor, we need to, Mr Mayor, we need to make a choice.
Yes, so what's the actual choice that is being recommended?
Okay, no, thank you. So it's still, it's still moved by councillor Andrews. Councillor Andrews now has an opportunity to inform the meeting as to what he is moving. So so he will, he will provide that information for us.
I wanted, I wanted the second this, but unfortunately my headset cut out and I cut out from the internet, but that's all right.
My apologies, I can only, I can only identify as second as the ones who identify. Thank you, everyone. Councillor Andrews, could you please clarify for the meeting what it is that you are moving of the two options?
Mr Mayor, I'm moving option A, that council proceeds with New Year's fireworks event at Coogee Beach, subject to A, B, C, D.
Okay, thank you. And councillor Luxford, do you still maintain your seconding?
I was close.
Okay, thank you. All right, councillor councillor Andrews, it's all yours.
Mr Mayor, I think the motion speaks for itself. I think that we need to celebrate the New Year with our residents. I think we need to look at the positiveness of going into two thousand and twenty two, two thousand and twenty one's been a hard year for all of us. And I think the least we can do for our community is start two thousand and twenty two with a bang. And I support council proceed with the New Year's fireworks event at Coogee Beach.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Luxford is the second.
Yeah. I concur with councillor Andrews. I did have reservations, you know, a month or so ago when we you know, brought these things to to council, but in light of the fact that we are moving forward in our COVID world, why not bring a bit of joy and a bit of fireworks to the to the people of Randwick? And let's enjoy and try and, you know, maybe the fireworks will blow away all the the bad year we've had and bring us a nice happy new year. So yeah, I commend the fireworks at Coogee.
Thank you. Look, I've had identified that there is a desire to move an amendment by councillor Neilson and seconded by councillor Veach to move option B. Just preemptively, just for the ease of debate and to avoid any confusion, I will allow that to proceed, even though there may be concerns it being a direct negative, just to clarify for the ease of debate and no confusion for both the public and for councillors. So we now will move to the amendment. Councillor Neilson is moving that council maintain its position not to hold a New Year's Eve fireworks event at Coogee and instead deliver the range of activations over summer. Councillor Neilson.
Thank you, Mayor. I think it's really important that we allow our events team to have some certainty, not just our community. It's a very, very difficult, stressful time. But the other thing that convinces me is to the reason that we should maintain the current arrangement is the fact that we do have certainty with the current arrangement. At the moment, we're looking very optimistically forward to things being able to be changed and freer and so on, but we really don't know the certainty we don't know. But the other question is the fact of the increased budget and the cost. And that's the thing that persuades me very conclusively that we should retain the arrangement that we've currently developed, which I'm quite convinced will be very good. But the fact that we have, if we go with the fireworks and it says in the report there that it will still cost us an additional somewhere in the vicinity of two hundred thousand dollars. And if in fact it can't go ahead, then we can't claim any insurance back. And so we're two hundred thousand dollars down the drain. So it's two hundred thousand dollars down the drain, but it's also the two hundred thousand dollars extra. I would prefer to see us having the arrangements that we've got in place, the certainty that we can go ahead with those, we've got the flexibility with the ones that we've going ahead. We can still have lots of fun things with them. And then we've got a bit more in the budget. So then when things are more certain in the twenty twenty two, we can have more and we'll have the budget there with the money. So I strongly endorse the the certainty of going with option B.
Thank you, councillor Neilson. Councillor Veach is the second. Sorry, someone needs to mute themselves. Okay, thank you. Councillor Veach, can you now unmute yourself as the second of the amendment?
I pressed that button and then it just doesn't work for some reason. Thank you. Yeah, I support option B as moved by councillor Neilson for the same reasons, actually primarily health. I still think that, you know, there are predictions that we will have some outbreaks. I would hate to see people, A, catching it, B, then heading off to holidays throughout the state, throughout the country and potentially unwittingly spreading fresh outbreaks beyond our LGA and the Sydney metropolitan area. And yeah, I just think the costs may well be, you know, beyond what council should be prepared to to wear at a time when our budget has been held in a very delicate but sound balance by by our terrific staff. But I also concerned about, you know, some of the performers and so on that, you know, will, and small local businesses who've been promised, you know, anticipated getting that support through the activations and that that will be withdrawn. So just for this year, hopefully by next year, we can proceed with all of our usual events. But I think at this time it's better to remain cautious and just stay on the current path. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Look, I've got several hands up. Just to confirm, councillor Hamilton, are you speaking to the amendment?
Yes. And can I just, sorry, can I just respond to your question? We have both options on the table and you agreed that you would put the negative up. So if we're speaking on amendment or the motion, we're speaking on one. So just just pointing that out, they're both there and they're the two options.
Yeah, it's perfectly fine, but it's been moved as an amendment, so we'll deal with it as an amendment and it'll be two 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 separate votes. Thank you. Feel free, councillor Hamilton.
Thank you. I have a real problem with us making a decision because we want to be cautious, we want to be careful, we want to be, you know, continue to abate the fears of people when we actually want to get back to some kind of normal. We want to be able to start to celebrate where we live. And this is a celebration that's been happening for years. And children in this area have grown up with the nine P M fireworks and have loved it. And it brings everyone down to to the hub that is Coogee. We were able to frequent restaurants and other things. So I just, I don't think that we can continue. And it's a real contradiction because we we talk about how we're going to get out of COVID, we're going to, you know, we're pushing for vaccination hubs and we're pushing for numbers to increase so that we can see some freedoms. Then when we start to get to where we might enjoy those freedoms, we're saying, well, hold on, let's let's hold back a little bit. And let's make sure that we are truly safe. If the health orders work to lock us down and keep us safe, then they're the same health orders that say we're now free to go about our business. So let's not hang on to one position too long, because what we will find is we will find that the people of Randwick will rebel. So they won't appreciate us closing down some of the freedoms, some of the activities that we know that everyone loves and everyone looks forward to. So this is one that we just need to keep on going as far as I'm concerned. So I do not and will not vote for the amendment.
Okay, thank you. councillor De Rocha.
Councillor Hamilton perfectly said, I have the utmost respect for councillor Neilson and Veach, but I don't like to bring what I do for a living to what I do for my people of Randwick, to what I do for people anywhere. But unfortunately, it all comes back to me as a councillor, whether I like it or not. For the last two years, whether it's been operational and seeing people anxiety levels over the roof, people not knowing what they were doing, people confused by all the restrictions that kept changing day to day. People have been so, so messed up. It got to that point that people even wanted to take their lives. I was ringing, you know, the organisations to try and help people that people say that those people have to ring themselves to get help. My point about this is I've taken four months off work because I've helped so many people, but I sort of forgot a little bit about myself. But one thing that I'm looking forward to now is that since the world has opened up, since we're all communicating with the world and since now that Queensland is starting to listen a bit to New South Wales, Victoria starting to listen a bit to New South Wales, we are all slowly coming together. So this bit of freedom is coming our way. This New Year's, we need to highlight it. We need to give people some joy. We need to bring families together. We can't have a sorrow start to a new year where we've had two miserable years. Councillors, please, please. Let's celebrate a moment to start off the new year, regardless of what happens, even if it turns as bad as it may be. Let's start it off as rejoeful as we can. And Christie, well said.
Thank you, councillor.
Well said, Carlos.
Councillor Sid, you're up.
As opposed to well said. Thank you, Mr Mayor. I agree with the amendment and and only because councillors, there's there's exactly for the reasons that everyone has just mentioned, because we are opening up. And I prefer to see the money because actually in the report, if you read it, it's actually in the vicinity of two hundred thousand dollars. It's not the final amount. So it could be more. And also at the same, it's at the cost of where we're actually robbing Peter to pay Paul because we're reducing the Christmas activations. And as as everyone, the two former, two previous councillors have said, that we were now opening up and people need to go outdoors and enjoy themselves. So we're taking away the Christmas celebrations. And councillors and I agree with you, we need to get out there and actually give our residents something to enjoy. For two years now, we haven't had the Malabar Family Fun Day. So we could bring that back in summer. We haven't had our good Easter, sorry, we've had no surfing celebrations down to the beach. We've done nothing with Australia Day. Australia Day. We really need that money to be put into. And as I said before, we've got musicians and locals who just haven't had any work for six months. And this is a perfect opportunity to have pop-ups all over our LGA. It would really get people out there and enjoy themselves. And we could do it throughout the LGA, not just at Coogee or at Marubra. And I really feel this is our opportunity to use this money wisely and really entertain our residents, not for 15 minutes, but for the whole month of, or the whole school holidays, actually, including Christmas. So that's the reason why I'm agreeing with the amendment.
Okay, thank you councillor Sid. councillor Mattson.
Yeah, look, people, it's too early. We've just come out of lockdown. We don't know what the pattern of infections will be over, will be like over the next month. We really don't know. And as councillor Sid has just said, option B, there's plenty to celebrate in that, there's plenty to engage the community. But look, if we have a mass event down at Coogee Beach, you know how many people will turn up. They'll turn up from all over Sydney. And the result could well be a mass transmission event. That's what we'll have on our responsibility. Whereas if we go with option B, we've got a planned way of celebrating.
We have 80,000 people at a grand final.
I have a question to the relevant officer. Just in light of some of the previous comments, could you please, for the benefit of the meeting, just outline the nature of the calendar of events which are planned after the 31st of December, and whether or not it's a business as usual, or we're operating under a pandemic context in terms of, for our calendar?
Through Mr Mayor to the manager of economic development.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Thank you, general manager. At this point in time, we are planning kind of six months after events. And at this point in time, post the end of December, we are looking at a return to a business as usual calendar, as we have done with, you know, other events. We've planned towards them. And then if it's been got closer to the time, we've kind of redirected how we deliver those events. However, at this point in time, we are working to a business as usual.
Thank you councillor Stavridinos.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. Look, I won't be supporting this amendment. 2021 has been a terrible year for everyone, Mr Mayor. I had two friends from high school who recently committed suicide as a result of the stresses caused by COVID-19 and the effect that it had on their businesses. One of my friends, who I went through primary school and high school with, he couldn't, no longer faced the stress and the burden of facing financial ruin. Now, I know that COVID-19 has posed a serious risk across the world with infection, but I believe that the economic and the social costs of this pandemic have far outweighed the health costs that we have incurred in this country. I cannot begin to tell you the mental health and the issues that are facing people out there as a result of what we've been through over the last 107 days with our lockdown. I could not think of anything more fitting than to have a fireworks event down at Coogee, Mr Mayor. I could not think of anything more fitting, to bring in the new year, to give our local families who don't want to take their kids into the city, to give them the opportunity to go somewhere local and to celebrate with their friends. And it's an outdoor event. The likelihood of transmission outdoors is so remote, it's so slim. We have thousands of people going to the beach every day, going for a swim. And now we're talking about having an event down at the beach, and we're saying no. What's the difference between what goes on at Coogee every day and what we're planning to have here for New Year's Eve? Right, we're talking about, this will be so good for businesses in the local area, it'll, you know, get them happy again, having people walking through the street, bringing the thousands of people down to Coogee, you know, and the majority of us are responsible people. I mean, look, you know, we've got what, an almost over 80% vaccination rate, you know, within the Greater Sydney region. I know Randwick is, you know, lagging behind slightly, but at the end of the day, to, you know, we can't be killjoys, not at this stage. I mean, look, there are so many things, you know, that have happened over the last 18 months with COVID. And last year, we did nothing. And I think it would be an absolute, you know, it'd be disgraceful. And our community will really come out against us and speak out against us. And, you know, this could cause an issue, because many of them will say, well, what's the council doing? They know how to collect our rates, but why can't they give something back to the community in the form, in the form of an event like this to bring in the new year, to give people joy and happiness and to, you know, give hope, something that we haven't had for a very long time. You know, and really, I'm really surprised that councillor Nielsen and councillor Veach would push something like this, particularly at a time where our community needs this sort of support. They need something to look forward to. They need an event like this. You know what I mean? I'm just so saddened by it, you know. And I mean, you know, we're going to have a family-friendly environment there. We're going to give thousands of people the opportunity to come down there, enjoy themselves. And I can't see the New South Wales state government, you know, reintroducing any lockdown laws or anything like that. They want to move forward. We've got a roadmap that's telling us now that, you know, things, you know, we've got to come out of lockdown. We've got to start going back to business as usual. And I could not think of a better time than New Year to do that. You know, I'm really, I'm really upset that this particular amendment has been put forward.
Hundred percent.
Particularly at a time where, you know, our residents are relying on us to do something for them. And I'm not going to put, I'm not going to vote for something which I'm totally against, and I know our community are against. If you were to go into the community right now and ask our residents whether or not they wanted a New Year's Eve event down in Coogee, I could almost guarantee you that 95% of them would say yes, they want this event to go ahead. And I'm not going to be the killjoy, and I'm not going to be the Scrooge, to put that, put the nail in the coffin for something that I believe, you know, you know, we really should be going ahead with this. And I'm really, there's no way I'm going to support this amendment. I think it's disgraceful, and it should be withdrawn. And I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you councillor Stavridinos. councillor D'Souza.
Thank you, Mr Mayor. I think councillor Stavridinos used a really important word. The word was hope. Fireworks are a symbol of hope. I was looking up where this all started. In Chinese tradition, fireworks came about to scare off the evil monsters and to give people hope. So you see, fireworks have been associated, and I'm looking at my iPhone here, to express happiness and invite good luck. Now, what better message can we send to our residents than this is over? This is over, let the new dawn begin. That's what it's about. Now, we can procrastinate, we can keep pushing it back and pushing it back, like old King Canoe telling the tide to go back, and he's going to hold the tide back. But we know change is upon us. We know that 80% of the people have been vaccinated. We know that a promise was made, but when that occurred, our borders and our restrictions would be a thing of the past. We have an opportunity to do just that, to bring hope, happiness and excitement back to our community. And Coogee is the starting point. I said earlier, I think it was, the long march starts with a single step. Well, in this case, our economic crisis will come to an end with one big explosion, and that'll occur at Coogee on New Year's Eve. And I hope councillor Roberts's fireworks or two is supported when it comes on the vote. But definitely, this, my friends, is a chance to start again. This is a chance to say to the world and to the people of Coogee and Randwick, we're back. This amendment does not have my support, will never have my support, because it doesn't offer hope. And what it says is, we're still there, we can't move forward, and we're going to be stuck in like, like a rabbit with, or kangaroo with the lights on. Anyway, it doesn't have my support. I think we should move forward. That's all I'd say. Thank you, Mr Mayor.
Okay, thank you councillor D'Souza. councillor Roberts.
Yeah, thank you. I know it's late, I'll be trying, I'll try and be as quick as I can. I obviously will not be supporting this amendment. I support part A. I've been consistent about that all year. I said months ago that the vaccination rates would get to this level well before Christmas. So I support this part A tonight. It will be COVID safe, councillors. Right now, there's 80.8% in Randwick have got their first dose, which means that by Christmas time, the full amount of fully vaccinated people will be probably north of 90%. And those that aren't vaccinated would probably be low-risk young people or healthy people. So people will have resistance to the virus. So the risks are extremely low. I heard councillors talking about there may be lots of outbreaks. Well, that's actually not the number you should look at. You should look at the number of people who are severely ill and end up in hospital. That is not expected to go up, because everyone will have resistance to severe illness, because they'll be vaccinated. Vaccination rates, as I said, are huge. And, you know, and we've got to look at this from a balanced perspective, looking at every other perspective. And councillors have mentioned the mental health catastrophe that these lockdowns caused on our community. This would be a massive fill-up to everyone's morale in our city. So that the mental health aspects are huge. You know, it just disappoints me hearing these councillors, you know, they're catastrophe peddlers. And I'm, and I'm not, it's unacceptable. You know, they want to be the councillors who stole Christmas, as Franklin D Roosevelt.
Oh, honestly, point of order. Excuse me.
Hold on, hold on. We have, we have a point of order. I'll deal with the point of order from councillor Veach. Councillor Veach, what's your, what's your point of order?
There is no point of order.
Well, no, no, I have to hear the point of order.
I'd ask the councillor to withdraw that comment. We're not even talking about Christmas.
All right, I withdraw that. The councillors who stole New Year's. How's that sound?
Look. Thank you councillors, thank you. Look, I don't actually think that's a point of order, but I don't feel that councillor Roberts needs to continue.
Really inappropriate.
Okay, thank you. So councillor Roberts, if you could continue, just.
Thank you. And I'm sure councillor D'Souza would know this, this quote from President Franklin D Roosevelt. He said, the only thing we have to fear.
Is fear itself.
Yes.
Well said, councillor.
Only thing we have to fear is fear itself. So councillors, I beg you to support part A on behalf of everyone in Randwick City. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councillor Bowen.
Well done.
Just give councillor Bowen a second.
Thanks, Mr Mayor. Just in very quickly, I don't support the amendment. I support the motion as set out and for the reasons expressed by my fellow councillors.
Thank you councillor Bowen. Just to avoid any confusion, there being no further speakers on the amendment, I will now put the amendment. The amendment in front of us is, reads councillor Nielsen and Veach, that council maintain its position not to hold a New Year's Eve fireworks event at Coogee and instead deliver a range of activations over the summer holidays. All those in favour of the amendment which I just read?
Yes.
Call division, Mr Mayor.
All those against? Okay, I'll go straight to it. I'll go straight to a division.
I think it's quite clear, Mr Mayor.
Okay, look, look.
Gather the division, gather the division.
Thank you councillors. If there is a call for a division, I think it is appropriate to go to a division. As such, okay, thank you. All those in, councillor Hamilton, are you for or against the amendment? Okay, councillor Nielsen.
Can we have the thing up?
Okay.
For councillor Nielsen.
Okay, can I, can I just interrupt for a second? I can clearly see the record of voting. Can I confirm that all councillors can see the record of voting?
Yes.
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 Okay, okay, thank you. All right, councillor Veach.
We're voting on the amendment?
Yes.
Yes.
Councillor Stav, no, councillor Stavridinos.
Against.
Councillor Luxford.
Against.
Councillor Sid.
Against.
Oh.
Councillor Singh.
Against.
Well said, councillor.
Councillor Andrews.
Against.
Councillor Bowen.
Against.
Councillor Mattson.
For.
Councillor Roberts.
Again.
Councillor De Roch.
Against.
Councillor D'Souza.
Against double.
And the mayor is against, declare that. Lost. Okay, we now go to the original motion.
Can we just put the matter?
Thank you. Thank you. Councillor Andrews, I'm assuming you don't want to close, and as such, I will. Now put it. Okay, all those in favour of the original motion is moved by councillor Andrews.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. I declare that carried. Okay, we now move to the next item of business. Okay, CP 72/21, increasing assistance to vulnerable community members during the COVID-19 pandemic. Moved councillor Veach. Do I have a second?
Seconded.
Okay, thank you councillor Veach. Could you just outline to the meeting what you're moving?
Look, I'm just going to move it as per the recommendation on the business papers. I would, as per the original motion, I would have liked to have seen some further assistance provided to the vulnerable community members, as other councillors noted in relation to the report on supporting small business. It's something that, yes, councils should always be supporting small business, we should also be supporting our vulnerable community members. That is not something that should stop at the end of COVID. So I am a little bit disappointed that more funds were not made available. I think there will be many residents in our community who will continue to experience the impacts of COVID, for people who've lost significant amounts of work. They will, and a number of the councillors have, you know, attested to friends and people they know, we all do, who've had severe impacts. This is not going to disappear overnight. But I will await the outcome of the community consultation on the draft inclusion strategy. It will be interesting to put the report, the social needs study, on exhibition as well. People will have a chance to compare them. And, you know, again, the draft inclusion strategy only allows for a 1% increase per year in people in our community feeling that their social needs are met. It's only asking for a 10% increase in a really key objective over a 10-year period. I think we can do better than that, but I'll leave this for now. And I do thank the staff for their summary. Thank you.
Thank you. The second of the motion councillor Andrews.
I have no debate, Mr Mayor.
Okay, there being no further speakers, I'll now put it. All those in favour, all those against?
Aye.
Aye.
I declare that carried. Okay, we go to the next item, CP 74/21, public notification of the VPA for the development at 22 to 28 Gardners Road, Kingsford. This has been challenged by councillor Luxford. Did you want to ask a question or are you moving it?
No, Mr Mayor, I have actually challenged this so that I can register my no vote to this. So if someone would like to move it, I would like it on record that I do not agree.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Moved councillor Mattson and seconded by councillor Hamilton. councillor Mattson.
Look, I appreciate councillor Luxford's view on it, but there has to be a way forward in these matters. When we get legal advice, we have an obligation to take it. When we understand that we're getting actually what we've asked for, we have to take it.
Thank you councillor Mattson. councillor Hamilton.
Concur with councillor Mattson. Would just add that authorising the general manager to make minor draft changes is appropriate in this matter, and I feel comfortable with it moving ahead according to the business paper.
Yep. Okay.
Mr Mayor.
Thank you councillor Stavridinos.
I would like to register my objection to this particular report as well. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Luxford.
Yeah, are we, may I ask a question? Are we going to a vote on this? Will there be a difference?
Through that, my interpretation is, because it's a planning matter, that we should go automatically to a division. But through you, to the relevant officer, the general manager for clarification, just to avoid any doubt.
Yes, I agree with that. Thank you, Mr.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further speakers?
Yeah, I just, can I? Yeah, I just, can I say my bit there, Mr Mayor?
Absolutely councillor Luxford.
Well, so I understand that we are gaining something in the view of a contribution from a developer just so they can get extra floor space and make more profit. It's not a really good reason for me to be voting for this recommendation. Because we have several of these developments coming online. And, you know, they're getting more and more floor space, they're getting higher and higher. And it's okay because you can just pay and, you know, for the benefit of the community. But so far I don't see any real benefits to Kensington and Kingsford from the overdevelopment, the serious overdevelopment that is having there, that is happening. We've got more boarding houses coming online. We have residents who've lived in streets for years like Doncaster Avenue that councillor Veach has brought to our attention tonight, and I too have had complaints in other areas that are being severely disadvantaged, severely impacted by all this stuff. But it's okay, give a voluntary, you know, contribution here and go for your life. So I cannot keep, support any of this and will not support it. Because I don't believe that the monetary value brings anything to our community.
Thank you councillor Andrews.
Yeah, thanks, Mr Mayor. I concur with councillor Luxford's views on this particular matter because it goes to show that K to K was an absolute flop. And I have not seen in my time at council so many VPAs coming before this council. It shows that council got K to K wrong. And as a result, we now have developers coming to this council, want to enter into VPA. And councils' hands are tied and here we are giving away things which should have been done in in the K to K plans, they weren't. And this is why we have developers come back to us and want to have a VPA agreement. Because K to K was a flop and let's get that right, it was a flop. West Ward councillors who represent the area of Kingsford Kensington told this council what they thought about it and we all went against them.
Mr Mayor, can I ask a question of the general manager please?
Too late. No, he can, thank you. Mr Mattson, go ahead.
Look, I note under the second bullet point that this VPA will bring in one thousand, one million four hundred and ninety two thousand, one hundred and three dollars, is that likely to be spent in the West Ward area if we sign this VPA?
Through you, Mr Mayor, that is likely to be spent in the West Ward.
So if we vote against this VPA, and I want to get it right, will we lose this money for the West Ward area?
Madam General Manager.
Through you, Mr Mayor, yes, that's a possibility.
And is it true that under the second dot point, there is a statement that we are going to get a monetary contribution of one hundred and fifty seven thousand, two hundred and ninety six dollars and twenty five cents for the purpose of providing local road improvements and upgrades, including but not limited to the Gardiner's Road foot frontage, is that correct?
That is correct.
Councillors, seize common sense, please.
Okay, thank you. Are there any further speakers? Okay, there being no further speakers, I will now put it, Mr Kelly, if you could please bring up the record of voting. Okay, thank you councillor Hamilton.
Four.
Councillor Nielsen.
Against.
Okay, councillor Veach.
Against.
Okay, councillor Staverinos.
Against.
Councillor Luxford.
Against.
Councillor Sed.
Four.
Okay, councillor Singh.
Four.
Councillor Andrews.
Against.
Councillor Bowen.
Against.
Councillor Mattson.
Four.
Councillor Roberts.
Four.
Councillor De Rocha. Councillor De Rocha.
Sorry, four, computer, sorry.
Councillor De Souza.
Four.
And the mayor is four.
Let's close, let's close.
Thank you. Okay.
I can't believe that, I can't believe it.
It's closer and closer as the election approaches.
Oh my God.
It's not funny, you know, because.
No, it's not funny councillor.
Councillors, thank you very much.
Those people that voted, didn't vote against, beware when it happens.
Respect the mayor please, respect the mayor. Thank, thank, thank you councillors, we'll now move on to the next item, CS forty five twenty one.
Thanks, Mr Mayor councillor Andrews, I think I've got the corner this one.
Thank you councillor Andrews.
I'll second it, Mr Mayor.
I seconded my, I have a suspicion councillor, councillor Andrews, feel free.
Mr Mayor, I I moved the recommendation on the business paper, but I, I would ask for a deferral in regards to Anzac Parade speed limit. I've got some concerns about reducing the speed limit from sixty to fifty along Anzac Parade. I think in, in some areas of Anzac Parade, it, it does make sense for a fifty K limit. But there's other areas of Anzac Parade from Malabar to Little Bay and certain, I'm not a traffic expert and I, I just think that reducing the speed limit down to fifty on a major arterial road like Anzac Parade is, is not the way to go. So are we able to, I like to move A, C and D and defer item B for a for a briefing session in the near future.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Staverinos, are you fine with that?
I am, Mr Mayor, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on this matter, councillor Sed?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, actually, I was going to move this with exactly the same recommendation. So thank you councillor Andrews and councillor Staverinos, I realised that I brought this to the council's attention, this study back in May of two thousand and nineteen. Yes, so thank you. So it's good to see that it's come through, but the most important thing of all these is point D, the two roundabouts who dearly need to be looked at as a huge problem.
Absolutely.
So I thank the council officers for getting to this stage. I agree with councillor Andrews about the fifty kilometres, we need a bit more study on that. But I just want to know, I suppose there's no way that there's a timeline on the investigation of the two roundabouts because residents ask us for that just about every single day. So it's good that there's a note that this investigation's happening, but it'd be great to know when those would be reported to us. Seeing it's taken two years to get to this stage. But thank you.
Thank you, are there any further speakers? Okay, there being no further speakers councillor Andrews, I don't assume you want to close, we're happy to put it.
Oh, sorry, can I just ask a question?
Okay, there's just a councillor from councillor Veach.
So just to to go back over this, it's being deferred simply because it's, the part of it's going to the traffic committee? We're waiting for the report, is that correct?
Through you to the relevant councillor, councillor Andrews.
It's been deferred, so councillors can be further briefed on this matter. Means after that, the matter come back to council maybe to go to some sort of community consultation regards to this particular matter.
Yeah, so there will be a report coming back to council?
After a briefing session, I anticipate there would be.
Is that in your amendment?
Yeah. I was only to put in, it's up to the council officer to bring it back.
It's in.
We include that in the, I'd be, I think the report should come to council for people to see. Otherwise it's just a briefing for councillors. Would you be happy to include a report coming to council?
But it has to come back to council.
They won't change, they won't change the speed limit without council resolution.
Correct, it has to come back to council.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about, you've, you've mentioned that you want it deferred. So I'm just trying to clarify this, I'm not trying to be.
You understand.
Like, it says that there's, in the, on the original point D on the business papers, it said it's noted that investigations into the road safety performance, blah blah, are underway and that there'll be a report to the traffic committee. But I guess what I'm trying to see is that, will that report now be, come to, to council? And that's what, and that's, on the basis of that report, council will decide whether to seek a reduction in the speed limit. Is that your reasoning?
That's my reasoning, yeah.
Yeah, so it will come to council, we can discuss it and then decide whether to make a decision. Thank you, I'm happy to support that.
I agree.
Can I just ask a question?
As long as we have a right to make a decision after.
Thank you, thank you, I have a question from councillor Sed.
Can I just ask the relevant officer? That we could not, is it am I correct in thinking that we can't do fifty, an investigation for fifty kilometres from La Prus to Kingsford? Because the road from after, I think it's Beetum Road is state and from state Beetum Road South is council. So we can judge the speeds of the, of our own roads, but not the state roads. So is that a recommendation that we can put in or is that something that is unachievable?
Okay, thank you councillor Sed, to the relevant officer.
Thank you, through, through you, Mr Mayor, we can make claim or representation to transport for either section of road. The, the section of road in which we're focusing on was the basis of the previous resolution put to council. I can confirm that there has been some preliminary investigations done on the basis of that investigation. And any for concern is convenience for commuters, the estimated travel difference time from a fifty to a sixty kilometre speed limit change or vice versa, sorry, would be approximately ninety seconds. So we see the congestion, if you like, or breakdown in traffic around intersections, not so much in, in speed distances. Our focus to this point has been the southern section, but we are within, or we could make claim for the northern section. And we, we probably would as a result of the bike path project that council recently endorsed the, the design progression of. And that would be a natural component of that project as well, so inadvertently we'd be doing both.
So the only reason why I was asking is so that councillor Andrews may consider just putting that in as an investigation from La Prus to Kingsford as in one fifty kilometres, so it's not confusing for motorists, so it's just one continuous speed limit. So, but that's what you're already investigating, is that right?
It'll be part of the project of the, the cycle way in, like in, in the, in the project progress. So that's not, I suppose, the main objective, it would definitely be a concurrent one that would come as a result of that design process.
May, councillor Veach, may I just ask one more question to, to the director of city services while he's online there? Given that, that investigation is already underway, as you've just mentioned, when would that report and briefing, when would councillors likely receive a briefing? And when would the report come back? Because it's actually, that's a very dangerous stretch of road to cycle on, it is quite narrow. And you would think that people would be driving pretty slowly, but actually there is very little room. So I'm just making up my mind on this, thank you, Mr Clark.
That's okay, through, through you, Mr Mayor, I can take that question?
Yes, you can.
Councillor, can I just confirm, are you referring to the southern portion from Beetum to La Prus? Oh, sorry, yes, from Beetum.
Yeah, I guess from, well, it says, in the report here, it says Marubre Junction to La Prus. Is that where the current investigation is?
Correct.
When, so, yeah, I'm just trying to get a sense of if that would be coming back in this term or would it be some undefined, unspecified time in twenty twenty two?
It wouldn't be in this council's current term, but it would be in, in twenty twenty two. To also talk to councillor Sed's point earlier on, we're looking to do some of the further traffic studies around the intersections at Pine, or sorry, the two roundabouts at Pine Street and Little Bay. Looking through the, the traffic movements around and behaviours through the summer period when, when traffic increases. So we'd more than likely come back to council after the new year or after the summer period.
Thank you. Well, look, I'm going to move an amendment, I'm going to move the report as an amendment, as the report, as per the business papers.
Okay, okay, is there a seconder to councillor Veach's amendment?
Seconded councillor.
Okay, seconded by councillor Mattson. Councillor Veach, considering the extensive question, you don't really need to talk to it again, do you?
I'll just make a short note councillors, as a, as a councillor, even though this is a South Ward area, one of the common questions I get is, is about safety for cyclists, safety for pedestrians. There's all sorts of different residents getting in touch about speed on roads, speed limits on roads. There's, there's a whole group called Safer Streets to School, which is now established in Randwick that are calling on councillors to reduce speed limits around schools. And I'll note, there, there are school, quite a few schools in this area. And just from personal experience of cycling, I know cycling is not something everyone's that into on council, but it would seem like it's a popular area to cycle because it seems, and it is relative to the other, other parts, a quieter area, much quieter than, say, north of Marubre Junction. However, it's, parts of it are still very dangerous, particularly, particularly that area from Marubre Junction and down to about, you know, around the spot where, you know, the Matribill Public School is. And even some further south areas around near the jail, there are areas where there's parked cars, it's very narrow and there's nowhere to sort of get out of the way on your bike and cars do speed up there quite a bit, they travel quite quickly. And it's, doesn't, many of those areas just do not feel safe. So I think we should, in this instance, take the advice and, and go for the speed reduction, particularly if it's only going to result in a ninety second delay. Thank you.
Councillor Mattson.
Nothing more to add.
Okay, thank you councillor De Rocha, are you speaking on the amendment or the motion?
I was basically just saying that, how far do we go? I'm a bike rider, most of my friends ride bikes, they're in clubs, they're, they're forever on the bike and then they, you know, motivate me to go on bike, but I'm still a car person, right? I'm a car person that pays, let's say, nine hundred bucks a year when you count registration, count insurance, count whatever I do, so that I can get away wherever I need to safely, without breaking speed limits or whatever, but still get there in a reasonable amount of time, right? Now, when you talk about reducing speed limits, for example, from sixty to fifty or fifty to forty, basically all you're doing is stopping everything else and slowing everything else behind it and causing more pollution. I mean, let's face it, our cars don't all run on batteries, right? We still run on super L ten, L five, I don't even know what they are, right? So if we think, let's all slow the cars down, we're already said, yes, we want to share our, our roads with bikes. Councillor Mattson, councillor, you know, all the councillors will tell you, I've been a great advocate for bikes and I still am and we share that. But please, let's not think that a car almost can't idle just to get to work or get to get somewhere with a reasonable amount of fuel without having to, you know, because a car still needs to go at at least a thirty, forty, fifty K to at least maintain a good idling type thing. Let's be realistic, please, because we want to be fair, we are compromising, drivers are more aware than they ever used to be. are more aware than they ever used to be, their families are driving cars, their kids are, so let's just, let's be fair and let's not reduce the speed limit too much, because I'm telling you, the noise levels will increase tenfold.
Okay, thank you, I will now put the amendment moved by councillor Veach, all those in favour of councillor Veach's amendment?
Aye.
All those against?
No.
Okay, I declare that lost. We now move to the, motion is moved by councillor Andrews, councillor Andrews, do you want to close the debate or are you fine?
I'll just put it, mister mayor.
Okay, thank you, I now put the motion which is in front of us, all those in favour?
Aye.
All those against? Declare that carried. Okay, thank you, look.
Mister mayor.
Thank you councillor De Souza, yes, please.
We need a procedural motion, it's getting to eleven thirty, I'd like to extend the meeting by half an hour, mister mayor, please.
Okay, thank, thank you councillor De Souza, just on that, can I just please, to all councillors, can we please keep our remarks as brief as possible as, as it is getting late? Okay, CS forty-nine slash twenty-one moved by councillor Sed, Randwick Netball Association.
Seconded, mister mayor.
shaded area request, okay, seconded by councillor Andrews, councillor Sed.
Mister mayor, I just, I'm moving this in a slightly amended fashion, that the last point is that there's a, there's a low cost design that's been facilitated in-house and there's no impact to the current budget. With a subsequent report to be brought back and it's also in point B of the recommendations, I just don't understand why we need to have a report to come back seeing it's been, we can facilitate it in-house, we have it in the budget, it's got no impact to the budget, I just can't see why we can't, if I, I'd like to amend B that, that once the, we provide in principle support for the council officers to progress with the design of the shaded shaded area, that point B is that we allocate it in the current budget with no impact. So we can just start building it, but I don't, I don't see why we have to get a report to tell us that it can be accepted unless that's a question to the relevant officer, I just.
Thank you, look, I will refer that to the relevant officer just for some clarification.
Thank you, through, through you mister mayor, the recommendation is in regards to a report coming back to council noting the construction costs, so the design of the proposal can be conducted in-house with in-house resources currently, but the, once the design's completed and the construction cost is estimated, council will then need to make a decision in a future capital works programme to allocate the capital expenditure to build the structure.
I apologize, mister Clark, I've just realised that the no cost to the current budget is for the plants, not the building, is that correct?
Sorry, that's correct.
Yeah, sorry, I thought it meant the building was at no cost to the current, no impact to the current, sorry.
I wish I could make.
Take that back, so I'll, then I'll just move it as further recommendation.
Okay, thank, thank you, look, if there are no further speakers, I'll now put it, all those in favour, all those against?
Aye.
Thank you. CO fifty-one slash twenty-one delegation of functions to the general manager.
Mister mayor, did someone call out CS forty-eight?
It's been moved already and seconded.
Yeah, well, it wasn't challenged.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, yeah, so it was in the unchallenged item. Okay, CO fifty-one slash twenty-one delegation of functions to the general manager.
Yes, I have a question, is there a, is there a role for the mayor in this delegation?
Okay, through, through, to the general manager?
Through, through you mister mayor, this report is, is just in relation to the delegations to the general manager during this period, we have got further advice from the office of local government in relation to the option to delegate to the current mayor civic responsibilities, that will be the subject of a report for the November council meeting as compared to this one.
Mister mayor, can I just confirm, as I understand it, we've got an extraordinary meeting set for, what is it, the twenty-third of December?
No, the first of November.
Okay.
There are two extraordinary meetings, one for the first, one for the twenty-third for different purposes.
And the one for the twenty-third is the election of a new mayor, correct?
Correct.
Can I just clarify that, does the scope of this proposed resolution, if it comes into effect, take any power or decision-making or on policies away from the new mayor after that mayor is elected?
Through, through you mister mayor, once the new mayor is elected on the twenty-third or the week after, if we're not able to have it on the twenty-third, then they would, they would be delegated with the, the mayoral delegations and the delegations that you're dealing with tonight would revert back to normal delegations for the general manager.
Thank you.
Can I just clarify something? Sorry, I, I think I misheard, the twenty-third of January?
December.
December. Okay, no, okay, sorry.
Okay, thank you.
I think my twenty-three is mixed up, there's a twenty-three November, December, okay.
All good, are there any further questions or comments, otherwise we'll move to the next item? Okay, can I have a mover, can I have a mover of this report? It moved, actually, it's actually already moved Andrews and Stavreinos, okay, all those in favour?
Aye.
Okay, thank you, I declare that carried. We now go to CO fifty-six twenty-one operating hours for Christmas and New Year's twenty-two, that was challenged by councillor Nielsen.
Again, it's just a question, will we, the newly elected councillors, be able to attend remotely for these meetings? Do we know, please, general manager, yes?
Sorry, I think this is the wrong one, we're discussing CO fifty-six twenty-one, opening hours of Christmas and New Year.
Oh, yeah, sorry, yes, sorry, no, don't worry about my Christmas presents, that's.
I'll second this one.
Okay, all right, thank you, all right, that's moved and seconded, okay, all those in favour?
Aye.
All those against? Okay, thank you. All right, the next one we have is CO sixty-two slash twenty-one, which has been challenged by councillor Andrews, draft council meeting schedule.
Thanks, mister mayor, look, I'm going to move the recommendation on the business paper with some.
I'll second it. I'll second that, sorry, councillor Hamilton.
Now, can we, can we just confirm the dates, please?
Yep, I note paragraph A, I like to insert in paragraph A the following, a next ordinary meeting be held first ever twenty-third of December two thousand and twenty-one after the election of the mayor and deputy mayor. So that's the only amendment, adding the word deputy mayor, mayor and deputy mayor in paragraph A. Paragraph B is to remain, paragraph C to be amended as follows, the meeting schedule for two thousand and twenty-two calendar year be adopted with a extraordinary meeting for mayor and deputy mayor elections to be held on Thursday the twenty-ninth of September two thousand and twenty-two.
Yeah, I'll second that.
Thank you, I have a question through, to the general manager as to whether or not that amendment is consistent with the Local Government Act.
If I can talk on that as well.
Yeah, it's, through, through you mister mayor, the Local Government Act currently requires that mayors be elected for a two-year period.
Okay, thank you, so my subsequent question is, is.
Can I speak to that?
Is it then in order as it relates to the mayoral question? I understand that we can hold a deputy mayoral election at that date, through you, madam general manager, if you could just clarify that, please?
Yes, just to clarify, and I may have to take the question on notice because just considering that it is a three-year term and, and given that there'll be a two-year mayoral term and a one-year mayoral term, I will have to take the question on notice as far as whether council can determine which part of that three-year process is two years versus one year, but in regards to the deputy mayor, yes, it's up to council as to whether they elect a deputy mayor and for how long.
Okay, look, what I will do is I will.
Mister mayor.
Yes.
The, the date that you've got there, so it should be Thursday the twenty-ninth of September?
Twenty-two.
Yeah, sorry.
Sorry, twenty-two, yeah.
That's what I said.
Look, 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 thank you, what I will do is I'll allow councillor Andrews to talk to this while I consider whether or not it is actually something which can even be included in, in terms of that and in light of the inconclusive advice as to whether or not that's something which can actually be considered by council, considering.
And can you put me down a second, please, mister mayor?
Okay, thank you, please proceed councillor Andrews.
Yeah, mister mayor, the reason I'm moving it is that we are going into a term of council which is two and a half years, it's up to the council to make a decision whether, under the, under the recent amendments to Local Government Act, the term of mayor is two years and it's all, but because we're in a, a term which is not a four-year term, my understanding is that that particular law can be relaxed in these circumstances, maybe to, I can't see why we can't have this amendment as it is and it's a matter for the new council to adopt a new, a new meeting schedule after the election, so that's probably the safe, safe way to go, I, I can't see why we can't have a mayoral election in, in September next year.
Look, th- thank you councillor Andrews, due to the considerable ambiguity as to the lawfulness of this particular.
Do we defer for some advice?
Mo- mo- motion, I, I would suggest that it is either deferred or you have an opportunity to put it on the business pa- paper for a subsequent meeting.
Are we able to defer to the, the next extra, extraordinary meeting next week?
I'm, I'm fine, I'm fine in order to do that.
If everyone's okay with that, why don't we just defer this particular item to the next meeting of council and seek some advice from the department of local government in that respect?
May I ask a question as well?
Yep, through, through, yep, councillor Veach.
Yes, thank you, it's just a question about the council meeting dates, I just wanted to check something, it's got some report deadlines highlighted in orange, I'm assuming they're the staff reports, not the deadline for motions, is that correct? Will the deadline for motions still be the day before the agenda is issued? Yeah, through, through you mister mayor, the report deadlines are for staff. So the deadline for motions will remain as is? Yes. Thank you.
And can I just ask the question in relation to the meeting for the newly elected councillors on the Thursday, the twenty-third of December, can that be remotely or will it be in person?
Through, through you to the general manager?
Through you, mister mayor, it was intended to be in person, but we may have to make consideration of online attendance for some councillors if needs be.
And, and you can take an oath remotely? Can you?
Yes, I would imagine you, you can in the same, I guess in the same process as what we do, current citizenship ceremonies and the like, so we'd have to, we'd have to work through that process.
Certainly makes it easier for people planning holidays and so on.
Okay, thank you, all right, there'll be no further speakers on this particular matter?
So another be deferred, mister mayor, to the next meeting of council.
Now, deferred, let's, yeah, I'll move that it's now deferred. Thank you, all those in favour?
Aye.
Aye.
All those against?
Aye.
Okay, I declare that carried, now move to the next item, which is CO sixty-three slash twenty-one appointment of a goodwill ambassador.
Councillor Singh.
Councillor Singh.
Thank you, mister mayor.
And I'll second this one.
What am I moving? Right, mister mayor, I'm going to move the recommendation as appearing in the business paper, that council develop a goodwill ambassador programme for public exhibition, including an expression of interest prior to the appointment of ambassadors, actually, I would prefer the appointment of a ambassador. Mister mayor, when I first moved the motion and seconded by councillor De Souza, what I had in mind was the model along the United Nations, where if councillors can remember many, many years ago, we had a, the UN had a very high-profile and well-known actress by the name of Angelina Jolie, she was the goodwill ambassador for the UNHCR and each time she visited a refugee camp, it brought a lot of publicity for, for the refugees. I was thinking that if we were to appoint a goodwill ambassador, the person would have the credentials to speak up, speak out on some of these difficult and sensitive issues like racism, stolen debt generation, domestic violence, mental health, et cetera, et cetera. Looking at the examples in the report, we've got a few local government councils that've got ambassador programmes, but as I said just now, my suggestion would to be to appoint one ambassador because to have many would diminish the position of, of what we really want the ambassador to do. The ideal person would be someone who can speak up on some of these very difficult issues, as I mentioned just now, the person should be courageous, the person can shake the tree and all the better, set the world on fire. You all know who my preferred candidate would be and she's Miss Barbara Keely Sims. However, we can't put the cart before the horse, council's report with the recommendation here is most appropriate, we should first develop a programme, call for expression of interest, call for community consultation and we take it from there. So with that, mister mayor, I hope my motion can be supported.
Okay, thank you, the seconder of the motion.
Thank you, mister mayor, can I just point out that councillor Singh asked for the last two words on the motion to the appointment of a.
Ambassador.
Ambassador.
A goodwill ambassador.
Rather than a plural.
Yes.
And I'm completely in support of this and looking at the business paper, it seems that council believe it has some merit and so I think that once they've done their exploration and sought expressions of interest, we can revisit this and, and vote on who that ambassador might be and if it's a movie star from Hollywood, then we've got plenty of them right here in Australia, so let's see what happens.
Okay, thank you, councillor De Rocha.
Goodwill ambassador, that's what we want to call it, I think that's beautiful and even what councillor Ted said, Anny Bob, what an inspiration, but at the moment, we also got to think that Anny Bob's going to be running as a candidate and Anny Bob for something like this would commit her heart and soul into this role as an ambassador, right? So we need to speak with her first and we would need to see on how she feels, but we'd also need to, whether it's a five-year term or like a councillor term where their goodwill ambassador would have a turn, because we are a multicultural society, we are, you know, indigenous, we are French, we are Italian, we are Maltese, we are Portuguese, we are such an overwhelming, you know, culturistic city, Randwick city is that, you know, who are our heroes, who are the ones that have stood out, who are the, you know, the ones that we aspire to be, maybe, you know, if we have, like, you'd start off with someone like an Anny Bob, but not in a political way, but then you'd get move, you know, you'd keep sharing that role with someone that would be so proud of our.
with someone that would be so proud of our city and our country, you know what I mean? I think that you would have to put, how long would a, a term be for that person to share it with someone else?
Okay, thank you. I've just had a message from councillor Nielsen seeking to move an amendment. Councillor Nielsen, could you outline to the meeting your amendment?
Basically, it was just to put, the last word is the appointment of ambassador, and could we have ambassador slash ambassadors so that the, we get a, it gives us a bit more flexibility.
Spot on.
Does make, then more than one, perhaps it doesn't, but I think if we have ambassador slash ambassadors, when we get the report back and so on, it gives us more flexibility because I would feel embarrassed asking people to nominate if it's actually only going to be for one person, because I can imagine we could get some really good people, I don't know. I think we, I think we need a little bit more flexibility, that's my feeling, so I was just hoping that you might accept that mover and seconder.
Well put. That's fine with me, councillor Nielsen. This is accepted.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, look, thank you, that now being accepted, there being no further speakers, all those in favour, all those against?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Councillors, I declare that carried. Look, councillors, we're now at 11:46, and, and under the code of meeting practice, because there was an extension from councillor D'Souza, we really only have 14 minutes to debate. We have the option where we can adjourn it, otherwise what I will require is a procedural motion to continue past then. The suggestion, and I, just in the, in the interest of openness, because we are meeting so close to the extraordinary meeting on the, at the start of the month, that these items be deferred until Monday for consideration. But we have some time where I'm happy to start the debate, just to give councillors time to consider it, but I tend to think that this can wait until Monday, but I would just like to open it up.
Procedure motion to that effect.
Happy to defer.
All right, well, councillors, if that's the case, and there is no strong objection or desire to continue, I would now like to adjourn the meeting at 11:47.
Have a look at the party animals, Mr Mayor, look at us, we're still up.
Very good. Sorry. And for the, the notices of motion that have not been dealt with.
We spend an hour on motions that we should only spend 10 minutes on, but anyway.
I think I said that.
We should be spending time on motions that are relevant to local government.
The relevant, the actual motions that are relevant.
Let's be nice to one another.
We should be pushing the motions that won't keep away at all the time.
$1.7 million in waste.
I'm not going in your ways.
Guys, respect the mayor, come on.
Is that councillor Mattson, is that councillor Mattson having a go at me? Oh, really?
This meeting is still being broadcast, councillors.
Guys, come on, Mr Mayor, thank you very much.
Councillor Mattson, the king of high-rise.
Mr Mayor, thank you very much, good night.
You're about to give away $1.7 million, do you realise?
Thank you all, councillors.
Advocating for high-rise, you advocated for high-rise.
Enjoy your evenings, councillors, we'll see you again on Monday.
Thanks for meeting.
Thank you, Mr Mayor, thank you very much, well done.
Mr Mayor.
Bye.